We'll get started, and the way I usually get started is this way. I call this meeting to order and ask that you all please rise for invocation. Please remain standing as we will follow invocation with a pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to our Texas flags. Commissioner Chesney.
Thank you, Judge. Let us pray. Dear Lord, we are so grateful for everything that you have given us. We are so grateful to have been able to celebrate the season of your son's birth. We are grateful to be here in this new year. We thank you for so many things and all of the blessings you've put in our life. Lord, we ask that you watch over the court and all who are here today to support and be a part of this and to help us to continue to do what is best interest of those that we serve. Lord, we pray for all of those who have COVID. We pray for all of those who have had COVID and any other illness and ailment. We pray that you will watch over them and help them to heal. Thank you, Lord, again, for all that you've done for us, all you've given us, and continue to bless us in your son. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the D of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
For the clerk's purposes, the time is 8:39 a.m. as we begin this meeting. And I do note that we are at 901 North Leopard in the Nueces County Courthouse, third floor, Nueces County Commissioners' courtroom. The date is January 5th, and we do have a new year. It's 2022. I do certify for the clerk that all commissioners are present, and therefore a quorum has been established. I'll turn to Rebecca now for a safety briefing and ask that you give her your full attention.
Good morning, Judge. Excuse me. Commissioners and attendees, our safety briefing for today, January 4th, is being held in the Nueces County Commissioners' courtroom. The restrooms are located on the right-hand side of the third-floor atrium past the Human Resources Office. There is a fire extinguisher located at the rear of the courtroom and also five additional fire extinguishers located throughout the atrium area. Bleed control stations are on every floor. In the event of a cardiac emergency, an AED is located on the right wall next to the Human Resources Office. Participant for today who will be responsible for dialing 911 will be Connie. Participant CPR certified in attendance will be Dale. Dale, and remember, anyone can render aid. In the event of evacuation, our egress route will be slowly down the atrium stairs, proceeding out the doors located on the La Pan Street side of the courthouse and assemble in the parking lot across the street, and it is important to stay together. Should there be a need to shelter in place, depending upon the severity of the shelter in place, the courtroom double doors will be secured and remain secure until given further instructions from the Nueces County Sheriff's Office or other law enforcement agencies. Our guest sanitizer for the day will be Michael. Our safety topic for the month of January is COVID system symptom warning signs for children. Although many pediatric COVID cases are mild enough to be cared for at home, doctors say there are some warning signs that a child isn't improving and should be seen by a doctor. Amy Edwards of University Hospital Rainbow Babies and Children's Hospital said signs to watch for include trouble breathing, dehydration, persistent pain or pressure in the chest. As soon as you're having trouble getting the children to drink, or baby diapers are drying up, or they're not going to the bathroom as much, then they look like they're having a harder time breathing. That's when you will want to get them evaluated, Edwards said. Even if you have a healthy child, please investigate all the possibilities to protect your children. And this concludes our risk management safety briefing for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. At this time, I'll move to public comment, please. And I do have the sign-in sheet. So if you've come in late, just so that you know, I will circulate this back around. If you're online and joining us virtually this morning, welcome. The way we designate speakers is by using the virtual icon of a hand, and Ms. Morgan in the courtroom will recognize you and call your name. But to begin, I'll call Sylvia Benitez, and welcome. And if speakers would allow a time in between so that we can sanitize the podium and the microphone, we sure would appreciate that. Following Sylvia this morning will be Sean Flanagan. Ms. Benitez, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this morning. My name is Sylvia Benitez, and I'm a resident of Nueces County. I live at 258 Oleander Apartment 2 in District 1. I'm here today because I heard that the court is considering talks about an independent redistricting commission here in Nueces County. I want the court to know that I oppose the idea of creating an independent redistricting commission, excuse me, for the following three reasons. One, we already have elected individuals to do this, and it is part of this court's responsibility. If we, it's what we, the citizens of Nueces County, elected you to do. Two, we don't need an outside independent group that was not elected by the citizens of Nueces County to come in and inject the potential bias into the process. Three, and finding an independent group, they could eventually make it to where they don't have any oversight and start abusing the system to gain an advantage in future elections, as we have seen in other states such as California. I want to commend you all for the recent redistricting process that took place. You all did a great job in making sure the process was fair and transparent and gave the public the opportunity to have input throughout the entire process. This is the way the process is supposed to work, the citizens working with their elected officials and vice versa. So based on these reasons, I do not see the need to cover or to create an independent redistricting commission. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
At this time, I will call Sean Flanagan. And I always like to remind the court and those visiting court that during public comment, we do not engage with the speaker, but we are listening. Please rest assured.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Sean Flanagan. I live at 4218 Herndon Street. I'm one of Commissioner Mara's constituents. I am speaking on the issue that was previously raised at a previous court session concerning an independent redistricting commission. I share with Ms. Benavides's concerns that this is a very bad idea. The redistricting process that was undertaken most recently was done openly, it was done with accountability, and it was done correctly. You all go to all the trouble of getting elected to the seats you're holding. Part of the deal is that you've got to do every 10 years redistricting if you happen to be in office when it comes on up. We do not need some independent quote-unquote "experts" to do the redistricting for, do the job that the elected officials were supposed to do. Here's the problem. Independent sounds like a nice word. The word actually should be not accountable or unaccountable redistricting committee because we have the process of voting to keep you all accountable if you're doing stuff we don't like. If you appoint a commission that does such an important thing as redistricting, they can cause great harm possibly without any accountability at all. So I commend you for doing a good job of redistricting this session, and I adamantly oppose, and I think is probably majority of position in the community, that you do not shirk your responsibility, you do not hand it off to somebody else, you do the hard job of redistricting when it comes on up. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. I am having trouble reading the last name, but it seems that maybe the first name is Gregory. Gregory, would you announce for me? I apologize. Old eyes. Mr. Chittam, welcome.
Good morning, and thank you for letting me approach. I'm Greg Chittam. I live at 427 Farley in Port Aransas, Texas, and I wanted to voice my concern on the IRC. I believe that we need to keep it local. I think things local are a lot better. You guys up there already know where you get your votes from, you constituents, and you fight evenly to keep those people and keep your votes. And I think that's a great idea, and I think you've done a great job. What you've done with public comment has been great and allowing that in, and I think we need to keep it that way. I'm a big believer in being local and buying in your area first, and let's keep it that way. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir. I think it is a new year. I'm going to need new glasses. The next person that signed up is going to speak on one of our resolutions for Coach Danaher, and so if it's all right, may I call you just momentarily when we... Oh, I know who you are. I cannot read. Thanks, Trevor. And so I'll call you at that time. The last person that I have here is myself. And anybody online, Connie, showing for public comment? Deputy, anybody else asking for public comment? Audience? Okay, then I'll, as they say, Maggie was going to give me the run-of-show for the events for this weekend, okay? But in order to do this properly, I do want to put my hat back on. This weekend starts, actually, it started already on Sunday, the National Junior Livestock Show here in Nueces County, one of the largest in the state. We are so proud to have thousands of our kids not only participate from homemaking and photography and home ec, but to showing their animals through the 4-H program whose motto is to make the best better. They are truly the pride of Nueces County, and they come from all over Nueces County. They come from all the way from, you know, Flower Bluff, ISD, to London, to Awulse and Banquete and Driscoll Bishop, Robstown, Texas, and of course, the Greater Corpus Christi area. Cal Allen, of course, has always been a super-strong showing of both 4-H and FFA. And really, what I wanted to say is, please join me. Join us as Commissioners. Come on out to the Junior Livestock Show, support the kids. With the dollars that they raise from the auction, they use these dollars for scholarship money, and it's just an impressive sight to see. The dedication, the commitment that these young people give day in and day out, whether it's raining or sunshine or hot or cold, feeding their animals, caring for them, making that commitment to really know what it means to take care of a living thing, a living creature, and to understand the land. There are many wonderful things, so many to name, that I get to do as county judge, but none greater in my mind than once a year, this great show from January 2nd all the way through the auction on the weekend of the 15th. This Friday, we'll have the Commercial Heifer Show. It's in our third year. Commercial heifers are great for ranchers, and we're ranch country. So it's not too late. You can sign up to be a bidder the day of the show. You can sign up to just come in and participate as a spectator and have a great sausage wrap or go look at the ag projects. You'll be surprised how many people you know whose children are a part of this great tradition. I wanted to let you know that today I'm going to ask our website to post, Connie says we are, I'm going to ask Ms. Connie to post our complete lineup of events. If you have any questions, please feel free to call the county judge's office at 888-0444. Monica will help try to answer any questions you might have. And again, Commissioners, thank you for your participation every year, and we look forward to a great show. When the show is over, we'll introduce you to our grand champions, our reserve champions, and our new queen. Thank you, and again, please don't forget, come on out and join us at the Richard Borchard Fairgrounds. And you'll post for me, Maggie. Okay, thank you. And at this time, we will move to adopting resolutions, proclamations, and other orders. And I've been wanting to do this since I got here. We put those hat racks back there for Sheriff Hooper. But Belinda, as you begin, I'll pass my hat back, and he's not the only, he's not the only one that has a hat in this building. So if you'd put it on the hat rack for me. Okay. In recognition of Cal Allen ISD Superintendent Dr. Arturo Almendares retiring after 26 years of service, welcome Dr. Almendares to our courtroom, and we have a very special resolution in your honor, sir. Belinda?
Whereas Dr. Arturo Arti Almendares, Cal Allen Superintendent, will be retiring on January 31st, 2022, whereas Almendares was born and raised in Falforrias, Texas, graduating from Falforrias High School and going on to earn an associate degree from Kilgore College, a bachelor of arts degree in education at Sam Houston State University, a master's degree from Texas A&amp;I University in Kingsville, and a doctorate in education from Texas A&amp;M University College Station. Whereas Almendares served in the U.S. Army from 1969 to 1971, which included a tour in Vietnam, where he was awarded the Bronze Star for Meritorious Achievement. And whereas Almendares was superintendent of Odom Ed Roy Independent School District for eight years before becoming superintendent at Cal Allen ISD in 1992, where he served for eight years. He went on to become the deputy commissioner of programs and instruction for the Texas Education Agency for three years before returning to Corpus Christi ISD as an assistant superintendent of curriculum and instruction in July of 2003. Whereas in February of 2005, Dr. Almendares came back home to Cal Allen Independent School District, where he has currently served as superintendent for a total of almost 27 years. Whereas Dr. Almendares has received numerous awards throughout his career, including being named Superintendent of the Year by the Texas Association of School Boards in 2010 and distinguished alumnus from Texas A&amp;M Kingsville in 2013. Whereas Dr. Almendares serves as a board member of the Citizens for Educational Excellence, E2E, the Northwest Community Corpus Christi Rotary Chapter, where he actively assists in raising scholarship funds for students in the Northwest area, as well as being a member of the St. Thomas Catholic Church Knights of Columbus Council Number 9318. Whereas Dr. Almendares is married to Dr. Bertie Almendares and has one son, Alejandro Javier. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Commissioners Court of Nueces County takes great preleisure in recognizing the significant professional achievements of Dr. Arturo Almendares, the court urges the citizens of Nueces County to join the court in expressing its sincere gratitude for his invaluable contributions and wishing him a healthy and fulfilling retirement.
Thank you so much, Belinda. Commissioners, I'd like to have a motion, please, to approve this resolution.
Make a motion.
I'll take yours, Commissioner Nandez, as a second. Motion and second, and now I'll call for discussion as I'm certain that we have much praise to give someone who has dedicated his life to the education of our schoolchildren. Commissioners? Commissioner Modest?
What a bittersweet day for the community. I mean, when you talk Cal Allen, we not only think of you, but also Coach, and so I think it's fitting to have you both here today. But, you know, having spent four years on CCI SD School Board and really see all the makings, I remember I was told, I was coming from city council to school board and thought, and was told, you thought city council was tough, wait till you get to school board. And sure enough, I knew and learned what they meant. And so I'm sure with all the success and I'm sure all the challenges that you faced, that you had great boards throughout the years to support you. And I know that superintendents last a little bit longer than city managers, but they're still on the same tightrope. You have to balance so much with working with your staff and trying to retain good staff and, of course, meet the needs of the students in the community and their standards. And so it's just an honor to be here today just to recognize you and say thank you for yours of service to Cal Allen and to the community, and to say Dr. Almendares and Cal Allen is synonymous. And so I know that your replacement will do well, but you will be sorely missed, and I just want to thank you for all your work.
I would like to say to Arti, will you be going to Wyatt 5:00 in the morning still now that you've got more time?
Nope.
They forgot to mention that, they forgot to mention that you had a good baseball career in, with the jerseys, I believe. So anyway, like Commissioner Modest said, it's fitting that both Coach Danaher and you are here. Both of you affect young people's lives. They look up to you all, and so I'm glad, and just not much I can say, Arti. I mean, I know you, and I know what you've done for Cal Allen, both of you, the coach and you. So thank you all for your service. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Chesney.
Thanks, Judge. My goodness, it's kind of hard to believe this day has come. I don't know how Cal Allen is going to exist with both you and Coach Danaher leaving at the same time. That's tough. You know, Greg Popovich always used to say he was going to leave when Tim Duncan did, and, you know, maybe he should have, but that's not the case for the two of you, right? I mean, you all have been institutions out there, and certainly I'll, I don't mean to lump you in together. I'll say something about Coach Danaher when it's his turn. But Dr. Almendares, I appreciate everything you've done for this community, not only as the superintendent for Cal Allen, but just as a member of this community. You've always been a leader. I don't even know how far back my relationship, you know, goes with you. I don't get to work with you as much because I don't represent that part of the county, but when I was an at-large member of the council and working with Todd Hunter back in the day, I mean, your time in this community and as a leader at Cal Allen has been just beyond reproach. I mean, for a superintendent in this day and time to last as long as you've lasted in the role that you've lasted is really very unusual. And for someone to commit their career to what you've done as long as you've done it is extremely unusual and is a testament to your commitment to the children and the staff and as well as the Corpus Christi, you know, greater community. So truly, thank you. It's appreciated, and it's an honor to honor you today. So thank you for being here, and we really appreciate everything you've done.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
You know, something that is, you know, we go back a long ways, even the wife, even the wife, too. But, you know, people of your caliber, you know, we hate to lose, but I hope that you're going to something better and something that you really enjoy doing more. And, you know, not that you didn't enjoy doing what you're doing now, else you wouldn't be there. But, you know, I just want to thank you for all your leadership, your passion for education, your passion for the youth. You know, when I say youth, I think I was a judge at that time, and you, you know, you were there, and we worked together. You opened your doors to everyone, and especially the truancy problem. You were willing to reach out and take on those programs that would help one, 10, 20, I don't know, students. And, you know, I think that the philosophy we had then, we said, we help one, that's helping somebody. It's not about helping 100. We can, yes, but we help one, we help somebody. And I think that's part of you. You know, you had not only helped one, you helped a lot of them because you were willing to open those doors and willing to take the challenge and try to create those programs with the justice of the peace to be able to come in and do programs with those students that needed the help. So I want to thank you, your family, for allowing you to do what you did, supporting you every step of the way, because you always had our support, you know. And I just can't thank you enough for everything you've done, for this community, for education, and for the youth. And I just want to thank you again. Hopefully that God brings bigger and better things to you, and you got to take it easy for a while. And, but anyway, we want to wish you the best, and God bless you and your family.
Dr. Almendares, it has been a challenging few years here at the end. But truly, I think it is a testament to when we say Cal Allen is legendary. It really is. But you can't be legendary without having legends, and we have two of them here today. And because you've gone first, let me just say, on behalf of Nueces County, what a privilege it's been to work with you and under your leadership that has been legendary through probably one of the most traumatic crises of our century. They say that you can really judge a person on how they deal with crisis, and you have dealt with it to protect your faculty, your, you know, complete student body, and the whole theme of what it means to be excellent in education. And I personally cannot thank you enough on behalf of emergency management and all that you did. You are such a strong presence for education in our region, and we need that strength now more than ever. We need people who are unafraid to be bold and confident in the decision-making. And so I just want to say thank you for bringing us through these troubled waters and really paving the way for your successor to know exactly what success and excellence looks like. On behalf of all of us, we congratulate you. We also invite you to the podium. If you care to say a few words, we would like the opportunity to take a photo. We can social distance, wear our masks to protect you, and we would like to hand you the resolution that Belinda has read to you today. It's right behind you, though.
Never give a superintendent a mic. No, I just briefly want to say thank you for this recognition, and I really and truly have worked with all five of you during the last several years, and I just want to thank you for the support that you all give to all the school districts in our region and to say thank you for who you are. And I want to say thank you for the direction that this court is going in. A lot of us support it, and I couldn't have done my job without people that I worked with, like Dr. Anita Danaher, who is here. She led our curriculum and instruction program for years, and I've always given her credit for our academics. And of course, her husband, Coach Danaher, has been our athletic director for many, many years, and we have excelled in many areas in our athletic department. And so we are very grateful to both of them. But again, thank you for this recognition, and I can assure you that Cal Allen is going to do even better now. They've selected a tremendous person to take my place, and Cal Allen is going to continue to do well. Again, thank you.
I, Commissioners, actually have the resolutions at my desk here, and only if you feel comfortable. But we can stand here, you can stand there, and we can get a picture, a photo to memorialize it. That would be wonderful. And Belinda, could I, I'm going to pass this, these to you so that you could, I think we still need the county clerk to attest. So I will have you attest, and then at the appropriate time, hand those off. Okay, Commissioners? I think so for safety. I think that's smart. Maybe we just all come forward and... Thank you so much. Thank you. Belinda, as soon as the mic gets clear, we'll ask you to continue on item F2 in recognition of Cal Allen High School head football coach Phil Danaher retiring after
Emotion?
37 years of service.
Second. Vote. Vote.
Oh, on the, forgive me. All right, let's go back. We only had discussion, and on item F1, we actually need to approve that we, on the resolution for Dr. Almendares. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Now it's official, Doctor. All right, so now we'll move on, as I said, to F2 in recognition of Cal Allen High School head football coach Phil Danaher retiring after head football coach Phil Danaher retiring after 37 years of service.
Whereas Phil Danaher began coaching football in the early 1970s, becoming the head coach in 1974 in Dilly, Texas, where they won their first district championship in more than a decade. Then moving to Hampshire Fanette High School, where he led the Hampshire Fanette Longhorns to win three district championships and advancing them to regional finals twice before coming to Cal Allen High School in 1984 as head coach and athletic director. And whereas Phil Danaher will retire on January 31st, 2022, retiring after 48 years of coaching. And whereas Danaher is the only head coach to lead the Wildcats at Phil Danaher Field at Wildcat Stadium, his first game as Cal Allen High School head coach being the first game ever played there. Whereas during his time with Cal Allen High School, he led them to seven state semifinals and two title games. Beginning in 1988, Cal Allen had a state record of 16 consecutive seasons with 10 or more wins. Whereas Danaher is the only coach in Texas history with over 400 wins at one school. Whereas on November 3rd, 2016, Danaher's Cal Allen Wildcats defeated the Flower Bluff Hornets 31-7 in District 3055A Inner Zone Championship Game, giving Danaher his 427th win, making him the winningest coach in the Texas high school football history. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Commissioners Court of Nuñez County hereby congratulates Phil Danaher on his spectacular coaching career and further recognizes his many accomplishments and contributions to the community. The court urges the citizens of Nuñez County to join the court in wishing Phil Danaher a peaceful and retiring retirement.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? I've got a motion and a second to approve this resolution, and I would call for discussion at this time. Commissioner Hernandez?
Thank you, Judge. Coach, I just want to thank you for all your service to Cal Allen High School, and I know my grandson got his dream come true. He's just a junior, but he got to play varsity for your team. I think he played two games. You've had a successful career there at Cal Allen, and we've gone to every game since we moved out there 32 years ago. So, thank you very much for your service and for guiding our youngsters to the right path. Thank you. Enjoy retirement.
Commissioners, Commissioner Modas.
Coach, honored to have you here. You're a Texas legend and always just being a football fan all these years, always following and knowing that when you talk Cal Allen football, that just meant excellence and meant a standard that you set for your teams and that they lived up to and that they worked up through, all the way from the peewees all the way up through the middle school ranks, and then once they finally got to you. My kids do not go to Cal Allen, but have been honored to be able to be on your field, and so it's just really neat to see your field there and always... it's kind of mystical, to be honest with you, when you go to Cal Allen. It's like you know that this is a program that has always been up to standards and always just lifted up the community in school spirit and just Corpus Christi and Nuñez County in general, as you all would move through the playoffs pretty much every year. And so, it's an honor just to have you here today as well, and all those wins, I hope, put you way in the history books for many years before anyone can even get close to you. So, congratulations on your work on the program and the standards you set, and wish you the best in retirement.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Coach, I just want to thank you for everything you've done. As I mentioned before, it takes a lot of leadership, patience, and passion to be able to work with the populations you work with. Thank you for your legacy, and I think we're losing two big legacies today from the active education field, but, you know, you still be part of our community. Legacy will carry on forever, you know. So, I want to thank you for all that you've done within the field with those kids, and then it takes somebody special that has that passion, that knowledge, and patience to be able to work and understand some of the issues that they bring to the field, and I know you do that. So, I want to thank you for everything you've done, thank you, your family, and we wish you the best.
Thank you, and it looks like we might have also a couple of public comments here. Trevor, while Judge Benavides is... Judge, would you like to make some comments?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to call on Judge Benavides. Senority, Trevor, seniority, and then you'll be next.
Just got off the bench, but I thank you so much, County Judge, commissioners of Nuñez County. Just wanted to congratulate Coach Danaher. We go way back, been probably quite a few games that he's coached out there in Cal Allen High School, and it, you know, it gives me great honor just to be here congratulating Coach Danaher, and Godspeed, sir, and happy retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you, County Judge.
Thank you. Trevor?
All right. To preface my comments, number one, I wanted to say that I know Coach Danaher is actually going to hate this, so, sorry, Coach. You know, Judge Canales constantly or multiple times has referred to me as Trevor, Tristan.
I'm sorry.
Funny enough, Coach Danaher used to do the same thing with one of my best friends, Trevor, in high school.
Trevor's my son, I have a stepson. I don't know why I'm thinking about him, I guess, this morning. Sorry about that.
It's completely fine. I'd like to start by thanking Judge Canales and the entire court for recognizing the incredible career of Phil Danaher and of Dr. A. Coach Danaher probably didn't know I was coming here to speak today. I didn't even know until last night, when I learned that this was happening. He's a humble man, so he would never ask something like this, but I felt compelled to do it anyways. While Coach Danaher finds himself here today because of his impact on the football field, I'm here because of his impact off it. I'm the oldest of six children and the oldest remaining member of my family. Our family was abandoned by both my biological father and adopted father, and before she passed, my mother fell into the never-ending cycle of alcohol and drug abuse. My childhood was anything but normal, but Coach Danaher knew that growing up in Cal Allen, football was everything. We spent more time in school and practice than we did at home. Coach Danaher looked after me, and when all the other coaches saw my outbursts and frustrations from what was going on at home, Coach Danaher was the one who made sense of it all. He refused to let me feel sorry for myself. Coach Danaher made us watch film on Saturday mornings, and while kids hated him for it for ruining their Friday night plans, he did it anyway. Part of the reason was his focus on the mission. He wanted to be great, but I'm sure he understood that by doing it, he kept some kids from going out drinking on Friday night and kept them home safe. At film, there were times Coach Danaher would walk up to me and hand me a newspaper and tell me to check out page three when I got home. After film, I'd open it up and find a $20 bill. He wanted to make sure I could eat on the weekend when I couldn't rely on a school lunch. He would drive me home when I didn't have a ride, and he would run me until I could barely walk if I got in trouble in school. He taught me discipline and commitment. He showed me compassion when he didn't have to, and work ethic that extended far beyond football. Most importantly, he showed me that life was what I made it. Because of Coach Danaher, I refuse to be a victim of my own circumstances. Today, I find myself, as I did so many times before, sharing a room with one of my heroes. But instead of being that sad kid with no direction, feeling unworthy enough to look him in the eye, I stand here as a man. The first in my family to graduate college, a few months away from attaining my master's degree, I aspire to one-day run for the United States Congress and impact the lives of others in the way Coach Danaher did for me. Because of what Coach Danaher instilled in me, I can take care of my younger siblings. Before my brother moved in with me, he had never attended a school longer than a year of his life. Of all places in Corpus Christi I could have chosen for him to go to school, I chose Cal Allen because I knew Coach Danaher would look after him. Next year will be his third and final year at Cal Allen. Seeing him graduate will be the greatest moment in my life. None of that is possible without Phil Danaher. Thank you for honoring this man. I would not be here without him.
Thank you, Tristan.
Follow that, but I'm just going to...
Coach?
I'm just going to say that's... if that doesn't say at all, Coach, I don't know what does. There's nothing that any of us... we should have started with him, and then none of us would have had anything else to say. That's an amazing testimony that I hope we will... I would like to ask that we find someone to download that, please, and pass that on to Coach as a memory of this, to get him a clip of this, because I don't... I just don't know how... that was incredible.
Coach, I couldn't agree more. Commissioner Chesney, and, you know, when we... you said you just found out about this on our agenda, and that's because, you know, you are so watchful and so thoughtful about community, and I'm so grateful that you did see it. Otherwise, we might have missed that. I was just going to close by really saying that, you know, for me and for all of us up here, we live in Texas, and football is life in Texas. But that coined phrase came from Coach Lombardi. He was the one that said football is life. And he also said in that definition that I wrote for you this morning, that football is life because it requires perseverance, self-denial, hard work, sacrifice, dedication, and respect for authority. So, what I'd like to say is that Phil Danaher is football. And in Cal Allen and in Nuñez County and in South Texas and in the great Lone Star State of Texas, Phil Danaher is still football, and football is life, for all those reasons that you embody, but no greater reason than Tristan's testimonial. Sometimes it's not what we learn on the field, but it's what we learn off the field that we carry with us for the rest of our lives. So, while I know for a fact, because I had a son who played against Cal Allen, that you are a great football coach, sir, no doubt about it, but the truth is, is that it gives us such great pride because you are a great man, sir. And the resolution today is so much about you as a coach, but it's really more about the testament to what kind of man you are. We salute you and honor you here today. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It would be one for the record books if we could get all of us here in front. Tristan, would you do me the honor of joining us back here? It would give me great pleasure to give you this photograph afterwards. Mrs. Danaher, as well, thank you for all of your dedication, sacrifice, and how many Friday Night Lights, ma'am. Thank you for all that you've done to be a support, not only inside the independent school district that's Cal Allen, but as we all know, no great man survives this long, 37 years, without a great woman by his side. So, thank you so much as well. And is there anybody else that would like to say anything? I know, Dr. Almenadis, this might be a nice photo, too. What we'll do is ask Coach Danaher and then maybe ask you to join in as well, and then we can send that back home to Cal Allen. Do you have anybody else here? I know we've got some folks... anybody else from Cal Allen ISD represented here that we should... that's what I'm wondering?
Annie should be up there.
Annie? Okay, let's do that. If you'll just help me orchestrate, Belinda. Commissioners, we can stand here, Tristan, just for social distancing. Join us here, and that way we'll put Coach... keep him safe up front. What we could do is one, two, three, and then take it off and then put it on, okay? Just so he can have his...
Hey there, Coach. You, too. I would love to have one of those. We've worked together for over 25 years.
May we have one more?
Of course, with Annie. Of course.
She's my administrative assistant.
All right.
She's been all these years, and she really tells Phil and me what to do.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Coach, did you want to say anything? Coach, we'd love for you to make some comments if you'd like to make some comments. You're going to have to get on the microphone, though. Well, you don't have to. You don't have to, but if you want to, I know it's tough, so put you on that. She's got a mic right there, Coach. But you don't have to.
Nothing said.
All right, fair enough. We appreciate you very much. Thank you, sir.
As they say, we'll see you around. You're not going anywhere. We'll see you around. What a special morning so far, and it just keeps getting better. It's going to be that kind of a day, I predict. And as we transition, we'll move on to F3, and that's in recognition of the 2022 Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration and Commemorative March. It's also going to be followed by another resolution regarding the 52nd Annual NAACP Freedom Fund Gala honoring Dr. Martin Luther King, to be held by the NAACP on January 15th, 2022. And forgive me, I've got the hiccups, but Belinda, you have resolutions for both of these matters, and I'd ask you to proceed.
Whereas each year in the month of January, the Corpus Christi Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc. comes together to commemorate the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And because this celebration march reminds us of our interdependence and reaffirms Delta Sigma Theta Sorority's commitment to the betterment of our communities through civility and service. And whereas Dr. King was quoted as saying, "The function of education is to teach and to think intensively and to think critically. Intelligence plus character, that is the goal of true education." And because the women of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority want to use their collective strength to promote academic excellence, provide scholarships, offer support to the underserved, educate and stimulate participation in the establishment of positive public policy, highlight issues and provide solutions for problems in their communities. Whereas Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, the Corpus Christi Alumni Chapter with its organizing... will be organizing the 2022 Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday Hybrid Celebration and Commemorative March with the theme of "Challenging Our Liberties: Stand Up and Stand Together" on January 17th, 2022. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Commissioners Court of Nuñez County does hereby proclaim January 17th, 2022, the Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday Hybrid Celebration and Commemorative March, and further encourages the citizens of Nuñez County to join the Corpus Christi Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc. on this spectacular occasion.
Thank you. Representing the NAACP here today, do we have a representative?
Don't hit C1, Judge.
Here's Ms. King.
Deanna King, would you accept this resolution, and I would ask for a motion for its passage?
So moved.
It's for Delta Sigma Theta, that's us.
I'm so sorry. The first one was Delta Sigma Theta. You're right.
You want to do yours first?
Sure, sure, you're right. The first one she read was Delta Sigma Theta, and the next one will be... Deanna King can help on that second one.
That's okay. Deanna and I are old classmates from Carroll.
Okay, no worries.
Team members with basketball, but good morning.
Good morning.
And thank you for acknowledging the Corpus Christi Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta. My name is Stephanie Rhodes. I am the current president and also the lucky chair of the MLK Commemorative March and celebrations that we have for the 2020 year. So, with that said, there are a multitude of programs that are happening. We would have loved to have had a Dream Week Corpus Christi, but that will be 2023. But we will commence the celebration on Thursday with a... with the theme of "Challenging Our Liberties, Stand Up, and Stand Together," on January 17th, 2022. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Commissioners Court of Nuones County does hereby proclaim January 17th, 2022, the Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday Hybrid Celebration and Commemorative March, and further encourages the citizens of Nuones County to join the Corpus Christi Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc. on this spectacular occasion.
Thank you. Representing the NAACP here today, do we have a representative?
Don't see one, Judge.
Yes, Ms. King.
Deanna King, um, would you, uh, accept, uh, this resolution? And I would ask for a motion for its passage.
So moved.
It's for Delta Sigma Theta, that's us.
I'm so sorry, the first one was Delta Sigma Theta, you're right.
You wanna do yours first?
Sure, sure, you're right. Let, the first one she read was Delta Sigma Theta. And the next one will be, um, Deanna King can help on that second one.
That's okay, Deanna and I are old classmates from Carroll.
Okay, no worries.
Team members with basketball, but good morning.
Good morning.
And thank you for acknowledging, uh, the Corpus Christi Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta. My name is Stephanie Rhodes, I am the current president, and also the lucky chair of the MLK Commemorative March and celebrations that we have for the 2020 year. So with that said, there are a multitude of programs that are happening. We would have loved to have had a Dream Week Corpus Christi, but that will be 2023. But we will commence the celebration on Thursday with a virtual program. It is featuring the Executive Director, Vance Warren, from the Constitutional, or the Center for Constitutional Rights. So there are press releases that have been sent out and continue to go out. There's information via social media as we go into the NAACP banquet on that Saturday. And then Sunday will be the Interfaith Service. And then Monday is full of activities, starting with the YWCA here at the county courthouse with their racial justice forum. And then we will start with the march, hopefully by 12:20, but get that kicked off at 12 noon in the central jury room. So we thank you for acknowledging us. This is an unprecedented time in our lifetime. Our liberties are being challenged, and we must come together. We have to stand up, but most importantly, stand together to secure and do the things that are needed for us and generations that come after us. So thank you again to the Commissioners Court, uh, for hearing us. I do have my vice president that is here.
Oh, let's acknowledge her.
Nikila Pradyay.
Nikila, welcome.
Judge, I have to ask, what was that, what was that Carroll basketball record back then? Do you remember?
Okay, I was, we were in the young team with Robert Taylor, so I'm class of 86.
Just curious.
We, we were good. Dunlap was, Dunlap was on our back.
Yeah, yeah.
But, uh, we were in the challenge with the Victoria schools that came into the district at that time.
I remember those Carroll teams, that's why I was bringing that up. Y'all were solid back then, they were very good.
So it was always a challenge, it was always Carroll, Ray, and then there came the Victoria Strowman and Victoria High.
And so Dunlap was with you guys at that point?
Yes, we had Dunlap, uh, at Ray, Taylor was at King, and then I believe Coach Penson had left, uh, I mean, Coach Taylor was at Carroll, but Coach Penson, I believe, had left from King. So we were very young back then.
Very good. Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you for what you do.
Well, we look forward, we look forward to having you. I love that it's here, you know, I think that it, this is the symbol of justice in our community. So it, it's, it's fitting that we start here and march here. Will Counselor Manning be with us again?
Yes.
You might wanna just tell everybody a little bit about that.
So, uh, um, Matt Manning will be with us to, uh, start off the march as we did, it's been since 2019.
Yeah.
So it's like taking aback, uh, the things that have transpired since then. So, uh, you guys will help us with kicking that off here at the county at 12 noon.
Right.
And from there, we'll march to the Church of the Good Shepherd. So the city will have that component, uh, with their proclamation.
Right.
And occasion, but here at the county, you will grace us with your presence.
Yes.
With the resolution and other leaders that will join in. So we are very excited, we have our ROTC team coming from West Doso. I'm an educator, so I really enjoyed, um, hearing with the superintendent. Education is always challenging, but it's also the way that we inspire our future. So I'm also a coach, so just everything that happened with Coach Danaher and with the superintendent, really appreciate you guys acknowledging that. We're the front workers, just like the healthcare workers are, uh, in the medical field, but we're in education. So we do what we do for those kids. And when that young man came and talked, that made me think about some of the students that I've interacted with, and those little things make a difference to those individuals, and that's what you get when you do those little things. Not that you expect it, but that's the outcomes that happen when we, as educators, do what we're inspired and called to do. So thank you again.
Thank you.
For your time.
Thank you. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Okay. And, um, uh, Deanna will, will, um, can, can speak for or receive the next resolution.
Whereas the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, NAACP, is a civil rights organization that was founded in 1909. Whereas it is the mission of NAACP to ensure the political, educational, social, and economic quali- equality of rights of all persons and to eliminate race-based discrimination. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was an incomparable leader in American civil rights movements, whose legacy embodies the very concepts of justice, truth, and equality. Now therefore, be it resolved, Nuones County does hereby encourage the citizens of Nuones County to join the NAACP Corpus Christi on January 15th, 2022, for the 52nd Annual Freedom Fund Gala honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
And a second? All right, a motion and a second. And at this time, Deanna, would you like to come up and we can present this resolution? If you have any details, it's always helpful. I know that there might be tickets still available, or anything you'd like to say about the banquet?
Uh, that's correct, Judge. Um, the reason why I'm here this morning to speak on behalf of the, uh, NAACP local president, Jeremy Coleman. He could not be present at this time for, he had something prior that he had to attend to. But yes, um, I'm representing the H Boyd Hall Chapter, which was established on April the 4th, 1919. Um, not only I'm a, a member of NAACP, I'm also on the Executive Committee Board of the NAACP. And also, I'm also an employee of Nuones County. But yes, we have a gala going on, January the 15th, and it starts at 6:30, but the doors open at 6:15. And we do have tables available, we also have individual, uh, tickets available. So if anyone wants to, uh, purchase any tickets, all they have to do is they can contact me or contact our, our president, Jeremy Coleman, and, uh, it's gonna be a great event. Uh, we had one, um, sometime, I think, last year, and it was our first one taken over from the last administration, and we sold out, matter of fact, we almost oversold. And so we're hoping to have the same, uh, energy and attendance, uh, for this one, because it is celebrating a great man, Martin Luther King Jr., which my last name is King as well. And so we're working on, uh, a family tree, we're almost connected to that Martin Luther King. We're getting, getting pretty close. And so, uh, we're hoping that, uh, our family is, uh, kin to him in some way, but we're, we're really close in that. But we thank the, uh, judge and the commissioners for this recognition, because it's really important to this community, not just this community. We've already, we took over the, uh, from the last administration last year, and we were already hitting the ground and running. Uh, we've gotten many calls about discrimination, and, uh, matter of fact, there's, there was an incident in Woodsboro, which we couldn't, can't get into the details about that, but I think our president's there at the time. It helped, uh, move this case forward, and, uh, like I said, we're getting a lot of calls about discrimination. I wanna encourage people to, to join our organization, and you don't have to be a person of color. You know, it doesn't matter what race, what ethnicity you are, we just want pe- people to join, because we all are the human race. You know, there's one race, I'm a Christian, and I believe that God created us all, and he did not want us to be divided, he did not want us to be separated. And unfortunately, we had to, uh, NAACP had to be created because of separation, people not being treated equally. And we're getting to those times again, that we're starting to see that again, not only political, but, but within race as well. And so we would like people to come together locally and join our, join our chapter, because we're gonna do great things. We have things coming up that's unbelievable that I can't talk about, because I'm on the executive board and we're not supposed to discuss certain things. But if you join our chapter, we have monthly meetings, and, uh, you'll be engaged, you'll be able to ask questions about what's going on and what your future plans are gonna be. But then again, we're still here to, uh, recognize Martin Luther King, because he's the man that started it all, and we appreciate y'all giving us this recognition.
Thank you.
Well said.
Amen.
Thank you very much. We look forward to being there.
Thank you, Ms. King.
For both events. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Ladies, would you all, um, like to commemorate the, the day with a, with a photo for, yeah, I think.
And thank y'all for all you do on this, it's really important, and we appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll just leave this right here. So we'll, let's do Delta Sigma Theta separately, and then, then we can do one altogether, too. That would be nice as well, but that way they've got a record of one, and you've got a record of another. Thank you. Thank you so much. And now, uh, with Deanna.
We'll do it with her, and then she can do hers.
Perfect.
We'll let you be at the center.
Thank you, Steph.
Here the old visitor thing does.
I was just wrong.
This isn't her playing basketball, Ms. King.
Half a century plus, she looks very cute.
She's a guard.
Yes, she was. She wasn't a guard, she beat the post.
I, I would like to say something, Judge.
Yes, sir.
I just wanna congratulate all these young ladies, uh, for doing what they do with their, with their committees. But I also wanna thank Ms. King for what she does, and I'm, I'm one of the luckiest commissioners, uh, to be, because she, she accepted my, when I asked her to come work for me. So thank you, Ms. King, and please keep up doing the good work.
Thank you, well said. At this time, uh, we're gonna move on to, uh, G1. And G1 is in recognition of the county auditor and staff for excellence in financial reporting, is presented by the Government's Finance Officers Association for its comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending in September 30th, 2020. Dale, congratulations. Would you give us just a, uh, oh, actually, Belinda's right there, she's ready to give a little background.
So the Government Finance Officers Association of United States and Canada has awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to Nuones County for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2020. The report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. And, uh, so Dale, in his office, received this very nice, um, recognition.
Very nice. You know, I was thinking about Coach Danaher and all those trophies. You know, when you walk into a high school, there's always a trophy case, a trophy room, and it's just such a, a great feeling, because whether you're a student, a visitor, or a teacher, it's what you see. And the truth is, is that Dale, your office has been winning these types of awards for.
27 years.
27 years. And one of the things I'd like to do is explore, uh, and, and get back to that first floor being the pride of Nuones County. You know, we've been winning gold excellence awards for our veteran services, we've been winning them for finance, we've been winning them under the Labor, Department of Labor, and in other departments. Um, we have a veteran service officer recognized as the best in the state for excellence. Maybe we should take these awards, you know, 20, call it whatever, you know, fiscal year we're in, and place them on the first floor, so that when people come into Nuones County, they know that this is a county of excellence. This is really fantastic work, Dale, and I don't know if you wanna give any praise to your great staff.
Yes, Your Honor, this, uh, this award, as, uh, as, uh, Belinda said, it, it requires us to, uh, put our standards as, as high as we can. We, we've, uh, submitted our report, as we said, the last 27 years, I've been here for, for nine of those 27 years, and, and we've been awarded that award for those, those, those years. Uh, it requires my staff and many other people within the county to, to, uh, help, help and, 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 uh, put it together, the report. Uh, this is just not, nothing, this, this is not a report that just I do, it's, it's my entire staff and an entire county works with it, shows you the, how, how strong our county is, how, how strong, uh, our finances are, and how, how we continue to, I, I couldn't do this without my entire staff. Uh, this is a report that we, we have, our external auditors, uh, come review us every year. These, these standards change every year, because our, our standards boards put out new, new, uh, standards every year that we are required to, to, uh, put together and apply, so, so this is an ongoing challenge we put together every year. Uh, I look forward to submitting the report for this fiscal year coming up. We've had to add a few different reports that we have, and we believe once we submit this report to the GFOA, we will, we'll receive this award for the 20th year.
Fantastic, fantastic work. Is this is, um, uh, recognition only, so there's no action items here, Commissioners, but, um, are there any questions, or we all good here? As they just say, well done, well done.
Congratulations, you.
We'll move on to H1, and this is, uh, general information reports. We've got a few folks here that can assist in delivery of this report. Let me just say that we're gonna focus today on COVID-19, but please know, Commissioners, if you have any concerns about any of the other disasters that we are, um, still responding to, including any relating to, uh, Hannah, Winter Storm Yuri, and floods of May and July, or any other economic recovery state or federal assistance program, uh, including, um, emergency rental assistance, that's the ERAP program, and related matters. This is, this will be our, our time to ask these questions. Uh, but first and foremost, I'm gonna call upon Kathy R. Blantner, our deputy. Uh, but if you'll hold, just kind of prepare yourself, Kathy, you're gonna deliver the report. I'll recognize, um, Louis Wilmot, from Public Health, Assistant Health Director, representing the counties here to kind of give us the nitty-gritty on COVID-19, this Omicron surge that is just really unprecedented. But, uh, would you please allow me the privilege of introducing to you our new Nuones County Emergency Management Coordinator, Mr. Louis Ray? He's on the job now three days, making his first appearance and first, uh, report. I hope, um, you will appreciate that no sooner than he arrived and we were, had him in full gear, focusing on this Omicron surge, but Louis, welcome. Would you just share a little bit about your background, uh, and let me have the privilege? This is Commissioner Chesney, Commissioner Gonzalez, Commissioner Morris. Commissioner Danaher's just stepped out, but he sits over here, uh, to my left, and, uh, you guys are gonna get to know each other, I know, but, uh, you've been testing quite a few people in the last 48 hours since you joined. Give us, uh, a little bit of your background, sir.
Yes, ma'am, thank you all. Giving all honor to God. Judge Canales. Judge Canales.
Yes.
And the elected appointed leaders of Nuones County. I'd like to extend my serious gratitude for selecting me as the Emergency Management Coordinator for the county. This is a trust that I'm, I'm extremely proud of. I look forward to working with you all and all the professional, uh, servants of the county. Some of you have done this for your entire lives, and I too understand that service to, dedication of duty to, uh, county and to the country. I joined the Army at 16. I, uh, spent 26 years in the Army as a chemical, biological, radiological, nuclear enlisted member. I retired 26 years later. I served in numerous leadership positions, starting as squad leader to operations sergeant major on the general staff. My background is in occupational safety and health, as well as emergency management. I also like to recognize the emergency management staff here in the county, Brenda and Kathy. I am truly joining a, a great team. I pledge to you all that same dedication that they have, that they have given to you all, as well as the, uh, pledge that I plan to, uh, exceed their expectations of me, as well as develop those types of leadership traits that we need for the county. Also pledge to the citizens of Nuones County, a devotion to duty to ensure that we react and be prepared for all emergencies, under the tutelage of Judge Canales. I thank you all for this, for this time, and I thank you all for the charge.
Thank you, sir. I'm gonna provide to each of you, uh, his CV. He certainly, uh, has an incredible background, not only acad- He certainly has an incredible background, not only academically, but with life experience. As a United States Army veteran and as a contractor in our Army bases in Kuwait, training our Army bases and our leadership in emergency management, I know we are in good hands. His email is louis.ray@nuacisco.com. We will send out, now that we've established all the phone numbers and all of the appropriate contact info to each of you commissioners. Of course, you can always find him on the fifth floor when he's not on operation. But please know that I encourage you to reach out to him. Teach him about your precincts. Let him know about some of the chronic problems that we've had while we've experienced crisis and emergency in Nuasis County. I know he wants to hear from each of you. Just know, as I said, we believe in trial by fire around here. And so we're already in the throes of responding to this surge. With that, Kathy, tell us about what's going on. And please, you know, hand off to Louis when you feel that it's appropriate.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Judge Canales and commissioners. And a very big welcome to Louis Ray as our new Emergency Management Coordinator. We are so proud to have him. We look forward to his enhancements to our department as well as to Nuasis County. General weather information, we are experiencing a warm trend with patchy fog developing across the coastal plains overnight. Our lows were about 51 degrees. Today, we've had patchy fog with some areas of dense fog, then a sunny day with highs of reaching to 79 degrees. There are no significant weather threats in the region at this time. I'm going to briefly touch on COVID vaccinations and testing. And then we will turn it over to Louis. COVID-19 vaccination, the new Omicron COVID virus is on the rise across the United States. Many areas as well as Nuasis County are experiencing a surge in COVID cases. Omicron is a challenge because it spreads very, very rapidly. COVID, Nuasis County COVID testing is responsible for COVID testing at Krista Spahn Memorial Hospital. In an effort to decrease the strain on our local hospital emergency departments, Nuasis County, in conjunction with Krista Spahn Labs, performed 1,638 COVID tests in four days from December 27th through the 30th. As of last week, Nuasis County was testing resulted in a 33% COVID positivity rate. That's very high. This week, COVID drive-through testing at Krista Spahn has expanded in its times and dates. Nuasis County is testing daily this week from Monday through Saturday, from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. That's 9:00 a.m. in the morning to 6:00 p.m. in the evening. You can ride the Corpus Christi Regional Transit Authority bus to this Memorial Hospital location and walk up as well as drive-through. So, we want to encourage all of our citizens to come, no matter what your transportation needs are. And I believe there are plenty of, there's a stop directly in front of the hospital there. Nuasis County, in conjunction with Corpus Christi Nuasis County Public Health District, has administered 1,785 COVID tests over just the last two days. This week, Nuasis County's positivity rate has increased to 43% as of yesterday. This represents a 10% increase in COVID positivity rate in a very short time. This really does provide you with a true example of how quickly Omicron is rushing through our community and the kind of surges we can anticipate going forward. Additional testing site is scheduled at Richard and Borchard Fairgrounds in Robstown at the Aviator Baseball Stadium on Thursday, that's this Thursday, January 7th, from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And please enter this testing site on Texas Yes Boulevard, AKA County Road 40. That way, it will, we're trying to place it at this location so that it doesn't interfere with the livestock show. The Richard and Borchard Fairground testing is a joint operation with Corpus Christi Nuasis Public Health District, Nuasis County, and Robstown Fire and EMS. And there are also, Corpus Christi RTA has a bus stop at the Richard and Borchard Fairgrounds to facilitate walk-ups. And I would like to offer a special thanks to Nuasis, to Robstown Fire and EMS as they have given us in-kind donations of their time all last week at the Memorial Hospital COVID testing location. And it really made, they were of great assistance in making it possible. COVID testing is performed in our local labs, which provides a 24 to 48-hour response. This is a PCR test. The wait time for drive-through testing is very minimal at all locations. You can register onsite, or you can pre-register at the Corpus Christi Nuasis County Public Health District website. And Nuasis County testing is reflective of our community's needs. So, we have expanded it as we have felt the need. Nuasis County COVID Health Clinic through Amistad is also experiencing an increase in utilization. The number of COVID patients seen yesterday were 24. The COVID clinic is available to care for COVID-positive patients with or without insurance. You may contact Nuasis County COVID Clinic at 361-826-8019. There are concerns the Nuasis County healthcare system will become overwhelmed and are expanding their requests to Texas Department of Emergency Management for additional healthcare providers as this Omicron surges. Please continue to check the Nuasis County website and Nuasis Knows for updates on COVID testing and COVID vaccinations. We also want to continue to share with you to use public health measures in combination with getting vaccinated, wear your mask in congregate settings, keep your home or workspace well-ventilated, stay home if you're sick, get tested as soon as possible. We've expanded those testing times, so it should be available for most anyone. Wash your hands often, and we recommend that if you are not vaccinated but have been thinking about it, now is the time to get vaccinated. I thank you very much for your time. If you have any questions?
Kathy, you did good. I'm going to go ahead and ask you to pass to Louis. But first, are there any questions for Kathy right now, based on the comments that she's provided? Just hold, Kathy, because we may have you come back up. Yes, ma'am. Louis, just as kind of a scooping up, and you may already have it. Would you also address, we've gotten, we always get a lot of questions about the monoclonal antibodies, the Merck pills, the Pfizer new CDC recommendation regarding 12- to 15-year-olds. Those are the three things I have, but I bet you could cover them. And welcome.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Judge. Thank you, commissioners. Welcome, Mr. Ray. We look forward to working with you. Thank you, Kathy. Louis Wilmot, Assistant Director of Public Health, here to give you a quick update on the COVID situation in our Nuasis County area. So, my presentation, please.
Bonnie will load up.
The first thing we're going to cover is the monthly case count. These graphs are, they're a great visual to kind of, to see exactly what's going on in the county.
Hang on, technical difficulties.
Yeah, next slide, please. So, you know, we have our peaks, our summer peak of 2020, our winter peak, and also our summer peak of 2021. We were doing very well. Went to a low of 985 cases the month of November. In December, we doubled. And that's really partially of the last week of December. We're at 200, I mean, 2,014 cases. If you look at January, we're three days into it, because this is as of January 3rd. Look at the number there, 2127. We've already surpassed the whole month of December just with the first three days of January. That is very concerning. That's a significant increase. And we expect it to grow exponentially based on the way this virus is spreading. So, next slide. Here's a breakdown of the weekly cases. As you see, in October and November, we were steady, about 300 cases per week. And you'll see the last week of December, we went from 377, the previous week, to 1,373. Again, significant jump. Look at the, look at the last bar there. That's just January 3rd and 4th. We've already surpassed the previous week of, just the end of December. So, again, this, look at that, look at that graph, this pointing straight up. Yeah. Yeah, I would mask up. The next slide, please. The, we do, we have reported one death as of yesterday for January. Again, this is early on. Again, we're looking at how other countries are dealing with Omicron. The overall disease process seems to be less in nature. However, the more vulnerable are still the unvaccinated. So, we'll continue to monitor those deaths. We don't want any deaths in our county. However, some folks are going to succumb to this virus and the way it's spreading so quickly throughout our community. The next slide, please. This addresses, this looks at our hospitalizations per day. The month of December, we were pretty steady, around 30 to 34 cases hospitalized. We went to a low of 25 on Christmas Eve. I'm assuming we're trying to get folks home for Christmas. But as you can see, since that date, we're now at 78. So, three times roughly that, from that low of 25 in Christmas Eve. We're going to continue to monitor those. We're more, we're really concerned about the child hospitalizations. We're working with Driscoll Children's Hospital to make sure that we're monitoring those cases and see exactly what we need to do to take care of our children. Or remember that our children are the ones that we are unvaccinated to the age of five. And we're still working on increasing our vaccinations for our children's ages 5 to 11, which were just recently passed for approval. So. Next slide. So, Omicron, you know, it has swept across the nation. Previously, it was a 70% increase of all the cases. It represented 70%, 73% of all the cases in the United States. It is now up to 95% of all the cases in the United States. It is very highly transmissible. We have seen a dramatic increase in COVID cases here in Nuasis County, averaging 65 cases per day in December, 400 cases per day now. And as of yesterday, it was significantly higher. We're at 960 we reported yesterday. As Omicron spreads, more children are ending up in the hospital, as I mentioned. During the Christmas week alone, there was a 66% increase in the children admitted to hospital from the previous week. So, that is telling us, it is highly contagious. As you can see, I'm still wearing my mask as I'm speaking to you here. I'd really like for you guys to really follow suit. It's these, it's these basic fundamentals that have helped us get through it in the past. It's going to help us get through it again. So, please go back and do what works, right? Wash your hands, use the mask, social distance, et cetera, get vaccinated. These new CDC guidelines, if you go to the next slide, please. So, CDC understands that this is going to run through our country quickly. And we might lose some of our fighting force. I mean, if these folks are out sick, they can't go to work. The CDC guidelines have been adjusted. So, number one, if you have tested positive, we are now asking you to quarantine for five days. If your symptoms have resolved after five days, you may leave your home. But we ask you to continue wearing your mask for five days after that. Regardless, I ask you to continue to wear your mask daily. If you do have a fever that has not resolved, especially within the five days, we ask you to stay home until that fever resolves before you venture out. If you are not positive, obviously, you know, continue on, practice your safe, your safe health strategies have worked for you in the past. If you are exposed to someone with a positive COVID-19, and you are fully vaccinated and you've been boosted, again, we're going to ask you to wear your mask for at least 10 days. If you could test on day five, I mean, because you've been exposed to a positive, day five seems to be the good rate for incubation period for that, for that time. So, we can get you tested and make sure that you are not positive. If you develop symptoms, obviously, we want you to stay home, get tested, and try not to spread what you have. If you are not boosted and you are unvaccinated, we want you to quarantine at home for five days. Wear your mask for an additional five days, as we mentioned before. If you develop symptoms, get tested, and obviously, stay home like the previous guidelines. So, these guidelines have been adjusted to help stop the spread of Omicron so fastly in our area. Next slide. So, your health district has, since the beginning of the pandemic, has administered over 196,000 vaccinations to the community. The majority of those are Moderna, 141,000, followed by Pfizer, over 44,000, especially now, including the pediatric doses, and Johnson &amp; Johnson with 9,000. Next slide. We've administered over 23,900 of the boosters. So, we would like that number to increase. We do have plenty of folks out there at various locations readily available to give these vaccinations to you and get you boosted. And we'll talk about the booster time with the new CDC guidelines in a few minutes. Next slide. Here's our rates. We're just monitoring these rates. I don't want to repeat them all to you. But, you know, again, our elderly population, 65 years and older, are leading the way. They're over 80% fully vaccinated. The majority of those are boosted as well. It's the younger population that we're most concerned about. We're still in the 50s, and that needs to increase. We'd like you around the, around the 80%, right? For the month of January so far, we've done about 1,000. That's only the first three days. Our static vaccination clinics are pretty consistent. The next slide. We still have our La Palmetto Mall site, very productive there at that site. We continue to have tons of folks coming in readily. So, we applaud the county's efforts for continuous helping us out, keep that site. Greenwood Senior Center, the Nike store at the Robstown Outlet Mall, the Physicians West Building in front of Memorial Hospital, here in the county courthouse, we have them available as well, and the city hall. We still have our rolling sites on the next slide, at the QSR Legacy Center. On Mondays, we did keep that time from 11:00 to 6:00 because that is a well-lit parking lot. Previously, we were concerned that it was getting too dark by 5:00, and our people were working in the dark. And there was some safety concerns. So, we adjusted the other ones to 10:00 to 5:00. So, Goodwill follows, Goodwill on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and follows on Wednesdays. Yeah, that is running from 10:00 to 5:00. But the QRS is running from 11:00 to 6:00. As Kathy mentioned, for the COVID testing, we will be testing this entire week, Monday through Saturday, from 9:00 to 6:00 at the Memorial Hospital. We're getting that turnaround from those tests relatively quickly, within 24 hours. Painting all our equipment still stays in great working order. We're really running those machines, you know, pretty much 24 hours. So, but we'll continue to monitor those things and give the county a good positivity rate of what we're seeing out there. We are planning also on, this is, this was relatively new, we're trying on adding an additional testing site on Thursday. Still yet to really determine where that site is going to be. Based on the demand from the community, I think we're looking at Richard Borchard. But more to follow on that to add additional testing assets. Just while I was in here, I was asked about the testings that is happening off airline SBID. And they asked if it was ours, and it's not ours. But they're asking because there's a long line out there. And it's affecting traffic. It's affecting the mall, the parking lot there. So, all testings in the area are inundated. So, that is a sign that people are sick, people are looking to get tested and make sure they don't have Omicron. Next slide. So, monoclonal antibodies, we have found that Regeneron, the one that we used during Delta for our rapid infusion centers, it has been proven ineffective for the Omicron variant. No longer, it's no longer being used to treat COVID-19 because of the overwhelming amount of Omicron cases in the United States. So, Trinobab is, has been approved, and it's proven to fight the Omicron variant. But it is in limited supply, and it's still not available until mid to late January. So, even if we wanted to open a rapid infusion center to help these folks with this new drug, it is not readily available for us to use. Your health district does have Regencov still, but again, it's not, it's not showing it's being effective for the Omicron variant. So, we'll continue to monitor the supply lines for this. And in the event that we do need to open up So we'll continue to monitor the supply lines for this, uh, and in the event that we do need to open up a rapid infusion center, uh, we will, uh, reach out to the state to see what kind of assets they can provide to the county. Uh, because as of right now, their state asset is closed. They're not providing the Regencov because they don't have the medication either. The other option that we do have is that there has, there is a Merck COVID nineteen medication capsule, oral capsule, that has been recently approved by the FDA. Um, it is, uh, available here in Texas through your pharmacy. Uh, the medication must be prescribed by a healthcare provider. So for, for, for residents, we're asking that you talk to your primary care providers, um, and see if they're willing to give you the prescriptions that you need, uh, and if you're a candidate for that medication. Uh, and, and we'll see what pharmacies are also available, um, that do have it. They say it's readily available at the pharmacies, but until, um, providers start prescribing it, uh, we won't know. So for, we are, we are monitoring the situation with monoclonal antibodies. We're monitoring the situation with the pills. Uh, now, um, if you have questions or concerns about monoclonals as they become available, call the health district at eight two six seventy-two hundred, so we can get you the latest information, and, and, uh, in the event we do need to open up a rapid infusion center, uh, we'll be ready for it. And the last CDC update. So the CDC did sign off on two of the measures that were approved by the FDA for the, for the additional doses of Pfizer coronavirus vaccine. Uh, the first one they approved on Tuesday, uh, the CDC is recommending a shortening of the interval time between the person, the people who have been, have had an initial series of Pfizer vaccination, when they receive their booster shot, from six months to five months. So initially, we had to wait six months for our booster for Pfizer. Now, you can get it as early as your five months. Uh, and that has been approved, and it is, is being implemented now in all our vaccination sites. Uh, the second thing that they did approve, second, um, uh, aspect of the FDA approvals, uh, they recommend that children ages five to eleven with moderately or severely weakened immune systems receive an additional dose at twenty-eight days. So that, that third dose is now available for ages five to eleven if you are immunocompromised. And again, our, our sites are available, are ready to, uh, to, uh, implement that change. The FDA approved Pfizer boosters for, for children ages twelve to fifteen, because previously they were only for sixteen and above. The CDC has not yet recommended that. Uh, they are meeting today, and, uh, depending the, uh, results of that meeting, they'll put out additional guidance and see if that's something we need to implement, uh, throughout the United States. Pending your questions, Court, uh, that concludes, concludes my briefing.
Thank you. Thank you, Louis. I just want to say, I know, um, the entire holiday weekend, uh, you guys were working, and we really, really are grateful. Um, running a thousand tests is an amazing feat every single day. I've been asked a few questions, so I know the answers, so here's a few softballs. Do we have enough tests for the rest of the week? In other words, these are test kits. Do we have enough? Uh, and maybe you could address that kind of concern.
Absolutely, Judge. So we are, uh, keeping track of all our stocks. Every little aspect that's in, uh, needed, that, that we need to, uh, conduct these tests are, are limiting factors. We do have over five thousand, uh, tests that we can conduct. Uh, I think up to eleven thousand. We've already have more on order, and, and so they're on their way.
Right.
Uh, so as of, for this week, yes, we do. We, we'll be able to handle that situation.
Great. And just for clarity, uh, the county is handling a lot of logistics for the memorial drive-through, the Richard Orchard drive-through. Uh, Commissioner Chesney, I know that our plans today are to reach out to, and we've already started this process, to Port Aransas. Anywhere there's geographical constraints, there are going to be testing issues. So Rick Adams is, is next on our list. Um, we also have reached out to Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi, and they stand ready, also logistics-wise, to, to serve. That's going to be very important due to the traffic that we'll get when students return after the winter break. Um, besides, um, the, the testing, it's necessary to, in order to accommodate everybody, the nine to six does seem necessary in, in your opinion, is public health. Is that correct?
Absolutely. Uh, gives folks time, uh, throughout the day, and we're, and we're pretty busy to the end of the hour, to be honest, Judge. And thank you to Edward, Edward and his crew that are out there, uh, during the holiday week, uh, gathering these samples for us. They did a tremendous job. They continue to do a tremendous job. All praises to Edward and his group.
Thank you. Questions, commissioners? Um, anybody with regards to the operations that we've, we've got going on? Uh, Louis, thank you. There is a press conference today at five o'clock, and, um, and anything else, uh, pressing, just let us know, and we'll be able to message throughout the day. By the way, the slides that have been presented are available, commissioners. If there's one that really stands out, the one that's great is the flow chart. All of you are active, uh, one way or another, through your assistants or yourselves, for social media. That flow chart that tells you what to do is the best way to avoid confusion on the five days. So I would say, uh, copy and paste it and get it out to your social media, uh, platforms. Ms. Kathy, want to round us up?
Uh, just wanted to round up to confirm. Yes, indeed, we do have an additional testing site this week, which is Thursday, tomorrow, uh, January seventh, nine AM to six PM. And that is at the Aviator Baseball Stadium, enter on, uh, Texas Yes Boulevard. And, uh, we will, uh, run you through. There's going to be, um, it's very similar to where they entered. If you went out there for COVID tests, uh, COVID vaccinations, it's at that very same site where you entered in the past.
Right. Great. And if you would, please, you know, uh, Louis and, and Kathy and company, do follow up with Rick Adams. Let him know. We've not forgotten him out there in Port Aransas. But, um, we are looking at major volume right now, and, uh, we're doing everything we can with the staff.
Yes, ma'am. I will reach out to Rick Adams right after this.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, super. That's a great, very comprehensive, um, report, and of course, if, any questions, if you'll direct them to Louis. And, um, Louis, is it the same number that Melissa had cellular-wise? I just, if you don't mind, would you, uh, it is? Okay, because all of us have that. So if y'all, you've got your, his cell number, don't, don't be afraid to shoot him a, a text. Um, but with that new email, you should be able to get every, um...
Yes, ma'am. I have, uh, my cell phone is up and working. Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
The cell phone's up and working now. Um, you just reach out to me anytime. Uh, I can get the emails. I can get the texts, um, and just call.
Sounds great. Super. Okay, thank you. All right.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Okay, um, so at this time, I'm going to actually ask emergency management just to hang with me for one more item. Uh, I'm going to call out of order. Um, well, actually, let me do the minutes real fast. Um...
So moved.
Thank you. That's item I one. That's December fifteenth and sixteen, a motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, same sign. Uh, I have Kalen Taylor on the line from Hagerty, and we're going to advance three A one in the interest of efficiency. And that will set the stage for a lot of the, um, discussions that we're also going to have on American Rescue Plan Act, and because that's part of, um, emergency management as well, we're going to ask you guys to stay. Uh, it's three A one, receive a presentation relating the Oasis County Strategic Fiscal Recovery Plan, the proposed spending framework, project prioritization, and/or discuss possible future workshop dates. Commissioners, we kind of alluded to this the last time, but we did not set any real framework. Um, and so today's agenda item is to try to hopefully get that framework set on our calendars and really provide us a way forward to make those strategic decisions that I know we, we want to make after all the good work that we've put together. Uh, Kalen, welcome. Would you, um, share with the court some of the, the concepts that, that we've been talking about? Maria Betia is also in the courtroom. She can help, kind of chime in and, and help, uh, in this discussion as well.
Yeah. Good morning, Judge. Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for having me. Um, although we don't have a, a specific presentation for today, we did want to provide a brief update on some of our progress since the December fifteenth. Um, presentations are right now, we're working on developing a proposed, um, sort of spending decision-making process for ARPA funds to continue allocating those funds toward various projects. So we're currently gathering, you know, all the information that we, um, received as part of our community outreach, sort of making, um, a project prioritization list based on, you know, overlap between stakeholders, um, and community needs from those various, uh, populations that we reached out to, and also working on organizing those based on, you know, ones that fit neatly into the eligibility requirements of the Treasury, those that require additional, um, consideration by the county, um, to kind of help you all make an informed final determination, um, on spending for, you know, your ARPA fiscal recovery funds. Um, we're working toward revisiting you all, um, the, I believe it's the next court date at the end of this month, um, to kind of surface and go over that, that proposed plan with you, but wanted to make you all aware of kind of next steps and what we're working on. Um, and I think the judge has also mentioned a workshop date. I'm not sure exactly when that will be or the content, but our team is certainly happy to support, you know, um, to be part of that workshop or any information that we can provide to, to kind of make that a productive meeting. Um, please just let us know, and, and we'll deliver.
So my proposal, commissioners, is to have, if Kalen is talk, is, is mentioning the next meeting, to be able to bring forward the, um, prioritizations, that would be January twenty-sixth, and I wanted to propose today that a workshop be held, uh, potentially on the, uh, the twentieth or the, um, the twenty-first, uh, depending on your availability. And also, Kalen, one of the things that, that had come out of, of the discussions, um, from the, I think by now, all the commissioners have a copy of the collaborative work that you guys have done from the community forums. And what seems, uh, very evident is that we could actually choose priorities and then get, do a deeper dive into the projects under those priorities. Is that how you see this trans, I mean, at least, that's what I heard you say this past week in the, in our meeting.
Yes. So we did categorize, um, you know, the, the various projects and ideas that we received into certain themes. Um, you know, those are, are themes that capture, except the major ideas that we received. They're not necessarily aligned to IFR eligibility. Um, although we can help you guys work through any eligibility questions on those projects. Um, but using, you know, those different categories, we did back into, you know, kind of proportionally, um, the seventy million that the county has, you know, and will, will receive, um, in relation to those themes, so we can provide a high-level breakout. And I believe that was in the, um, it was in the Strategic Fiscal Recovery Plan. Um, that was an attachment on the December fifteenth agenda, um, and part of Rachel's, uh, presentation that day.
Okay, so the idea, commissioners, is that you, by the twentieth or the twenty-first, you have had a month to look over the strategic plan, and, um, on the twentieth, we could actually agree on those themes, right? And as an example, Kalen, a theme might be, I'm looking at Daryl Airwood, so I'm going to choose it, infrastructure, um, for IT, right? Uh, another theme could be mental health. Um, another theme could be drainage. Is that how a theme might be developed? I'm trying to give the court real expectations here.
Yes, and, and so what we can do, you know, in the Strategic Fiscal Recovery Plan that we did provide, we included tables of all the project ideas that we had received, so we could provide something ahead of that workshop that has those organized, and also includes the eligibility piece, so you guys can get a feel for, like I said, which ones fit more neatly, um, into the IFR eligibility categories, and which ones, um, you know, you guys will probably need to make some determination and have some conversation on surrounding how you want or where you want to, um, fund those projects. I think another big piece of this, and we're going to be working with Maria in the Ours Office to gather this information, is the lost revenue component. Um, I don't think we, we quite know. I know the Ours Office has been working diligently on that, but I think identifying, you know, what the amount of lost revenue is before you guys start making, you know, additional spending decisions is really critical.
Judge, I would, um, make the motion to have it pending everybody else's, um, schedule being okay, on January twentieth, being a Thursday, um, with a, not only just a workshop, but a, an action item, um, on the agenda. Sometimes workshops don't get the action item put on, so that way if we can make decisions that day, that we can make motions and do things. And I would also think that we should at least consider at that workshop, having discussions regarding the next round of money that is supposed to come. Obviously, it's not in the coffers, but so that we don't have to come back too many times, um, so we may need to, I get it. But just to maybe do it all at one time, as much as we can get on that second round, obviously, that would be contingent upon us getting it, but I think, you know, we're supposed to get it. So that would be, my motion was to, as long as everybody's okay on the twentieth.
Did anyone have a, a time on the twentieth?
Just start at, in the morning, and, or if that, or John, I don't, I mean, what's better?
Start at eight-thirty. I mean, I think this is going to be a long process, and, uh...
Start at eight.
And just, and, and to not, eight-thirty, okay, Belinda's going to work this out, okay? But I'm going to take that as a motion, and, and I hope it's okay to have, if it turns out nine for everybody or whatever. Um, I just want to say the county's in trial that week. It is a virtual trial, so I should be just fine, but I just want to give that caveat. So maybe nine might be better than eight-thirty or something like that.
Well, if you'd rather not do it that week, I don't...
No, look, I, my issue is, I want to make certain that the good work that we've just done does get put forward. But I also want to breed expectation here and not disappointment. What I think that we're looking at on the twentieth... Oh, you won't be here. Okay, so we will work on calendar, but I need to at least make a motion to have the workshop and make it subject to the commissioner's approval. Um, how's that?
Yeah, that, that's fine, and I, Judge, I don't want to do it in a time where you might have to, because of that trial, recess and leave for two hours either, and then we're all kind of stuck, so. But he can't do it that day anyway, so, and Friday's...
We'll work on it.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure everybody's got clear time.
No worries. Look, we'll work on it. I just want to make sure that we're all resolved to the workshop, but let me, let me go one step further, Kalen, because I don't want to leave the impression that Hagerty's recommendation is pretty specific. And the specific, the specific is, hey, on the workshop, why don't you guys pick your themes and the percentages? So for example, if there's, first of all, she, they want to show you what's left of the money, right? And then they want to say, look, you guys, here's all the data. You guys choose your percentages and, and how you think you're going to proportion these dollars.
I, I think that's...
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes total sense. I just want to have an action item so that we can...
That's great.
Put them into it. And then, um, Commissioner Gonzalez suggested the nineteenth, if, was that?
I'll, I'll, I'll certainly, I'm going to look.
That would be a reg, that would be a Wednesday if someone, if that works, that's fine with me, I mean...
If it's okay, we'll just make it, it doesn't work for, okay, but we're going to, subject to us getting the court administration to get us a, a solid date. But, um, again, what we're hoping, what, what I think the team that's been meeting week after week is hoping is the court will make some prioritizations as to theme and percentages of dollars, and then there's another deep dive on individual projects. Because when you see these projects, there's, they're numerous. And so the first thing to do is say, hey, I think we want to gather our collective thoughts and recognize we want to spend it in these areas. And then we want to look at these priorities. And then there's, um, the eligibility piece of it, but what Kalen's saying is, don't get ready to make too many quick decisions until you know your lost revenue, because your government services, which is most of the requests fall under, can only be applied to that amount of money that equals lost revenue. And so that's why I just want to make sure that you know that every time we make an ARP decision on government services, I'm basing that off a three and a half million dollar. That wasn't final, Dale. It was just sort of a, a cautionary number. But we want to know that we don't go over those amounts, and that's why Kalen's saying, I caution to put anything to ARP at this time that gets too hefty on the, on the price tag, because your, your lost revenue is your max. And I think the workshop could better explain. Go ahead, Dale.
Yes, Your Honor, my, my staff, uh, internal office worked out the vision of doing the balances for lost revenue. It's right about three point five million. We've already submitted this, this information to Hagerty for, for their
Thank you.
review and analysis. We've also submitted to Collier, Johnson and Wood to make sure they're in agreement with us as well. Right now, we, we believe it's at three point five million for the first year.
Five million a year?
No, for the first year.
For, right, for, for the first year?
Yes.
But that, and then there's the...
We have to reevaluate every year based on our, our, our revenue and the balances, how, how we project the balances, and the, uh, the Treasury has different, uh, rules and requirements we have to meet, so every year we have to reevaluate how, how it is. We put in some different balances for what they consider growth on there. If you follow their entire amounts through, to, in twenty-twenty-six, it's around ten million.
So of the thirty-five million that we've gotten, you're saying only three point five million can be attributed towards, at this point, based on what you...
Actual lost revenue, but there are some, we, we, we able, we're able to go up to twenty-twenty-six, so we, there's some evaluations we're, we're doing through how the Treasury allows us to put some, some possible gains and, and on different, uh, types of revenue, and how we, what we, uh, what we count for. And right now, if we did everything together, it's closer to nine, ten million total, but for... to nine, 10 million total. But for the first year, it was 3.5.
Okay. So we'll have all that cleared up on this workshop whenever we do it so that we can have those.
We'll have our, our known amounts that both are estimated on what the future amounts are, based on what Treasury is. And we're working with the College of Johnson and Woods as well as Haggerty to make sure we evaluate what we've prepared.
Okay, fair enough. And whenever the calendar works, you know, if the 19th works for everybody, that's fine. If, whatever.
Okay, so.
That's my motion.
All right. So I'm going to take that as a motion. And it's, it is flexible on the date to, to make it mutually acceptable. But the motion is seconded by Commissioner Gonzalez, is that correct?
I think we even did it, I think we've already done that even. I think we already made a motion to do this, but we'll do it again. I mean, because I think we all want to do it.
Yeah. And I think, I think what I want to make sure is that, that the expectation is that on the workshop, we're not going to be deciding on individual projects, right? That the concept here is to really get us to the next step, which is the framework, so that the projects can then, you can actually start seeing how individual projects set in. But the goal would be by March to make those decisions.
I think we have to decide, I think we have to talk about individual projects to some degree to know how, how much to put in each category. I mean, I think we're going to have to have some discussion of individual projects.
It'll definitely come, it'll definitely come through. I think Haggerty, that's why I was hoping, Kalen, if you would, if I could pressure you to go just one step further, because I think my concern is, is that we're leaving the impression that it's your all's recommendation to make these decisions in a workshop. And that's not the framework that we, that we, that you guys have recommended.
No, primarily because, like I said, it sounds, it sounds like we are closer than we had thought on the lost revenue piece. So we'll be connecting with Dale, the CPA for Maria on that. But also, like I said, wanting to, if, once we have the allocations and based on the themes approved, you know, then that might be a, a good first step and we can move into providing you all, hey, under this first theme, here's all the project ideas we received, their cost estimates, eligibility considerations. We could do it in step-by-step process like that. I think that would be more productive. I think sometimes if we, if we dive into specific projects too early, that might create, you know, some challenges. Sorry. But no, I definitely think doing the themes and we can have that, like I said, create some information to support that workshop and have that ready for you all. Looks like we'll have the lost revenue piece, which will be really critical there for your awareness. But I think that's a great first step for this.
Yeah, it, it's, it's going to flow beautifully. You're going to wind up, I think, being very content with when you see all the work that's been done. The idea here is just to be super comprehensive. There's a lot of vetting that gets, there's a lot of switching around. Like some have eligibility, for example, in multiple categories. That's a great example of, you know, you want to know what your percentages are so that you can, if you will, make them fit where they're best, where the, where the bucket of the money can be managed the best. I, I think it's going to work once we just get to the workshop. It will be a public workshop and, and we'll get back with the, the court as soon as possible. Okay, Kalen, thank you very much. If there are any other questions for Kalen, not, we'll, we'll let her, we'll let her roll.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Okay. In the, in the spirit of that, there are some ARP discussions and I.
We need to vote on that, she said?
Oh, we certainly do. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And, and Belinda, and if you'd work with, with I, they on this, you know, it's going to be one of those two weeks. We've got a, a little window here of that week. We'll know more as we get involved with the trial, what days are open. Okay. Items eight, nine, 10, and 11 actually all deal with ARP, but one of them had a, a legal component. And we do have a Porta Corpus Christi lawyer here. And in interest of his time, I'd like to advance item 10. And just know that I'm happy to take nine, 10, and 11 in a row, because it's all the same, well, not all the same, but it is relatable to the same department, the environmental officers. But I think it would help us in our discussion if we heard from the port first on item 10. Might make decision-making easier on item 11. And we're looking for him. He's coming. As we, as we wait for him, item nine, here he is. Okay, so item, welcome. This is Dane Brune, Porta Corpus Christi counsel. Dane, we have an agenda item that I've advanced today. It's item number 10, and it's discuss and consider requesting the funding assistance from the Porta Corpus Christi authority to help fund the salary of a third environmental enforcement officer. Commissioner Gonzalez, you've got the lawyer here. If you wanted to ask your questions, he can properly answer.
Well, I just made a recommendation to see was the possibility of the port partnering with us and allowing a, a funding for another environmental officer that covers all the county and even probably sections of the port, you know, that we only have two and we probably need two more. But as I, I, I mentioned, about one from the port and then probably one from us, probably.
Good morning. Yeah, I, I was asked to look into it by the port's chief external affairs officer yesterday. I talked to the county attorney. I, my opinion is that really the only way to, to, is it on?
She just wants you to get closer to it, for the people online.
Pull it up. I'm sorry, can you?
You're tall. There you go.
Sorry. The only legal mechanism I could see to, to perform, to enter into an agreement for these types of services would be an interlocal agreement. And the, that's codified in, in the government code in chapter 791. And so really, for an interlocal contract, you have to have, both of the governmental entities need to be, have the authority to perform the services. And so the port, the, their regulatory powers are in chapter 60 of the water code. And we don't have the authority to enforce environmental regulations. And so in my opinion is that an, an interlocal cooperation contract would not work for, to do this. And so I don't really see how we can do it legally, just to fund the salary of a, of a employee of a political subdivision, of another political subdivision.
How, what, I'm trying to find the difference on this and also on the difference on the NCDC that you provide all this money to and, and the pier and all. How, how do you, how do we do that? I mean, how, how do you provide so much money to a couple of entities or three entities that, I mean, you have nothing to do with? I mean, but, you know, we, we're the one that oversee it, you know, and it's part of the county. But and the port has nothing to do with it because you're not even, you know, but how do we do, how do you do that? I mean, I just want to figure out what, what are the checking balances here?
Yes, sir. So that's a good question. The, the, the way we do, so for the NCDC, we entered into a development services agreement. And the port uses promotion and development funds to, to, to fund the services, which we consider to be, to promote and develop the port, port industries. And the scope of services are spelled out in, in that contract. And so really, we consider the, the port considered the, the services that NCDC provides to be promotion and development services. And for the, for the pier rebuilding, it was also, it's a, it's a, those were P and D expenses. They were, it's, the port is listed as a sponsor and has its name on the pier. It's a, it's a promotional expense for the port.
Why would it be a promotion expense for the port?
How would?
How would it be a, a promotional expense for the port, the pier?
The pier?
It's, it wasn't a pier. It was the observation deck.
It was the observation.
I know, I just want to make sure he, it's not a pier.
You have nothing to do with the pier. You don't work at the pier. You don't, you know, it belongs to us, the county. So I'm just trying to find the connection here, you know? I, I could say, do promotional work with the environmental over here, you know, and do a promotional. So I think what, what I hear you saying, they're very selective, you know, projects that y'all can select if you want them, you know? So I really, I'm not really happy with the answer, really, you know? But I just, I, I think that we maybe we need to go back to the table and, and I think, I don't know if you have a committee or not, maybe they need to review it. I think some of the people that we appoint there shouldn't, you know, should at least get involved in this, you know? But, you know, I, you know, I think what we're doing here is for Nueces County benefit. I guess you want to call it development, you can, because, you know, they're promoting, you know, environmental development to, to making sure it's clean and, you know, the port areas are clean and all that. So that has to do more with the port area than, than the, than the, than the pier. So, I mean, I don't know how you, I, I still, of course, to tell you the truth, I'm not really happy with the answer, but.
Dane, I have a few questions for you. It's your legal opinion that it would not be legal under the intergovernmental agreements in order to fund salaries, is that correct?
That's correct.
And it was vetted both, I mean, the Porta Corpus Christi provides dollars to the CCR ADC and to the San Patricio EDC and to the RADC and to other entities that deal with economic development. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, let me ask.
And, excuse me, sir.
Well, I, I wasn't finished.
Excuse me. I'm, I'm, I will appreciate your question.
I wasn't finished, Judge.
I'll get right back to your question. Right back to your question. Commissioner Chesney?
He didn't even get a chance to finish.
Excuse me, sir. I'm, I'm speaking. Please, please wait.
Sir.
You're out of order. You're out of order.
I'm going to call for a point of order, which I'm allowed to do, and I will ask for a vote of the court.
For heaven's sakes.
Well, but Judge, you, you got to let him finish.
I asked, I said I have two questions, Brent.
But he was trying to finish his train of thought.
Oh, my goodness.
I'm asking is let him finish. I, I mean, I, I'm, I'm pretty much in agreement with Dane's saying, but I'd like Commissioner Gonzalez to be able to finish.
The other thing I would like to ask, if you don't mind, is that, so say for instance, in your legal opinion, that's not legal, but so is there a, a pot of money that's legal that we can use for that?
To fund the salary of another governmental entity?
The expense, the extension, so we can cover the, the port area also for environmental issues and environmental problems?
No, sir. I'm not aware of any legal authority that allows the port to fund the salary of, of a county employee.
Okay. But we buy, but you fund, you fund the money for the pier, which is construction money to, for, for somebody else to use it. So you, you're actually funding salaries, right? Because you're paying a construction company to do work. So how do you, how do you divide both of them?
How do we, so the, 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 the mechanism that the count, that the port used to fund the construction of the observation deck on the new pier was a, a grant funding agreement. And the grant funding agreement stated that the port was using P and D funds. It's subchapter H of chap, chapter 60 of the Texas Water Code, which basically states that the port can use up to 5% of its revenue to, for promotion, promotional expenses. And one of those things is essentially advertising. And I don't have the statute in front of me. Sorry, I can't recite all the, all the available, you know.
Well, if it's for advertisement, then it's not for rent then, right? Can you use rent for that? Can you pay rent for that kind, with the money, with the grant?
To pay rent to the county?
Yeah, for an office.
I think he's back on the NCDC.
Well, so it, the, for, we don't specify in, well, for NCDC, we're, we're paying for, the port is paying for the, what it considers development services. We're paying, we're paying for NCDC to go out and find business to come here and to, or to expand and, and to focus on the port area, or really anywhere in Nueces County. But so we don't, they don't, I guess NCDC doesn't bill the port by the hour or say, we're going to use your money for rent. But I suppose they could.
Well, you don't have to bill it by the hour. You could give us a grant.
Exactly. That's, that's, it's, they're paid, NCDC's paid, I believe, quarterly.
So is there a grant that we can apply for something on the other side?
I suppose the county could apply for, for a grant. I just not sure how, I don't know if it would, how, how that would work. I mean, that would be the, you know, I guess the county could apply.
But your legal.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
And as I was saying before I was so rudely interrupted.
Before you rudely interrupted him, yes.
As I was saying, because I was so rudely interrupted for the second time.
Thank you.
It is not, it is your legal opinion that there is no salary that could be currently paid under the water code or under an interlocal agreement. That's really the whole purpose of today, was just to hear the legal opinion, not to debate what has already been legally satisfied by counsel at the port on other projects. Although it's an interesting conversation, we're really here to talk about the legality of a salary, in which case your opinion stands the same. If there are grants, the county can apply for those grants as long as they meet the criteria. That's the bottom line. In this case, supplementing salary does not meet any legal criteria that you can see.
That's right.
Okay, that's all.
That you can see now, remember, you're not, you're not saying no or yes, is that you can see, right? So there's a, there's a thin line there that it could be possibility.
We'll, we'll look into it. I wasn't prepared to answer questions about the, the promotion development funds. Sir, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Well, thank you.
But I, I thought it was really focused on funding the salary of another.
That he is talking about the funding of the salary. He's, there is a confusion here. He, we need to make certain that we're clear. The port cannot fund salaries under P and D, and it cannot fund salaries under an interlocal, because that's not a service that the port provides. That's the legal opinion that was given to us, and you're here to articulate that. If there is a grant for something else, you're not here to answer that. But for, for clarity's sake, we vetted the observation deck with Counselor Welder. And it's not just P and D, but it was also that educational component that the port would be receiving promotion on, and has nothing to do with salaries of construction or anything else.
Judge, I'd move to table, item 10 indefinitely, just so we can move on.
I'll second that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Now we're going to talk about the premium pay to environmental. Thank you, Dane, for making the trek over here. Item nine is discuss and consider American Rescue Plan Act, premium pay to environmental enforcement officers. And that came about from last time. We needed to make sure we could vet, and we have vetted it with Haggerty. Kalen is still on, but it has been vetted to include them in the premium pay. Did I hear you say you have a motion?
I'm moving.
Got a motion? And, and forgive me, when we say premium pay, we mean premium pay as to the 20% for the law enforcement.
Okay.
Motion and a second from modest. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So that, that has to do with nine, and Kalen is keeping track of our expenditures as well as the auditors. So when you come to workshop, you'll see this one, Kalen, is a government service qualifier. Is that correct? So it would come out of that, I'm sorry, it, it's part of the premium pay. So it comes out of just the premium pay piece of it?
Yeah. So for, yeah, for the premium pay for environmental officers, you know, if the county can make an argument on that, that this person was regularly involved in in-person interactions, handling items handled by others, then they will fit the definition of, of an essential worker. You know, also, please remember that, you know, recipients have the, the discretion to expand, you know, the approved sectors identified by the Treasury to award premium pay. It's my understanding that this is a public safety officer. Please correct me if I'm wrong. So that would be included in the original sectors identified by the Treasury.
Yes, I can confirm. That's, that's correct. Okay. So in keeping with item 10 being indefinitely tabled and the legal conclusion, I had placed item 11 to discuss and consider creation of third environmental officer position and include the possible funding under the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. I had asked Teresa to give us a, an amount of money, or I think Julie also had sent the right amount so that you could know what the, what the total is for this particular third officer. And this would be a government service that would come from those lost revenues, Kalen.
I thought we said two officers.
Excuse me, Kalen, this would be.
Yes, Judge, more than likely, you know, payroll for public health and safety employees as, for the time that they're, you know, excuse me, as, for the time that they're directly responding to or mitigating COVID-19 is coverable. But it sounds like this employee, it's, it's more bolstering, you know, your, your existing government services versus hiring them to directly respond to, to COVID-19. So the backup would, for that would be lost revenue is probably the more appropriate place to cover.
Got it.
You know, disposition in entirety.
Okay, just wanted to make. Okay, just wanted to make sure that we're tracking this, because as you said earlier, we've got to be careful that there is, we've already made a lot of appropriations, and the court should know kind of where we are on these lost, on the lost revenue equals government services, so this particular agenda item is for a third officer and to be paid for under ARP, and I'll make, there's.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, Teresa is gonna, I'm going to call for discussion because she's going to give us the amounts.
Actually, Judge, so, total salary including benefits would be $45,419.99.
Okay.
$45,000.
And so, that's $45,000 for a third officer, and this, because I know we have environmental officers in the room, this would mean that you could keep your senior clerk, or maybe it's not a senior, but you keep your clerk, it is a senior clerk, you would keep your clerk and get another officer now, so that you could still have that ability to have that paperwork being done as the budget provided for, and this third officer would give you that opportunity to have the extra manpower in the field.
Judge, I don't know if they were in there when we voted for them to get that premium pay, I don't know if they were in there or not that either.
I don't know either.
So, we also voted for y'all to get the premium pay like law enforcement, I don't know if you were in the room when we did that.
Commissioners and Judge, yes, I was.
Okay, wonderful.
Really appreciate that.
Absolutely, so, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
One clarification I need to have with Hagerty on this question, with this position being paid out of, already paying ARPA funds, do they qualify for premium pay also under ARPA funds?
So, to be, you know, a recipient of premium pay, you don't necessarily have to be responding to COVID-19, so for premium pay, there's more eligibility, now, of course, it would only be for their ongoing work, right, if this is a new position, and, you know, as we've.
COVID's not going away, they're going to be.
You know, premium pay is tied to the public health emergency, unfortunately, I don't think we're, you know, COVID will be ending anytime soon, but in the event that the public health emergency did end, premium pay is no longer eligible.
Well, the reason why I ask, because you said the salary for this position would be paid out of lost revenue, the premium pay is not out of lost revenue, so I wanted to say, make sure that this is a qualifying expense, because we have other individuals in this particular fund that we're excluding from premium pay, so we want to make sure that, what we should be paying not.
Yeah, Dale, let me double check on that, I see the issue you bring up now, that if it were, was concurrently funded by ARP, and then could it also receive the additional premium pay to ARP, I'd like the opportunity to look back at the guidance and double check for that, but I'll connect with you on that, and let you know what we find, if that's okay.
So, that may be.
I understand the distinction, yeah, I understand the distinction and.
Yeah, I'd like an opportunity to revisit the guidance, just to make sure we're giving you correct information.
Right, Officer, the, just for clarity, that exchange is about what happens when you have ARP funding the actual, the actual salary, does ARP also qualify, does premium pay actually qualify in that scenario? And she's going to investigate it, so for now, the court has already voted for it, but we're trying to decipher what bucket of money pays for it, I don't think it affects you per se, but it does affect our budgetary, you know, allocations, so I just want you to know that, okay?
And, and just to clarify, Judge, I don't think they're currently being paid out of ARPA, it would just be this third position.
Just the third position, yeah, you, the two officers that are currently serving, no problem, it would just be for this new third one, and again, the court's already voted on the first two, just give us a chance to work on the third.
And on the premium pay for those officers, on the, we got another item coming up, you mentioned about an advance when my department is, you want to move that as well.
Let's do it.
But I think you got another issue on this, but we're doing an advance payment for, because the last time we had court, the court wanted to do the original individuals, we didn't want to wait till April to pay them, we wanted to advance them some, so if we do an advance, we'll make sure we adjust the balances for the law enforcement of the environmental to cover theirs from October to now.
Correct, okay, great, and, and so.
And I think that's item C4 under the auditor that he was discussing, if you're calling it.
Right, that's item C4 for advancement, and that's exactly what Dale just went over, is our wish and desire was to help people sooner rather than later, and so this, this agenda item would advance $250 for eligible full-time employees and $125 for eligible part-time employees for work performed, is there a motion to approve this proposal on timing of payments?
No move.
I've got a motion and a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, all right, so, that is, does not conclude our ARP, but certainly.
Judge.
Goes nine, 10, and 11, I've got another one on eight, Commissioner Chesney, you have a question?
Yes, ma'am, I was just going to make a motion to table, since we're there, number 12, to the January 26 meeting, please.
I will.
We probably need to.
Motion and a second, I'll second that motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Table to January 26 for the clerk, I had a table as well, item number four, motion to table, can I get a second on 3A4?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Judge, I have another table, I'm sorry.
I'll take it, which one?
It's on consent agenda, the county clerk has a doctor's appointment, could not be here today, consent agenda, P.
All right, I'll table, motion to table, P, and I'll second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, for the clerk, we've got a few housekeeping there that we took care of, let's go back in time, and then I promise we'll get back in regular order, but to sort of continue so that Kalen can stay with us on ARP questions, item number eight is also ARP, it also has to do with premium pay, this was the leftover as well, we weren't sure if the county health district employees had been covered on another grant for salary, and we have discovered that it was not, it was not across the board, it was only on overtime hours worked, it was a retention grant, so item number eight is to allow premium pay to, on the 10%, to be applied equally to the city of Corpus Christi, Neises County Health District Employees that are on the county side, and I believe at last count, there were 32 of them.
Thirty-three, yes.
Thirty, somewhere, very close, anyway, we have an official list, so.
Get this down to 27.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, all right, well, forgive me, but whatever the official list is, Dale will confirm, I'll make a motion, is there a second?
I'd like to, second, but I got a discussion.
Go ahead.
And I'm sorry, what was the number that was going?
Twenty-seven.
Of, and that 27 represents what again?
County.
Total number of employees for the city county health, including 1115 waiver.
County employees.
Okay, I'm just.
Only, only county employees.
Are we gonna, since they got that workforce grant, and I know that the city employees got 14.2, do we go with that grant and give them the same amount that the city employees got, or do, I mean, I don't want to give it less than the city, less than the city employees got, because, and both grants, there were two grants, one for a city, one for county, and I know theirs was 14.21, so, I'm just, remember Dale asked you last time, and.
Well, that's an issue that the health department will have to bring forward, the, when the city got their information, they did 14.2%, I believe, across the board for their employees.
Right.
Now, currently, our health department director is requesting a certain percentage based on overtime hours, it was on what the grant is, so, they'll have to bring that information to you, and then how you divert, disperse the funds is up to y'all and them.
Well, you know, we'd never agree to paying overtime hours, you know, but.
Time hours, not paying overtime, it's based on.
Even that, I wouldn't ever base it on.
Well, that's how they did it, but.
But, you know, but my question is, at this point here, are the county employees will get paid from that workforce grant, or do we get paid like other employees did outside the workforce grant, you know, the other one that they submitted?
The workforce grant is, is by itself, and they will be paid in excess funding on top of what they currently make by the grant, based on wherever the grant was that was issued, and however, the health department brings forward to y'all for approval to be dispersed, so, they had to bring that to you for dispersment of how we disperse the funds, so.
Well.
No funds have been dispersed yet.
So, that's another pot of money.
Yes.
Yeah, so, and then, the motion here is for them to get what percentage?
10%.
Okay.
10% ARPA funds.
Like all our other county employees.
My question now going to be, would they still be able to get the workforce grant?
Yes.
They would, so they get 10, and 10 is 20.
It's a totally different money.
Well, we have to come back in here.
Don't get upset, I'm just asking.
That's something that would be brought, they were awarded the grant, we have the grant, the grant was specific for retention or continuance and that, and however the grant was issued, Annette, and we'll have to bring that to you, they're the one that drafted the grant, they're the one that saw the grant, how they put the budget in for the grant, so they'll have to bring, they'll have to be the one that bring it forward to how, to how to fund it.
Yeah, but that grant was really designed for incentive, right, to, it's incentive paid to keep the employees.
Yes.
In, but it doesn't say anything about overtime hours or anything about overtime.
I didn't create the grant, I just know how they, they did.
I know, but I'm telling you, because I read the grant, so, and what they submitted is really ridiculous, I mean, I would never go with what they submitted.
That's what they submitted, so.
But that's not before it's today.
No, it's not before it's today.
That'd be a whole separate agenda item.
That would be a definite, I told them, if they wanted to bring that, they had to bring it to court for approval.
As long as it comes through us.
Okay, well, come to you, yes.
Dr. Wilmott, do you want to just address the 10%? That's really the only agenda item here, is the 10% for county.
I'm good, I'll call the question on that one.
Excuse me, I just want to make sure that he was wanting to say something, I know that it's okay for him to speak.
Thank you, Judge, no, I'm here if you have questions on the way the other grant was actually determined, if you have questions, but the motion is for the premium pay.
Correct.
So, I, I mean.
Okay, you can maybe contact Commissioner afterwards so that he can understand it.
I understand what's going on.
Okay, so, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that item, item is passed, we, I want to just double check, there's no more ARP, so I can let Kalen go, if somebody would also do a double check for me on American Rescue Plan Act.
I have one thing on ARP.
Is it an agenda item?
Uh, no, well, I don't know.
I'm looking for agenda items right now.
B5.
Say it again.
B5.
B5, thank you.
Public Works.
Okay, let's, let's do that one.
Five.
Um, B5, Public Works, thank you, are there any others, just so we can? Okay, all right, this is one of the last ones that deal with American Rescue Plan Act, and it's to fund purchase of equipment for Public Works, this also was last court, and it's got some, I need to move to the, to that part of the folder, but it has A, B, C, and D, and each of them have different price tags, and I would like to draw your attention to the fact that I think that earlier today, we decided that there would be a good opportunity in the next 10 days to have a workshop, and I'd like to bring this in the workshop so that you could.
I'd like to move that we go ahead and do it, this is the second time it comes to court.
Excuse me.
I'd like to make a motion.
Excuse me, sir, I'm speaking.
Make a motion, Judge.
I, I'm, let me just finish here, I'd like to make a motion that we wait till the workshop, however, in the discussion part, I'd like to get a second, and then if we could get part of the discussion, one, if you, since you're standing there, would you mind going over them again, it just would be helpful, I know you've got the price tags there, and it will help, some of them might have more urgency than others, some of the bigger ticket items, the concept here is that the court earlier this morning is about to have a workshop where we pretty much allocate a great amount of dollars to our themes, we already know one of the themes, themes is drainage and infrastructure, but it is a little concerning, if you might want something else more, it'd be better to see it in its whole context, but will you go over them again, I know you did last time, and also talk about the dollars and the priority for some of these items.
Yes, ma'am, Judge, Commissioners, good morning, and the, and last time when we came to court, we requested on item A, we had three new excavators, we went ahead and lowered that down to two excavators, and the reason for that, Judge and Commissioners, is because that way we could at least work to see we can bring the price down somewhat. The excavators are to clean out, and really, they're called grade aws, but we put on their excavators, is to, is to clean our roadside ditches, and I know that in the past, a few rain events that we've had, you know, with our equipment that we have, we only have two at this time, and this will increase our efficiency, and it'll, it will be more efficient, and also, we can do more work within each individual precinct, where we can stage one grade awe at each precinct and have one person, an operator, at each precinct continuously grading ditches since we're on a backlog, I know we get a lot of calls from the constituents regarding this, I bought drainage, and it is an important piece of equipment in our, in our, in our, under Public Works, and that cost is, and I'm sorry, Judge, I didn't put my glasses, $890,494.
For both?
Yes, ma'am, and then, item number two is the two six-inch powered pumps and trailers, I know, again, in the last rain event that we had, past few rain events that we've had, we had to scramble in trying to look for pumps at that time, and in this case, these pumps would belong to us, instead of trying to look for a rental company that might not have them during that timeframe, because pretty much everybody's running out pumps during, during a rain event, and this will be staged at our central yard and one of our four yard or Rothstein yard, so, we'll have them stationed in each yard, we have rented out these before, and if you look at the numbers on this, by the time you run out a one pump, you're pretty much going to pay for the pump itself. Item number two, I mean, I'm sorry, item C is the six new tractor mowers and rotary cutters, these mowers that we have right now, Judge and Commissioners, as I mentioned before, and I hope you don't think that I'm exaggerating, is that these mowers that we have are either 1970 or 1980 pieces of equipment, mowers, in this case, we were requesting these mowers, I know we got a call here last week from a constituent that we hadn't been out there cutting their, their area, and, and so, what we have to do is demobilize from, on the east side of town, on the east side of the county, and come immobilize back up on the west side of the county, in order to, to react and make sure that, that we're mowing and keeping the constituents happy, these mowers will, will be new mowers that we're planning on using, I know that our other yards are willing to help out, our people that are staffed, that they're just dedicated for mowing themselves, and our other yards are planning on using some of their personnel to assist with mowing, so this will be another additional piece of equipment that we can stage other personnel, and again, be more efficient, and also minimize the calls that we get from the constituents.
How much is the price tag for those?
I'm sorry, Judge, that one's $489,961 for the six mowers, I think they're like $75,000 apiece.
And how much was it for the first one, I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
For the first one, Commissioner, those are for the grade aws or the excavators, $890,494.
Thank you.
And then for the two diesel pumps, it's $60,692, should wear my glasses.
Okay.
I think that's $80,692 for the water pumps.
$80,000 instead of 60, okay, and then that hydro vac truck is the last one?
Yes, the, well, the last one is a hydro vac truck, what we initially had, we had two hydro vac trucks, we went ahead and came back for this Commissioners' court and reduced it, I know, because of, because of costs, and this will at least get us to where we don't have to be renting out a hydro vac truck, this, this equipment, Judge and Commissioners, is to use to clean out the coverts, the driveway coverts, so when we're cleaning out the ditches, it's hard for us to go in there and jet out the dirt that's accumulated within the past 20 or 30 years, and in this case, with this, with this hydro vac, it has a jetter where you can jet out the dirt and at the same time vacuum out the dirt, so, it'll help us out in keeping positive drainage since, and also minimize our time when we're cleaning out these coverts, this is a new piece of equipment that Public Works will have, and it's much needed, I know we're renting out some pieces of equipment here in the past few months, and it is an expensive piece of equipment to run out, and I know it's a high cost, it's $471,791.
$471.
Yeah, $471,791, and.
I just want to clarify, what we have is $445, $435.
Okay.
That's close, and I'm going to call it four, okay.
I'm sorry.
And what's the total of all of this?
Belinda, do you have a total on that? I know I have one, but before we.
One point nine million.
It's roughly one point nine.
One point nine.
Okay, and I have a a question for you.
Yes, Judge.
You don't care where the money comes from, as long as you get all your equipment, right?
Uh, that's a decision the court has to make.
Right, but but.
No, that's that's not, that's not my, that's not my decision.
You're here to tell us that you need this equipment, and that this equipment would be essential for drainage, because that's going to be, if we do choose to use some of the funds for American Rescue Plan Act, we can use it for drainage. We did vet the eligibility of equipment, and they said it was okay, as long as you're going to use it for the purposes of our drainage issues.
Yes, ma'am.
So we, the court, put forth a million dollars in priority for COs 2021. We haven't spent any of those dollars yet for Public Works equipment, or have we? That's the question to you.
Judge, I know we've already, we already, uh, and as a matter of fact, Yolanda's not here today, but she has already have a list for expenditures of those, uh, eight hundred thousand or seven hundred ninety-something thousand.
Yeah, I think you mentioned that last time, Judge.
But I I just haven't seen it. I haven't seen it.
Yes, we're gonna, we're, it's on the, we're going to put it on the next Commissioner's Court agenda.
Okay.
And we haven't been meeting with Michael, or the the information has already been sent to purchasing.
Okay, so we're going to work on on that million dollars, because that million dollars is pretty recent for for equipment.
Yes, ma'am, and.
List that Juan provided forward budget-wise that we removed from his his, uh, list to be able to c- capture budget, and that's what he'll be using to just, uh, to fund forward.
Okay, and, um.
I'm sorry, what'd you say, Joe?
When we were working on our budget items, he had a bunch of capital aid lists, I believe it was around eight hundred ninety thousand, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, sir, it's a hundred, eight hundred and ninety.
For budget reasons, so we we removed that out and said it will be used out of the CO fund, so that's what he, that's the funds he's talking about.
Yeah, I mean, to me, I don't have a problem with this list at all. The problem I have is that it seems to me to be smart about how you see the bucket of money, and when it comes to drainage, we've had some great drainage workshops already, and we're going to be working towards a maintenance operation contract, and we're also going to potentially work towards a, uh, a, uh, potentially a regional drain, uh, potent, potentially, excuse me, a regional wastewater system. And when I when I weigh them all, it seems that we would want to weigh everything. Is it not possible for this court to authorize, you know, half of the expenditure to at least give the court an opportunity to see how other expenditures for drainage, you know, could weigh in? And have you weighed in, you know, leasing equipment versus buying equipment and the maintenance that's involved with this equipment? Sometimes it, you know, there's, I I bet you you've done something like that. Uh, Teresa, did you want to pipe in here?
I just wanted to make a comment that, uh, eight hundred and ninety-five thousand, which are the funds that you're referring to from the 2021 COs, are on the capital project budget change order to allocate for for Public Works capital equipment.
Okay.
Morning, Commissioners and Judge.
Morning, Judge.
Jerry Garcia, Public Works. Uh, we're talking about all this drainage projects and stuff that are going on that is in plan. We've got a hundred and forty-four subdivisions, and we're looking at the subdivisions. Some of these drainings is going to happen, it's not going to happen in these subdivisions. And we're getting calls and calls on this drainage problems. That's why we're asking for this equipment. Uh, if we don't get it, we're going to get these mountains of calls, and you guys are going to get it too, because when they don't get nothing from us, you guys are going to be the ones that are going to be getting them calls. I just wanted to say that, but, uh, I mean, you know, that's how it's going to work. And we're going to put them in the schedule when they call, and they got to wait. They may wait a year, they may wait a year and a half, they're going to wait something. We came, we came putting fires all this time. Thank you, Commissioners Court.
Okay, um, you know, I'd I'd really like to see us, um, get you all this equipment, and I'd like to see that you get what we need for the purposes of drainage. And I don't know why we can't wait, you know, two weeks, but I, if it if it pleases the court, I, to me at least, the the water pumps and the hydro vac and the mowers add up to almost what the grade, what the grade aws add up to. And, you know, maybe we can at least piecemeal this so that I can see, you know, what other sources of of dollars are out there before we keep invading ARP, before we have our workshop. I mean, that's a huge expenditure.
Okay, I just wanted to offer up some timing.
All right.
Considerations for you guys. Uh, Juan has been working with our office, and and we're familiar with the quotes on these, and they're going to be procured from the proper sources. Um, what he's asking for today, I believe, was to for the court to allocate some funds to pay for these items. And then we would be coming back at the next court, once the court approves. We would come back after that to do the actual purchases. And so the next court is near the end of the month, uh, for us to do those purchases. So, um, if y'all decide between now and then, uh, I can bring the purchases on that agenda, and then we confirm up the funding sources in between now and then, however y'all want to do it. I just want to let y'all know that's the timing of when we'd be coming back, because today he's just asking for funding to be secured, and the actual purchase documents will come next time.
Judge, I'm comfortable with this. I think we've we've delayed this from the last time. We've spent millions of dollars of ARPA funds already without having a workshop. I think these are all necessary. I I I completely trust Juan's opinion on the need and Jerry's opinion on the need for this. I don't, I don't think anybody probably disagrees on the need. And like I said, I think we've delayed it once already to to have the time to come back and talk about it, and now's the time to come back and talk about it, and I'd make a motion to approve all of this.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion, a second, and call for just more discussion, and just for the record, it's not about delaying from one court to another. It was a delay so that we could see, if you're going to allocate 20%, let's just say, of the remaining field of dollars for ARP, which is about sixty million dollars, to drainage, that would be a lot, that'd be a huge allocation, okay? I just want you to know that 20% has already been used up to the tune of two million dollars. That's the acknowledgement that I'm letting you know.
Well, it's not 20% of the total amount, Judge, it's 20% of the remaining, and I think that's a big distinction, because there was thirty-five million, so this is about, I'm going to say eight percent maybe, because three, or let's see, three point five would be ten. Right, but I'm saying of the total, we have to be fair and look at it as a total. And really, the total is seventy million, we just haven't gotten the other thirty-five. So if you take that, then two million on a seventy million dollar expenditure is even less of a percentage. So I I think this is, I don't think this is outlandish, I don't, I think we need it. I I think we're blessed that we have these ARPA funds to be able to use it for these things. I I I, we we get it, we got to, we got to use them, a lot of this on drainage, and and, oh my gosh, we have no shortage of drainage projects, uh, you know, right now, and and that they can use this for, so.
I think it, I think that, um, it would be great to see a drainage plan, you know, with this equipment. You know, like, as you said, put it in, you know, a plan to put them in the the different precincts. That's a good concept. You know, a plan for, you know, how we're going to take these federal dollars that are meant for transformational change and actually achieve them. So we welcome, we welcome that concept, if you would, you know, bring that forward.
Judge, just to let you all know, uh, we do have a main, a plan, and it follows our seven-year plan, which is our road and, which is our road maintenance plan. So so once we go do a road, we're going to be doing drainage, just at the same time we're doing a road improvement. I mean, our, uh, either maintenance on our road, or rehab of a road, so it'll be part of our maintenance plan. So we do have a plan.
Okay, just, let's let's see it, let's just send it in writing and add all these equipment, and, you know, make all the adjustments so that we can take a look at it, and we can also publish it to the people.
We we will.
Okay, all right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, we are going to move, um, over to, um, the, um.
Judge, I think there's one ARPA on the consent, which is J.
There was, there was, I was looking for that one.
If you're trying to keep those all together.
Yes, we do, but let's just do consent, and then we'll do that together. We'll do consent, and then I'll, um, I see that we have other members here ready to make some presentations, so I'll I'll take tackle that quickly. Uh, let's do consent, knowing that ARPA is inside of it, in, um, excuse me, one of the agenda items. Uh, two A through letter W, A through W, is there a motion, Commissioners, to approve such consent agenda?
Hang on, Judge, I'm sorry, I think I misquoted that J was not an ARPA in there.
Okay, A through W.
My bad.
Excuse me, A through W.
And P was tabled.
And P, excluding P, because it was already tabled, that's correct for the clerk.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have to pull.
Yeah, I've got some to pull, too.
Okay, can you let me know which ones?
J and M.
J and M is in Mary, okay?
Q.
Q.
R, was was R tabled or not?
No.
R.
R.
Got one more.
J, M, Q, and R.
Uh, I'd like to pull.
Uh, I'm sorry.
What's yours, Chesney?
Go ahead, I thought he was through. Are you done?
Well, go ahead and tell me yours.
Mine is O.
O, okay.
And and S.
And S, all right.
We didn't table O, right?
Any others?
I had O too, but I we, I thought we had tabled, but I guess we did.
We pulled O.
Oh, you pulled O? Oh, no, you, I pulled O, I thought you said you tabled O, my bad.
All right, all those in favor of the remaining, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um.
J is in there.
Let's take, uh, uh, J.
J, J is in there, Judge, yeah, sorry.
Uh, J is, I've got Michael here on procurement, I've got Maria on H map. I bet you're wondering, were you wondering about a funding source here?
Well, I'm wondering about a couple of things.
All right, uh, Maria, I'll, um, this is H map, and Michael, it's, he can answer any questions on procurement.
Yeah, I'm just on the on on J and M, they kind of have, I got a question, same question on both of them. Now, I think we talked about this before, uh, Michael. Uh, funding sources, I don't know what the funding sources are anyway, but I guess Maria is going to tell us. But, uh, on the committee, I thought we had talked about the committee, uh, rotating the committee. Seems like they're same people, and it's in both committees all the time. And, uh, in Commissioner's Court, they once, we said something about rotating.
Um, I don't recall any discussion about rotation.
I thought we had, we had to discuss that.
Adding different people.
Yeah, we we talked about, um, at some times, I'll propose this list, and there will be certain times when individual Commissioners may wish to be a part of that committee. And then y'all recommend that here in the court, and then the court votes to approve that amendment to the order, uh, to include that additional court member.
We also talked about, maybe nobody from the Commissioner's Court being on there, so what happened to that one?
Well, that's on the policy discussion, and I've tabled that one, so that's on that big list that I'm still working with the county attorney.
We'll come back to that later, I guess.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, other than that, I just have that, that we need, like, my deal was on road, making sure some Commissioners are there, you know, besides just the same person, which is the judge all the time there, but I think we need to rotate, you know, probably. That was my my recommendation.
So you're you're wanting to add someone else to the committee?
Right, I mean, if we could, I mean, I don't, I mean, do you, are you limited to a certain amount of people?
We try to keep the committee as small as possible, uh, to achieve the goals of that committee, and make sure that we have representation from the department heads that have something to do with that. And in this case, uh, we have Maria on this committee, because she's directly involved with the grants. And so, um, if there's a Commissioner that has a, um, interest in participating, I'm I'm all ears.
Uh, I'm fine putting Commissioner Gonzalez on there, if he wants to serve too, along with the judge. So if that needs to be a motion, I'll be happy to make that.
Um, the decision is made, uh, by Michael. Michael, you would have to make that decision on the committee. We do not tell you what to do, but you can take that recommendation. And, um, but again, that that is my understanding of the Purchasing Act, and.
Yeah, if we if we have to go back to that discussion we had before, and, uh, I knew this day was coming. So the day is here, and that is, uh, I proposed a committee list based on the same committee list that we have always used for many decades. These these lists were derived way before I got here. This is not Michael's list.
We remember that.
Okay, and so that's why I'm presenting it to you today. I don't feel like we're going to benefit necessarily from additional members being added to my list, unless there's a real good reason as to why y'all want to be on there, other than.
That, I think we tabled this, because I need to get some legal clarification on what we can and can't do, because I'm still not, I I still don't a hundred percent agree with, respectfully, the interpretation of the Purchasing Act. And so I'm going to move to table this until we get a a legal opinion on what we can and can't do in regards to putting people on the committee, taking people off the committee. I I mean, I need to get some some legal guidance, because, no offense, just because, I mean, you know, he's been doing it this way for decades, I get it, but we've we've all made changes around here, all kinds of changes that have been done the way for decades. I mean, I used to, you know, get to appoint the the parch board. That got changed, because there was a, the judge found the law, and that we had to change that up. I mean, so if the law says you you get to do it, and that's clear and concise, then, you know what? I got no problem with that, but I I need a a legal opinion, no offense, other than yours, that that says that's the case. So I would move, we table this item until that is determined.
Second.
I can take this into executive session as well, so that that legal opinion can be given. I do want to ask Maria, a lot of these things are time-sensitive, including H map. Maria, could you weigh in on this, please?
Do you have a legal opinion now, Jenny, on this?
Well, we've talked about this on a number of occasions, and I'm 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 asking for my code to be brought so that I can point it out, but I'd prefer first to talk about it in executive, if possible.
So I can't speak on, uh, letter M, but for letter J, it is pretty, um, important that the court make a decision to move.
Let's go to executive session, Judge, that's fair. I mean, I'll just wait to go to executive session.
If you don't mind.
No, I'm fine with that, yeah.
Um, because I think this one's time-sensitive, and again, the whole court will have the ability to not only review, uh, all the, you know, documents in purchasing, but it's just a recommendation, and then the court's able to, uh, weigh in as well. And with the sensitivity of time on some of these, H map, by the way, if you don't put your H map, um.
It expires in September. Um, the the purchasing process is going to take a little bit of time to find a consultant to help us develop that plan. Um, it also needs to be adopted by FEMA, so this is pretty, at least for item J, it is pretty time-sensitive.
It's very important, I I would.
And Jenny, I just would like to also have a legal opinion on who has to be on there. In other words, that's really what I'm looking for, because I liked Michael's not suggestion, his, whatever his words were, because I don't want to say he suggested it, but whatever his words were that said, some counties do it where no one on the court is on there, and to me, that is still the best way for transparency and to be able to make sure that nobody has any, feels like somebody else has any insight or anything else. So I I like that for the next twenty-five years, talking about your decades. So that's still what I'm looking to be able to do, what we can do legally, and that's why I was going to address that with the policy discussion and continue to have my discussions on that with the county attorney.
We can have that, you know.
She has that opinion now and can and can give it in executive session, great. If not, then we could wait till twenty-six.
The most important thing for the court to recall, and is that the purchasing agent does not report to the per, to this Commissioner's Court. He reports to the purchasing board, and that he also follows the Purchasing Act. So we don't tell him what to do, and we can get that clarity in executive session, but I'll bring this back, Maria.
But the purchasing.
A little bit later. H map, all projects that are inside H map are eligible for certain FEMA grants, and only those inside H map are, um, eligible. So as we produce CDBG mitigation projects, they need to be H map projects. That's why this is important, and that's why we bring it to you for 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 this discussion, and I hope it doesn't get hung up on this idea that who's on a selection committee, because the people that are on it represent the chief administrator, as well as the right grants person. It's a good committee based upon the purchasing agent, and it's how we've done H map in the past.
Judge, you know what?
So I think we should, for H map, you should think about it differently than everything else.
I'm, you know, and I'm probably okay with that, too. The 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 reality on this one is, the the bigger picture issue is is the purchasing board needs to, in my opinion, I can't tell them what to do, but there's two of y'all that sit here that have probably, you know, that will represent good opposing views on this, on the purchasing board. And so I think the purchasing board has to weigh in on this, and Judge Canales and Commissioner Gonzalez are on that. Again, I can't tell the purchasing board what to do either. I would certainly ask that, as representatives of the Commissioner's Court, which is, you are appointed, I believe, as representatives of the Commissioner's Court, or maybe you're statutorily on there, Judge, I I don't know. But you, I'm asking you, Judge, and you, Commissioner Gonzalez, to convene a a purchasing board meeting.
Happy to do that.
And have this discussion, and let's let the purchasing board weigh in, please.
Happy, happy to do that. I I, in light of that, would you, would you mind reconsidering for H map purposes for FEMA grants?
You know what, I do, I'm going to, I'm okay with, I'm going to let this one just go, because I I want to, I do want the big, but I mean, I don't want there to be ten more of these coming up before this is decided. So I'm going to let this one go, but just know, and and it's not just me letting, I mean, it's got to be the court, but I'm just saying, I I'm okay with moving forward on this one for now, but this has got to be decided. This has got to be, because I don't want there to be.
It's just that we have the.
This one's important, and this one's important, and this one's important, and the purchasing board doesn't meet, This one's important and this one's important and this one's important. And the purchasing board doesn't meet and we don't get clarification from the county attorney on what we can and can't do. So.
Right. And the business of the county continues regardless of how long it takes y'all to arrive at a decision on this. And I'm going to keep bringing them to you at the appropriate time.
Right.
And I'm not going to stop bringing them to you. Um, I'm going to bring them to you the way I've always done until I get direction from my purchasing board that they want me to handle it a different way. Fair enough. And then I'll do it at that time.
Fair enough. I motion to pass this one.
Thank you. That's a motion on J to pass with a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, um.
M.
For the record, um, Dale, we did discuss, if you don't mind, the funding source on this one, on H map. And, um, there was a little bit of scratching of heads because we don't typically know, uh, how much that will cost. So a little bit of, of concepts was perhaps it could come from, um, you know, CO 2021, but we hadn't checked eligibility there. But typically the feasibility studies and assessments can be paid for there. If you have any ideas, we would love to, to hear them. Uh, this is that hazard mitigation, um, you know, assessment.
We've got through several issues similar to this. I believe the CO 2021 can handle this. We may want to look at some of the older versions of our COs if there's funds there.
Unallocated.
I'd like to spend those first.
I would too. Um, Teresa and I can do that as well. All right. Okay, commissioners, uh, let's move on to M. M is in Mary. This is also an assessment. It's a jail needs assessment. Um, go ahead. Who pulled it?
I pulled it. Uh, again, it was the same, it was the same thing, Michael, from the, for the first one, reference to do the committee. But, um, like I said, if we're going to let it go for now, then we're going to let it go. I think we, you remove his motion, I remove my second.
My question, my question on this one is different, if that's okay.
You go ahead.
I, I still don't know what, what.
The money?
What did we, yeah. I'm, what did we decide on, on this? Because as far as, I don't, I don't think we ever came with a dollar amount. So how are we going to?
Right. So, um, Sheriff Hooper's on the line. If, if we want to get his commentary now. I, I mentioned before that, uh, this project was done in Lubbock, but it was a much greater scope than what we had. And, and for them, it was around $250,000. Uh, for us, we believe it's going to be significantly less because the scope is down to just focusing on the jail. Their project was focusing on their entire judicial system.
Do you think we could do a not to exceed or, well, let's hear from Sheriff. Good morning, Sheriff. Okay, he may have stepped away. Um, I met with the sheriff this morning on this issue and, um, he does support this. I'm with you on the, we don't know how much it will cost, but just remember, uh, Commissioner Chesney, that we could always when the contract, when we actually, you know, make the recommendation, we can discuss cost, we can discuss not to exceeds, we can discuss contract negotiations. The idea here is to, I guess, move the needle. This is just an assessment. That's all that this would be, is, um.
Right. And we'll work closely with the sheriff to scope the project, uh, down to only what is needed. Um, and then when we receive those proposals, um, we'll have an opportunity to kind of understand better what that cost actually is going to come down to. And then we can decide, depending on how many bells and whistles are in that proposal, uh, if there's anything that we can remove to lower costs or if, if the cost comes in under what we expect, um, then we'll bring that. Um, the court will still have that opportunity. Uh, if the costs are too great and we don't have a funding source, of course, you can retain the ability to reject all bids. But at least this gives us an opportunity to take a step in the direction towards, uh, assessing, uh, what the county's going to need there at the jail.
Okay. Um, could those also, Dale, be paid for, um, with that same philosophy of older COs? Or do you have another resource, given that this has a jail component?
I believe the same scenario falls, falls for this item as well.
Okay.
What did he say? I couldn't hear.
It falls in the same scenario.
Same, same scenarios as, as what J was. I believe we can either use our current 21 CROs or our older version COs, as long as the, the verbiage was in those COs to, to qualify for it. And what was the amount you felt like he'd not exceed, Judge?
Well, I'm just saying, could we have one?
Oh, I, I thought you said you talked to Sheriff, so maybe y'all had come up with one. I, I.
I just don't know what it would cost.
I don't either.
I'm saying to you, I think we have another bite of the apple.
We're kind of in some uncharted waters here. So it's.
I'm saying that if he's writing the RFP, he could make the scope such that by making some good inquiries, he could get a feel for, for the general amount of dollars. You could even bring it back. We could approve it so he could start writing and we could see this back on the next agenda.
And, and I can visit with, uh, Clint up in Lubbock County.
And get a dollar amount.
And find out some more details about what was included in that 250. Maybe they broke it out in some way and we can kind of find out what was the part that was really committed to the jail.
Yeah, I think that's a better, that's a better idea, Judges, to.
Not to exceed.
Approve the concept and bring it back with a, with a better amount, maybe from Michael with a little more firm.
I think that's fair. I think that's fair for the 26th.
So.
So let's go ahead and approve it. It'll be subject to my motion will be, right? Would like to make that motion, Brent?
Sure.
Subject to.
Subject to cost being brought back to us from Michael and approval of the cost at that point.
Fair enough. Moves the needle. All, I've got a second with Gonzalez and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, uh, item O, Commissioner Chesney.
Yes, ma'am. Um, so I get the grant, um, on this and I, I, I think the amount was 148,000, something around that nature. Right. And that's a, that was a no match grant that we received.
Correct. And Maria is, we're going to clean the mic and Maria is going to address this for you.
So my question on this, to be honest, is, um, why, just channel three. Love channel three, great, channel three, but why not six, 10, K auto, caller times?
We're waiting on theirs.
We are waiting on a proposal from KRS6. Um, it just didn't come in time, uh, to put on the agenda. Um, so.
How do we know, like, 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 to me, it should be not just the main ones. It should be three, it should be six, it should be 10, it should be K auto, it should be caller times, it should be the small newspapers. To me, we should spread this out proportionately because they all helped us with the messaging so far and they all should get a bite of this apple.
Definitely.
So I'm, I'm a little concerned about doing part of it now, taking a large chunk of it, not knowing what the other proposals are going to be and if there's going to be enough to go around. So I'm not against this because I think it's, it's great. But I'm just concerned that we're doing one before the others. And my thought would be that we should at least wait to get the others. And, and I don't know if you've reached out to everybody else. That was going to be my question.
Yes, KRS6.
Everybody an opportunity?
So KRS communication should, um, actually get me the proposal by the end of today.
And what about?
And six is with 10, Brent, and so is Telemundo.
And Telemundo.
Actually, they've now divided. So you might want to check on that because I believe channel 10 now has divided from channel six. They're managed separately now. Caller times, then there's Koro. Then again, I think some of the smaller newspapers like the moon, the Jetty, the Robstown Record, I mean, some of these folks who have been so great in all this, we should also use to support locals. So again, I, I think, I don't think this is urgent to, to do this today. I think we should wait till we get them all so that you can really look at them and add it up. Because let's say, because I just want to make sure we don't run out of money because they're, they're taking, with this one, they're taking 48,000 of the 100 and 48,000, which leaves 100,000 to divide up amongst six, 10, K auto, color times and all the small, you know, media outlets. I think we've done enough personally with the, I think we've done a lot with the radio stations. They got a lot of money on the other round. And I'm not trying to eliminate them, but there might be some of those that didn't get some, some part of that too. So.
So.
My concern is this is premature and because we don't have everybody else's in. And I would prefer to wait till we had everybody's in.
Maria.
That's all I'm saying.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Pardon?
Commissioner Hernandez?
I was just going to ask Maria, uh, can you check and see if, uh, Magic 104.9 has gotten any business from us?
Um, I can definitely check into that.
Because, uh, I got a, I got a call from, from them asking if, uh, we could kind of, you know, give them a little bit of love and help them out.
Okay. I can definitely check into that. I haven't been involved with, um, a lot of the public messaging for COVID-19 outside of just this grant. Um, so the, the timeline, normally this is something that, you know, because of the dollar amount, it would be nice to have, you know, bid it out and have, you know, all these proposals come in. This grant particular is, uh, time sensitive, so there's really only a nine month, uh, period for this particular grant, which is why the proposals that are, that we receive from channel, um, three, I'm sorry, K triple I and KRS6 are going to kind of only span the six months.
I do know they, uh, they have been making those public announcements for COVID, but they do it out of their own kindness. But see if we can maybe help them out and then if there's others. They're the only Hispanic, uh, radio station that we have in this area.
There may be another one, but, but the point, his point is well made. And, and that's all I was trying to say was, I would just like to table this until you get, till you reach out to all the media outlets, get them all to have the opportunity to propose and get them all to look at doing it. Because I, I really, I'm, I'm so, and I, and I will tell you, I think the networks should get more than others because they have a bigger market reach, right? And that's not, but still, uh, you know, uh, uh, an amount of money spent at the South Jetty or the, or the Island Moon or the Robstown Record, who reaches a lot of people, they're, they're, they deserve to, to be involved in this too. Um, because they've helped immensely in, in getting the word out. So I would just make a motion to table this until you get everything back from everybody.
The only, my only concern here, and I'd like for you to weigh in, is that everything you said, Maria and I have already, already talked about for the last two weeks. And we've been waiting patiently for everybody. And just so you know, we have received a proposal from radio stations, including the one that you mentioned. And so all of that, we believe can be handled with the 148. Um, this particular proposal, if you look at it, it is not just for TV, it's for digital and social media as well. It's in English and in Spanish. And the concern is, is that we have Omicron raging throughout the community. There is a sense of urgency. And the truth is, is that channel six proposal, I think, will come in today and will help by staggering our messaging. So if this is for however many weeks it is, Maria, then six months, then this one will come right back on the heels and it'll allow for a staggering of messaging that gets to everybody. Just for the record, we had to solicit them. They did not solicit us, which is usually what market media does. We are making certain that we have had a strength of public messaging throughout the pandemic. And you should know that we've spent lots of, uh, messaging dollars with both radio and television. But it's more important now than ever. You heard from Lewis this morning, but I bet it's hard to recite it. You have to have it built in your muscle memory. It keeps changing. When the goalposts keep changing, it makes it imperative that we get out there right now on the five day isolation if you're exposed and not been boosted.
But Judge, here's the deal. The, the media, I agree with, I agree with your concept. I'm not in disagreement with your concept. The, but to me, I'll be honest, people watch the news more than they watch ads and, and, and they read the newspaper more than they watch, they read the ads in the newspaper. And the, the media outlets here have done a terrific job of getting the, the stuff out, like everything that I heard this morning from Dr. Wilmot and that was stuff I'd pretty much already seen and heard. It was kind of a rehashing because the media has done such a great job of helping us. And really, it's the news that people watch. Look, I, I DVR through the ads now. I mean, you know, I, I hate to say that to people, but I'm watching the newscaster, what really matters. So I think the urgency is being handled because the media is putting this on the news on a regular basis. I think we can wait a few weeks to get all these in. And if, and if I need to help, you know, send solicitations or, and we need to give them a deadline. We need to say, okay, channel six, channel 10, KRO, caller times, all of them, you have until this day and this time to submit. And if you don't submit something, then we're going to assume you don't want to be a part of it because that's, that's fair. I, I don't want to wait forever, but at the same time, I think the news is doing a terrific job.
Right.
So are we, are we using a certain amount of money and committing to that certain amount of money? And there's only going to be a certain amount of money left. I guess that's what the concern is, right? Is that, I, I'm trying to understand, Commissioner.
Well, and I don't know, like, I don't know that, I don't know if you did it all, if 48,000 is the right number to give to channel three. I don't know that it isn't.
That's what I want to figure out because, I mean, if we still have a good amount of money left and that's all we were going to do, and that's probably all we're going to do for six and all the other stations that are connected under six management, then let's do it now. They're still going to get it. They're still going to get their amount. And they obviously consider the radio stations and the media, and the, and the paper media as well and their digital footprints they have. Uh, I, I just, I would hate to delay an important message. I agree. I mean, the, the news is doing a great job, but it's those, those commercials and the social media when I'm on Facebook or Twitter or other accounts that you can see these ads pop up and this information pop up. I think time is of the essence as well. And if we're only committing so much and it's not like, well, you know what? We're going to give channel three more down the line. No, we understand that we're going to allocate to these other groups. Then I'm good with moving forward on channel three because I think, hey, we can start the messaging now. We know we're working with them. I'm glad you asked the question because I was a little concerned. I had some people ask me, why are you only picking one? And so it's refreshing to hear that we're, we're trying to include the other TV markets as well, uh, the, the other TV stations. But going into radio and print, I think is important too. So if we're just going to say this amount, pigeonhole to that amount, then let's, let's do it. Let's make it happen today. And then the others, hopefully in short order, or maybe if we do it during the workshop, maybe, hey.
You know, that's a great idea. I can.
Item on the workshop just to approve this as consent and then be done with it.
But you're giving a third to channel three with 12 or 15 other outlets. I don't know if that's the right amount.
Now, let me, let me back up and say that we have, so FEMA PA is available for public messaging as well. So please know that we have already spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on public messaging over the last two years. We also have other methods uh, to pay for public messaging. All that we're trying to do here is address the seriousness of this Omicron surge in our community. There is, just so you know, the media does a great job. We feed the media. We get, they get the information from us. We work with them on a daily basis. So if you like what they're doing, that's great. Makes us know that we're doing our job. But it's absolutely critical that we get as much out there. It's not just that we've chosen channel three. It's that they've designed a program that we hope will be emulated by all the other channels and radio.
But then Judge, let's bring a big picture. If we've got more money to spend, I'd, I'd like to see, I'd like to see the program that we're going to, what the message is going to be.
Okay.
I haven't seen any of that. I'd like to see.
So it's, it is contained in your book, the, the program for the, what's, what's.
Their proposal was attached to the agenda item. And then I just want to note that, um, the, the structure of, uh, the proposal and the future, the proposal that we're waiting on for KRS6 is on a monthly basis. So other than a one-time production fee, we're going to be paying on a monthly basis.
Because then our backup had nothing to do with the messaging. It had to do with how, what they're proposing, how they're going to get the word out. I'm saying I'd like to know what the message is. I'd like to know, you know, who's going to, who's going to do it, how it's going to be done. I'd like to see it. This, if we're going to, if we're going to engage in this and if we have all this other money for, you know, for, for public messaging, then let's do it all at one time and say, we're going to do it all because I, I don't, I, I don't think it's appropriate to just say, let's go give this to, to one news station without having a big picture plan in place. And I don't, I didn't know we had more for public messaging that we, that we were going to talk about using.
So we're saying, once we threw the 148,000, we, we need to say, but there's another pot. So all the other ones can apply for that pot.
Right.
We would, we would then pivot to our FEMA public assistance application.
It's okay for our, but I apply then because we're going to have more than 148,000.
If the need is still, you know.
The need is there. This one, this grant.
If the need is there prior.
It's got to be there.
Okay, this grant is just for 148,000, but what I'm saying, we have other ways to public message. That's why the importance here was Omicron. This was the first particular meeting that we've had since December 15th. Omicron started to really rage around December 20th or so, when we started to make our decision-making trees that we do. If you, if it's the will of the court to wait, obviously we'll wait. I think that is a bad decision, given the current circumstances. Nobody wants to deny any of the other media outlets any opportunities. In fact, we welcome them. We're welcoming concepts, programs and proposals. As far as the content goes, Brent, it's the same as it's always been. Public health determines the content. And, um, they work with production. Uh, we've been using Brad Snyder. If you go to Noises Knows, you'll see that a lot of the content on filming, whether it's a commercial or whether it's an ad.
I've, I've seen some of them. I don't know, but this is a different, this is a different one. This is hesitancy, right?
That's what they do. They've designed our vaccine hesitancy. Brad Snyder has designed our vaccine hesitancy program as well, but he uses public health.
Right. I just would like to see which ones are going to be done under this. And if we wanted to say, hey, we'll do the first month on this, I don't think it's, I don't agree that it's that urgent simply because I don't think people watch ads like they watch the news. And I think the news is putting a story out or two or three a day on what's going on, on hesitancy, on getting vaccinated, the national news, the local news. We are bombarded by this stuff. And I think we're getting it every single day. I'm not saying I don't want to do this. I'm saying I want to be fair to all the media outlets. I don't know that this isn't fair, but until I see what every other media outlet wants to do, all I know about is this pot of money. And we need to be fair to all the media outlets to make sure that all the media outlets get a chance to participate in this. And I, and I mean, I'm, I think we should, if you want to do one month of this one and say, go ahead and do a month, then that's great, but.
I think that's fine. I think if we can compromise on a month, we've got a serious public health emergency and we just, that would be appreciated. If we could do that, it would allow for the rest of the people to come in and, um.
Just know that it may not be the whole, it may not be the same amount going forward after the first month.
I think that's fine. That's fair.
But, I mean, let's give them the first month.
Let's just get, let's just get the messaging out. We're in a crisis and we need to get messaging and different people. You love the news, but 18-year-olds don't. They don't watch the news. Okay? And different people respond differently and that's what we're trying to attack here.
And the digital stuff is very important. I think that's. Digital stuff is very important. I think that's super important.
I like the idea. It gets us across the finish line right now, Maria. I'd like to make the motion to approve this for 30 days. Okay? And with the subject that, that, within the workshop period, I'll put an agenda item on. By that time, you should receive all the other proposals. And then we'll make a, a comprehensive decision on the 148,000.
And Judge, could you, I would second that if you would just add that if the, if who, if they could send us what the message is going to be, like which ones are specifically going to be used.
Yeah, we'll get a contingent upon a much more thorough detailed plan being presented, Maria, and we'll have Annette and, and Louis work on that. Okay?
Yeah, because it seems cart before the horse. So part of the, the upfront fee is a production fee. So we, we will work on developing the message. We don't have that beforehand without kind of the approval of going forward with, with the actual purchase of, of the ad. And then just so you know, the target population for this particular grant, it's not for boosters, it's not, it's specifically toward the unvaccinated population. And for the pediatric vacs.
That's correct.
And again, I think it's important to note that this is a grant because we're going to get that asked, even though grants are taxpayer money too. It's not coming out of Oasis County coffers. It's a grant that we applied for and got. So I want to make sure people know that too.
Thank you, Maria. I'll add for the clerk that addition. My motion was.
We have motions on the floor, really.
I made a motion, Commissioner Gonzalez.
She, she did.
I'll take a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Pose same sign. Okay, thank you for that compromise. And it gets what we need, Maria. Don't forget to get her to get all that detail. We'll work together to provide that through the court administrator. Okay, we've already tabled P. I'd circled that one. Okay, item Q was placed on. I'm glad we pulled out when item Q was placed on before.
Judge, and just, I know y'all are still working on, on consent, but we did have one presenter who is online.
I'm sorry.
With Rio Grande Legal Aid, and I didn't know if y'all wanted to take her. It's item number two on your regular agenda.
We're almost done, Belinda. Stephanie, you are next. Thank you for the awareness on that. So item Q, there is no county business. There is nothing to approve there. That's already been done as an amendment.
So they're new table in there?
Yeah, I guess so.
Which one is that?
Good.
It, it's already, and doesn't, it doesn't require approval. It's already been taken care of.
It's a, okay. Then just, you want to make a motion, table, Judge?
I mean, I suppose, Jenny, I mean, the, the La Palmera, it doesn't require, there's no county business there. I mean, I've, we've already signed it.
$10,000 a month, I think. Who, who signed?
There, I signed it under the emergency powers because we have, we had to sign by December 31st. And it meets the criteria of the emergency management plan and the procurement. And it has provisions where we can go, you know, month to month afterwards, or it can be assigned. It's got all the protections that we need through March.
So how many months we talk?
Three months. Three months. And that way vaccines could have happened this week and on New Year's Day.
Judge, if you want to make a motion to table, I'll second.
That's fine. Motion and second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 But it's a table, all right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, R.
Is that another one, Judge, that you did already?
No, he pulled that one.
No, no, that you, but is that another one you've already signed?
I was going to add the same thing.
No, this one was signed by Annette.
Yes, this one was signed by Annette. And this is the one that.
She already signed it?
It was June through December. It's already taken place. Is this?
So now we're just paying those months, I guess.
Yes.
$100,000 we're paying, what the work already done.
That, it's all correct. It's all, it's all been done. This is just for our.
I'm not sure why they're on here then. So I guess if this is another motion to table, if this is something that the court doesn't have to participate in, then.
Well, I think, I think this one, this one is important because we need, and we need a, we would like to have a copy to send to FEMA so that we can get reimbursed. This, this application goes in today, and that's why it's on this agenda. It's June through December. It is for the COVID clinic. It was during, you know, a time period where services were rendered and invoices have been produced. And so I think it's an important extension.
And I, and I agree, Judge. I, I mean, I pulled it just because I wanted some clarification.
Okay.
The $300,000, we haven't paid them yet, right? We want to, we want to pay them or do we got to pay?
Well, this will get us, I don't know where we are, Dale, on the actual payment, but this gets everybody paid and reimbursed by doing it.
Right. I think October and November is still in the process, and December, we're waiting for that invoice.
So this will get people paid, and this will also get us reimbursed.
I'll tell you what, Amistad does a great job. I don't have a problem with that, but I just want to make sure they're already paid.
All right. Would you make the motion then, sir? I'll second. All those in favor signify by aye, saying aye. Aye.
I will ask because I thought they were going to be related.
It, they are.
But this one's going to be for what? For the following?
That's correct. This gets us going now. And Belinda, it is a period of month to month or six months?
It's a, it's a, a one year.
A one year.
$20,000, one year, right?
It's not to exceed.
And, and so I'm confused on why then, sorry, I'm going back. I'm confused on why the health director does this if we're paying for it. I don't, I'm just, I'm just asking that question. I'm just, don't understand.
I think Judge, Commissioner, the original agreement was entered into with the Health District, and this was early on in the COVID pandemic. And I believe the city was going to be participating in that. At some point, they said that this was really, I guess they had some issues with that.
They said, Belinda, that, that we were treating people out of their jurisdiction. And so the good news here is that we have been, and Kalen is not here anymore, but we have vetted the COVID clinic very strongly with Tedom. And so again, all they're waiting for are these documents so that we can submit. Today, I got a text this morning from Maggie saying that she had confirmed they will submit this application today, and it will include the COVID clinic.
Okay, so I'm, so the, the difference here then that needs to be established is this is not the Health District. Now we're contracting with them, which.
How much is the court?
Which.
Well, this is the county.
Right, which we, being county, Noises, Commissioners Court, instead of the Health District. And so now we're on the hook for this entire amount potentially of this up to 400,000. And my only question is, and I, I didn't see anything in here is, or maybe I didn't say before I say that, but I didn't see anything in here on kind of an update in what they're going to be doing and.
Okay, that's fair enough. So listen, the COVID clinic is still the same COVID clinic. It's, it's, except for, we've moved it several months back on the summer months to Amistad's location. Dr. Jacqueline Phillips is still one of the lead physicians there. I referred to people from emergency management just there yesterday, including a, a police officer. People who call that number, I'm going to say it again in case anyone's watching because it's a great number to memorize, 826-8019. And you get within literally the same day, you get a phone call back and you have a telehealth experience. And they assess you. And aft, at that moment, they will give you the opportunity to either get an X-ray, get medication, get oxygen, get a pulse oximeter. They'll check back with you, or they'll go, go to the next mile. Right?
I guess what I'm trying to get to is, this kind of, in, in a way relates to our discussions that we're going to have about the City County Health Department and where that's going to go. So depending on where you fall in, in all these discussions, in not knowing exactly how this is going to go with the city, and that's, that's really a true statement, not knowing how this is going to go, do we, do we take on something like this when, let's, let's just say the scenario played out. I'm not advocating for it or whatever. I'm just saying, but let's just say that, that we ended up completely splitting. And all we were doing was taking care of the people in Oasis County that are outside the city limits. And the city then has to take care of in the city limits, then this would be some sort, somewhat of a duplication of services. So I'm just, I'm just kind of trying to proceed a little cautiously and slower with this because of all that's going on with this Health District stuff. Amistad's done great. I think Amistad's good. But I don't know that we're going to continue to have the same responsibilities or, you know, that we, we do, or we may have more, we may have less. I don't, I don't know. So I'm a little, I'm just a year for this with where we are with the Health District and not knowing, not wanting to duplicate services because, because if we do do that, then the city's responsible for serving all of those people within the city limits. And we as a county would only be responsible potentially for in the county. So for the unincorporated area, because what I've understood in this city-county health thing is we're, we're charged with really the unincorporated areas as long as, you know, there is other public health, which there is a other significant public health, no matter how this goes with the city. So that's a long-winded.
May I help here by saying that public health obviously supports the COVID clinic? We cooperated and collaborated together to establish the first COVID clinic at Physicians West Building. They were intimately involved in, in this collaboration with emergency management. Having said that, we had 960 cases yesterday. How can we not? If there would be a compromise to do six months instead of a year, that would be a good compromise. But please know that this COVID clinic is saving lives every day. Our comorbidities and the population of people who don't have health insurance and who don't have a primary care physician who can treat COVID-19, who can get the infusions when they become available, is enormous. We are in the worst possible scenario right now. The COVID clinic is decompressing our hospitals by allowing this clinic to exist. We don't have time to figure out anything except for how to keep it going. I'm happy to make a motion that would say six months to be reevaluated, but please, is that fine? Let's go with that in the interest of time. Motion and a second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying, saying aye. Belinda, if you wouldn't mind handling all of that information because that's different than, you know, what was presented.
And what I'd really like to get is how many, how many are in the county and that aren't, you know what I mean? I'm, I'm looking for that too because that has, that needs to come into some discussion as we, as we're continuing down this path with the City of Corpus Christi. Because maybe their, if their response was, well, we think this is serving people outside the city limits, then maybe they should pay a portion, and we should pay a portion. But it should be based on what's inside the city and what's inside the county. So that would be something with this six-month extension that would buy us some time to throw that into the mix.
Fair enough. I can also address this in executive session. There is one nuance that I prefer dealing with on a, on a legal matter on that very issue. And we can talk about that as well. I'll make that note.
Okay.
Did I do the, all those in favor? I don't recall. I did?
Months, yes.
Just for the record, so this is going to be an agreement through Ju, June 30th of 2022 with a not to exceed of 200,000.
Right.
That's correct. Okay? And that way we know if something crazy happens, like a surge, they can come back, right?
Yep.
I mean, we can come back and, and present that. All right, the next one that we've pulled is item, that's it. That was S. All right, that completes the agenda for the consent. And I would like to respect Stephanie. Harlean's time. I apologize, but we just now are getting into the regular agenda at the beginning. Item number two is to receive a presentation regarding Rio Grande Legal Aid, Inc. on 202021 activities. It said Rebecca, but Stephanie, welcome.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Stephanie Harlan. I'm an attorney and project director for our Legal Aid of Survivors of Sexual Assault project. I'm filling in for Rebecca Flanagan, who's the Civil Division Director. So the annual report she had already provided, I just want to mention a few highlights. So one addition to the annual summary of TRALA activities that were undertaken last year. In October, TRALA attorneys provided training for the Corpus Christi Bar Association. It was on the subject of pro bono resources in a post-pandemic world. And they were speaking specifically to changes that were in Texas rules, Rules of Civil Procedure and the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct with respect to pro bono representation. Additionally, TRALA continues to overcome obstacles presented by the pandemic. We are still able to provide legal services to all of our clients in our 68 county service area. And while COVID has impacted a number of our operations, which namely are going to be outreach, where we would go out into the community, some tabling opportunities, and our in-person legal clinics. We've continued to expand our reach via online resources. And we did a lot of virtual delivery and virtual legal clinics with clients. And being able to still deliver trainings and legal information to other professionals and the community. We do anticipate a return to our general operations as the pandemic protocols allow. As already mentioned, and as y'all all know, COVID has impacted many area communities. Our staff and our clients have been no exception at all. But as you can see from the information in the report, the legal services and numbers of cases that we've provided to our clients have not diminished at all. And in fact, we had a increase of cases. In certain areas, there had been an increased demand, namely landlord-tenant disputes, eviction cases, family cases involving domestic violence, sexual assault, crime victims compensation cases, and then wills and advanced planning documents. So last wills and testaments, powers of attorney, medical power of attorneys, all of those advanced planning documents. And we're very grateful for the county's steadfast and continued support of, of Legal Aid, of TRALA. Just to wrap up, does anyone have any questions? I can try to answer, even though I'm not Rebecca Flanagan, but I'm here if anyone has questions.
Good job.
Gentlemen, any questions?
Good job, and we appreciate everything y'all do. We really do. Y'all do great service.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Judge, I'd like to go ahead and if we can, move up the D1 to the constable so here so they can go back to work.
Yes. D1, D1 was discussed and consider adding a deputy constable position to Department Constable Precinct 1. And this was discussed by myself and the constable. And, and if you want to make any presentation or just kind of give us a justification, it was told to me that, by the constable, that, that the purpose of this ad would be specifically for helping our JP courts on the first floor. They would act as a bailiff. Is that correct?
That's correct. The, the majority of the responsibilities would be bailiff duties for the two JP courts.
But also for number three.
For number three also. I have three JP courts. So it would help the, the deputy, especially the two here, to get that position because I have three deputies and a supervisor. Okay, so at any given time, if they all call for bailiffs, I'm out of people. So it limits us what we can do during the day as far as our other work, evictions, writs, protective orders, whatever the case may be. So by adding this position, it will ease the pain a little bit for me. And I could, I, I'll get with the JP courts, and we could figure out how we could do it to where one bailiff can bailiff for the, they would do it on opposite days, in other words, their court hearing.
And that was going to be my main question with all this. I mean, I support it. I, I know what y'all have to go through. Chief, you and I have spoken many times about that. My only concern is that the precinct one, place three JP is so far removed from precinct place one and place two. Those are here in the courthouse.
Correct.
And yet you have to go all the way down Leopard, down 37th, just to get there to, to Judge Rubio's court. So that would be my, that was my only concern, was how you were going to manage.
Well, what, what we normally do, we get in, they let us know in advance when they want, when they need a bailiff. Or sometimes they just, the last minute, they call us, and we do what we do best and get there as soon as we can. For any other emergencies, if we're not available, CCPD is real good about working with us and responding to the emergency and kind of hold down the fort till we get there. And then once we get there, we take over the call. But we've been pretty good about responding to her, her needs. And the other judges that were there also at the time. Right now, they're not too much, she's not doing too much. So she not, she doesn't require bailiff right now, but she has in the past. My, my main hit is here. My my main hit is here at the at the two JP down here. But we service also Judge Rubio's court with bailiff responsibilities and anything else that she may need. We actually have an office over there.
Yes. And the other thing we talked about with the constable is that that when and just, you know, if there were no duties in court, that that additional officer could potentially help here in the courthouse on floor one courthouse security. In other words, eyes, eyes on security if that ever became a necessity. And he indicated that that's a good also duty or.
That's also a possibility. I mean, we've also helped downstairs.
Right.
We've got a good understanding with Lieutenant Isaac Ashley.
Good.
And then he's called us before and they can ensure.
Yeah.
So we work together and we'll help out whenever we can, but the main goal would be to provide that bailiff and also try to help me with my workload during the day.
Got it.
Whenever he's not or she's not in bailiff duties. Because believe it or not, we have a lot of work.
What is the funding source on this, Judge?
So I was just about to get to that. So first, I'm going to announce how much that is and it's in our book here.
Forty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventeen.
So it almost fits perfectly. And so Dale and Teresa, what I was wondering is, given that budget's already transpired, is it possible that each of us have $10,000 in special revenue or some way that we could create a transfer where we all share equally in this responsibility?
Judge, hang on. Can I ask you a different one?
And address it later in budget.
We did it when the precinct constable requested in my precinct was we used the ARPA funds and and did it that way. So the fairest way would be just to go that route because that's what I was asked to do when my, when the constable in my precinct asked for for very good reason to patrol the Clayburg County ad and and I.
Sure. The only, the only thing is, Commissioner, is that I'm wanting, I want to make sure that we keep these positions, right? That we that we accept that this is going to be part of a budget. And every time we use ARP, we need to recognize that ARP is not here forever. It's just a bridge, right? And so if we can sort of start making some adjustments to a to a real budget or real dollar, it's going to help us in the long term. It's smarter strategy. ARP, of course, is a is a great resource and we just keep whittling away, no problem, but it doesn't last forever. And I'd like to see this one really last forever because we need it. And so I'm just wondering what our options are before we make a decision. It seems like the will of the court is to make this position happen. And now it's our challenge to figure out the, any thoughts, Dale?
Judge, can I just respond real quick? But the but the problem with the 10,000 each is the same thing. That's a one-time deal and we're going to have to come back to it. This at least is a two-year option to do it, which which I told, same deal. I told Constable Sherwood, we would have to deal with this two years from now and it was it was a short-term fix, just like this would be, that we'd have to come through. But again, to be fair and to be consistent, that's how we did it with with Constable Sherwood. He would have rathered it been, he would have rathered it been a permanent situation too, but he was willing to do that. And and then we, I told him, we're going to work very hard, like we tell the constable here, we're going to work very hard to make sure this becomes a part of the the permanent budget later down the road. But the ARPA funds does give us two years to do this and then to find those funds and gets them the immediate help that they need without us. Because you're suggesting the same way, we'd have to come back around and do it.
When I submitted this, really my first option was the ARPA funds.
Right, because we.
Like two minutes ago. And then the second option would be to see if we could find the money, right? But I think that the ARPA fund, it might be a year because maybe next, maybe next budget we can get you in, you know, or maybe two years. But I I just, I think the same way. I think the ARPA fund should be your first option here.
Well, let's see what the options are. ARP is a great tool for us. Dale, are there any other ideas before we make that decision?
Like you said, the constables and the general fund, so the expense will be in a general fund expense. If the commissioners so choose to move some of their special revenue funds, there'll be a revenue transfer in, so the net effect will be zero, but it'll still be a deduction in the expense budget.
Mm-hmm.
If you do it through the general fund.
Right. I'm just saying, I mean, at some point, you're, it's, it's, remember, every time we do this, we're lowering our our revenue, right? The lost revenue is how we pay for government services. We need to preserve lost revenue as much as possible. The lost revenue is the only bucket that we have of three and a half million that allows us to do government services. So if we can do it another way, we should do it another way. If we can't, we can't.
I'm going to do it through ARP. That's my motion.
Second.
Teresa, is there any other ideas that we have? I I would say ARP through the end of the fiscal year to be reevaluated so that we can really see.
One year, yeah.
Through the fiscal year. I would be fine with that as long as it stays through the fiscal year. We've got to find other ways to get these things done. You're just going to wind up hurting yourself on lost revenue. I don't think there's an understanding there yet.
There is an understanding, Judge. It's just this is, I mean, this was the decision we made on with the other constable.
Right, but that was one position. I'm saying to you, as we move on, the whole idea is the position is going to get is going to get funded. The idea is how we preserve the buckets of money. ARP is one way. Can we make a motion, please, for ARP for the end of the fiscal year to fund Constable Precinct One?
I can add to my motion.
All right, that'd be great. Please do.
Just but to be fair, I mean, again, I think.
To be considered at that time.
And that's all we did for Bobby as well. It was just one year.
I think we did that one for 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 two, but.
I don't know.
We'd have to go back and look. So I would want to be consistent and fair to this constable to do it the exact.
I think we did it just through the fiscal year, Brent.
I was to make my motion to do it for one year with the consideration of a second year we have to.
Or just to do it consistent with whatever we did with Constable Sherwood, if we could, we could do it that way.
I think that's fine. I think it was for the fiscal year, is my recollection.
I believe that's correct with the first fiscal year for for the ARPA funds, for the first constable we have. They can do the same for this one and and then when we get through the budget cycle, then we'll determine how whether it's continuous because ARP funds does continue through 2026 if.
Right, we have to commit by 24.
Yeah.
All right, all right. That is, that's acceptable. March, March, listen to me, motion and second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
So that makes sense, sir. I know we kind of talked a lot of.
No, 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 that's fine. I mean, I'll take whatever I can get at this point.
Yeah, see, you you have a position. The issue is what bucket of money. It doesn't, you know, as they say, you got the position.
Right.
The whole concept is how do we keep that position?
Exactly.
Right? And there's so much, so government services is an eligible bucket from lost revenue from for these funds. And there's a lot of, that turns out to be a really big area where you want to put a lot of these dollars and there's only so many, so many dollars in lost revenue. So I'm trying to keep that bucket high. We're going to do that by keeping you funded through the fiscal year and then we'll, as we get into budget, we'll figure it out.
And just, I just have one other quick question now. That comes a complete package. That comes with the unit and everything that I need for that deputy to work, correct?
So.
Because I also need a unit for him or her and.
It, that's how we did it for Constable Sherwood. I think he got a car.
I just wanted to be sure.
So I need to make certain that we make that, you might have to help me out and work on that with procurement with Romeo. But the answer is yes. I just need to make sure that 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 package.
I'll just check it out. It's a rental car, so the the expense for the rental car is not that, not that significant. It's maybe six, seven thousand dollars a year. So I'll work with how we did on the constable and we'll do the same.
Yeah, let's just be, we'll be consistent there.
Okay.
Yeah.
The whole thing, body cam, the whole.
Yeah, okay, that sounds good.
We definitely need to work with Michael because he has to put in the request immediately because the the turnaround for enterprise is is quite an easy.
Yeah, see, we're we're now leasing our vehicles, right? So like I said, let's work with him. Actually, that's a, that's a, I would leave right now and go work on it because that's something that's going to need, that requires a lead time, is what they're saying.
I understand. It's going to take a while to get them.
And if it doesn't, if you have a gap, come back to us, let's work on it. There might be an older vehicle, there might be a way that we can make transition. Look, here he is.
They've been doing it before. If we need a new vehicle, they'll they won't extinguish the old vehicle until that we get all replacements. So they might, they may get an old vehicle for extended period of time though.
That's fine.
Okay, that that's good. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners.
No, thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thank you, guys.
All right, we're going back into regular order here and we're at item number three, which is discuss and consider approval of personal services agreement with Reed Clay related to facilitating economic recovery and applying for any federal state programs. And so I would like to make a motion, given the circumstances of how important it is to make certain we have somebody working on these programs for us, whether it's American Relief Plan Act, the bipartisan infrastructure deal, or any other of the federal programs. They're saying there might be a Build Back Better Plan Two potentially. All of these dollars come to the state, work through state agencies, down to local governments. But then there's also direct allocations. I know that there's a huge amount of dollars available discretionary from the Secretary of Transportation. These are the, these are unprecedented dollars that happens, that happen once in a lifetime. Mr. Clay has certainly proven himself to be incredibly valuable, knowledgeable, and he delivers. And so I would like to approve this person, I would like to make the motion to approve these personal services agreement with Reed Clay for the period of one, well, through through the fiscal. Well, I'm I'm open to whether you want to do it through the fiscal year because that's helpful for the budget or it is a budgeted item. I think it's 1285 or 1285.
What do you, what, what would you, what's paying him or what the car?
So it would be $5,000 a month and coming from 1285, which is budgeted through the fiscal year, January through the end of September.
I don't know if, you know, I really don't, I think it's too much and it's.
So I haven't gotten any reports from Mr. Clay in a long time, so I have no idea, zero, coming into today, as to what he's done for us over the last three or four months that we renewed his contract. And I thought it was for four, but it may have been for five. I can't remember. But I don't, so I don't know, I don't know what he's done over the last four months. I mean, and I voted for him the last time, so I make sure we're clear on that. But I and I I kind of expressed my concern about putting this on in January, but it got put on and that's fine because I I'm not real comfortable. And I expressed that to Belinda, to express, or I expressed that to Belinda to say, listen, I'm not comfortable with this because I don't have anything. I have nothing from him for months.
Okay, would you like to table this? I'll make a motion to table till the next. I I thought, I misunderstood you. I thought you said you wanted to bring this forward. If I misunderstood, that's, I misunderstood. I thought specifically you said at the last meeting, I thought we were going to hear, I thought we were going to have Reed Clay on here. That's what I thought you said.
But then I relayed to Belinda, I thought to relay to others that I was uncomfortable. In fact, I think I said in the email, I'm not comfortable putting on it in January, but that's the judge's call. So I don't know if she relayed that to you or not. I probably should have, but I thought she might have.
I I did. All I know is that, again, the dollars are being advocated by every other county for vigorously and we do not have that person for us. I'll be happy to take, we've got a motion and a second to table till the 26th. Does that give you enough time?
I I would like a, I would like a report between now and then before I make a discussion. And I would like a report on what he's done over the last three to four months and what his plan specifically is.
That's fine.
For what he will do if we renew this contract.
All righty, I'll make that, I'll make that request and ask that it be table till the 26th for a motion and a second. I'm not sure, Brent, if I, if you were the second.
Twenty, the 26th. I thought we had a meeting in the 15th.
It's the 26th.
We don't have a meeting till 26th.
All right, all those and Brent, is that okay?
Yes, yes, yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Scott Cross had his hand up. I wasn't ignoring you, Scott, but.
No, you're okay, you're okay, Judge. I just, I just wanted to remind, I know you, I I told you about this, Judge, but for the Commissioners Court, especially Commissioner Chesney, the GLO is proposing sweeping changes in the Texas Administrative Code. And those draft codes are going to be out in February. And we have great concern that those, those, that that update in those codes is going to make it even more difficult for us to do what we do with, you know, permitting and environmental compliance and enforcement out here on the island. And so we need to keep that on our radar. We're going to need some help up in Austin if we have to push back on some of those changes. And, you know, I don't understand Texas Administrative Code as fluently as as an attorney would, so I just wanted to make y'all aware of that.
That's a good, that's a good point, of course. And, you know, there's about, I don't know how many hundreds of millions of dollars, you know, available.
And Scott, have you been working with anyone on that? I mean, have you talked to any of the lobby team that we had for the last four months on any of that?
Say again, sir.
Have you talked to anybody, Scott? He asks.
No, I've been talking with Natalie Bell. She's been out on maternity leave. She just got back. She's over the Beach and Dune program. And we've been trying to get them to release the draft, but they're holding it real close to their chest right now. And so I've talked with some of my counterparts in Cameron County and in Galveston County. You know, we're the three biggest hubs on the Texas coast and they're just as concerned, but we just don't know until we see what they're recommending.
Yeah, it's not out yet, Brent.
Okay.
And and we're waiting, we're waiting on that, on those provisions, as well as, you know, the core concept would be to be able to host a committee meeting here so that we could actually have hearings on it in the interim. All your work on all these agencies and, of course, preparing for the next legislative session happens in the interim. So Scott, we'll get back to you as the court continues its deliberations here. All right, item five is next, and there are some other items under B1, B2, and there might be another one. Well, really, just those, those, those are the ones that that I see here. So item.
Okay, where are you going? Which one?
Let's go to 3A5, but just know that under B1 and 2, we'll take it out of order so we can have a streamlined approach to the presentations that ABM will be giving. But the first one is to discuss and consider alternate energy conservation measure projects related to the ABM Building Services LLC Energy Savings Performance Contract. And Mike, forgive me, but what I'm first going to do is ask Juan to come up. I certainly want to hear from you, but this particular agenda item is one that we went over yesterday with LAN, with Public Works. And what we have for you in your packets, Commissioners, are options to consider. And what it is, is a list of identified projects that could serve as substitutes for the Fairgrounds Amphitheater Project. And but there's, there's quite a few. And so what we've done is asked, LAN has worked with Public Works to create a priority list. And then we've created options inside that priority list that would somewhat give us a handle on what could be substituted. There's, so there's good choices here this morning. But Juan, before we get to the choices, will you tell everybody what your recommendation is with within the choices and then let's talk about alternates?
Judge and Commissioners, the list that was presented, I guess, to y'all, I think there's a list of what, 20 items?
Correct, at least.
Yes, ma'am. The the items that we looked at with with my staff and also with LAN is the Calderon Building, the re-roofing of the Calderon Building, and also some HVAC repairs or upgrades that need to be done also at the Calderon Building. And then there's, there's another item that we discussed was the, I was trying to get the list, the Poston Building. I know that there needs to be some work done there also on the roof. And then.
Bill Bodie.
Bill Bodie, I'm sorry, Bill Bodie, sorry about that. Bill Bodie Building, the roof needs to be done in that building too. So those, those are the items and I'm missing one, right, Judge?
You are the armory, but let's.
Yeah, the armory.
You are, the Armory, but let's, let's, if you don't mind, let's take the Calderon Building and make sure they understand that it's roof replacement, air handlers, total of five, and HVAC control system, but that's the control system, not necessarily the HVAC. It's the Metastis.
That's correct.
Metasis, sorry, Metasis. And so that Commissioners totals approximately one point, um, four million dollars, okay? So one point four million dollars, call it option one. And again, it's, call it Calderon Building, and that would be a good potential substitute. Option two is.
You're saying just from the.
Just the Calderon.
The one point four, okay.
Would be.
But that's only the roof and the.
Air handlers?
Yes, the HVAC, to get it, to get it in, in good condition.
That, that would be a good option one, and that's going to be his, his top choice, but he's got other choices. And the other one is the Bill Bodie Building, and that's the HVAC upgrade.
And that, okay.
And if you're making notes, that's about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And again, these are estimates only, estimates only. And then the Armory, Juan is.
It's also the roof, Judge.
Is also the roof, and it's about eight hundred and fifty thousand.
That's, that's correct.
And Judge, is this to substitute for the, these are the projects to substitute for the amphitheater, correct?
These, these would be acceptable energy savings substitutions. So if you're making your notes, can you make Calderon Building option one?
Yes, ma'am.
A potential combo of Bill Bodie and Armory as option two. And then to give Public Works maximum flexibility, know that it could be a combination of any of those.
Okay.
Okay?
Or it could be, could.
There's also one more little thing.
Do you have to combine both of them, or what?
No, sir, it would be.
Bodie and Armory?
You could combine Bodie and Armory and make that work.
You don't have to, right?
No, we're saying give them.
Or Bodie and Robstown? Because what's the total we have to.
No, you couldn't do that.
What do we have?
Okay, you ready?
About one.
How much?
I think it's about one point five, right?
What's, what's left?
About one point five plus one.
So you're ready for, what do you want to know, Brent, the Calderon?
No, no, I'm trying to get what the total we have left in that project is to.
You have one point five two eight, eight nine three. Teresa, hand everybody all these things. Yeah, but this is going to be a good cheat sheet we prepared for you.
Oh, okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, go ahead. Thank you. I got you. And then you have one more, Judge, you said?
One more is just, and it's a small, we think it could be a smaller amount, but just for awareness, Juan, how do you want to label the, the, I'm calling it Fairgrounds ME Project to support the HVAC?
It's going to be the HVAC on exhibit B or E.
Which one?
The HVAC on exhibit B or E.
Yes.
It's not, it's not going to really change the, the bottom line, I don't think, there, but.
No, that would be the added HVAC portion that would be to Banquet Hall A.
Right.
To add for that, which is about a hundred thousand dollars.
Right. So again, if you'll take a look at what Teresa just had, passed out, this is what we went over yesterday, and when given the choice, Public Works says they like option one, but they also like option two. And so, and they like option of four. And so I think that what would be helpful to them is to allow these favorites to be bid out properly so that they can really see which ones meet the criteria. But this lessens the projects from twenty to three, essentially. But it could be a mixing and matching.
It lessens, say that again, it lessens the project from what to what?
From over twenty different projects to, to, to the top three options.
Whittling down the twen, I see what you're saying.
Right?
Right.
This really gives you a, can you give a copy to them as well to make sure they're seeing the same thing? Okay.
So when you say bid it out, Judge, are these, is there some question of whether these numbers are, are.
Yes, sir.
Accurate?
Yes, sir, because these are our numbers.
Okay.
And we need to tell ABM, ABM, these are the projects we think we would like to substitute. Will you concur? And will, when you concur, will you give us a price that, that we can bank on? And also, what is the energy savings that you would provide guaranteed for these projects? And then finally, we, the county, would have to engage in a third-party independent review. We used Sibler and Associates the last time in order to confirm.
What's the third-party review for?
It's required under the statute.
Okay, to?
To review the energy savings. We used Sibler and Associates the last time.
To make sure it has energy savings. Is that what you're?
That, yes, to, it's, yes.
Or that it meets the qualifications for an energy savings contract?
It confirms the savings.
Which that should be pretty simple to do, I think.
And, and the timeframe that we think is reasonable, if we can make a decision today on guidance, we think that three weeks would be sufficient. Of course, look, Mike, he just went, but we would like for them, we would like to urge them to be as judicious and swift as possible in getting us the real numbers back. These are guestimates based on what we believe real, real life is. But again, things are changing constantly, and we need to have them bid it so we'll know.
So Judge, my, my first question would be, I have two questions. One, what would be Public Works' first choice? And two, for those who serve the western part of our county, what would be, you know, your thoughts on this?
Okay, let's, let's have Juan answer that. He did earlier. He said Calderon, but Juan, will you say it again?
Judge and Commissioner, I would recommend Calderon Building.
He recommends Calderon.
I'm going to defer to hear comments from the western part of our county's Commissioners and, because that was, that was kind of the agreement we had, was to leave it out there.
Commissioner Mattis?
You know, I always want to look at the big picture, but, you know, that Juan reaffirms the needs. And I know in the years that I've been here now, the five years of, you know, it's been roof issues, it's been the, the air handlers, the HVAC, that's kind of the constant. And there's other changes and possibilities I know we have, but that's separate. But I, I would like to see this invested there. I mean, we have, most of the building is, is being utilized. I think there's some space that we have in the future. But, you know, we have AgriLife that's there, we have the JP, Judge Bobby Gonzalez, we have the Constable, Oscar Mendoza, that's there. We have the County Clerk's Office, we have the Tax Assessor's Office there as well. And so those are, those are operated on a daily basis. So it is, it is vital, I think, to keep the building at a, at a good standard. And something we know that we don't have to keep putting money back on. I would say when, when Deepak was here, he would always tell us about the, the problems that we were having on the roof or with, or with the HVAC or with the air handlers. And so nothing has changed. So I would love to see this here, if that's the recommendation. Obviously, I'm going to support it. Like I said, I always want to see bigger picture, and I know there's so many uses that we could use in some of these other areas as well. But I do think that it would be well worth if we went that direction, so.
The only thing, Juan, you might want to remind the court is that you're asking, you're going to, you're happy to give the recommendation, but you're also asking for some of the other ones to be bid. And that's to help you make certain that that decision is the right one. Is that correct?
That, that's correct, Judge. It just kind of gives us a menu.
And would you just go ahead and identify them? Because we're going to, I'd like to make a motion to do that. And we want to make sure that you're asking to bid the Calderon Building, as we've articulated, call it option one.
Yes, ma'am.
You'd also like us to bid Bill Bodie Building.
That's correct.
You'd also like us to, to bid Armory HVAC.
The roof, the roof at the Army.
Correct, and then also the, Shane, I'm going to call it the, you want me to call it the, the, where are you, Shane? How, how do you want me to address that ME piece of it? Call it the, the Fairgrounds?
Yeah, just use it as the Fairgrounds HVAC.
So when you say bid it, Judge, so we would actually go out and bid all these projects, knowing that some of them wouldn't happen?
No, sir, I'm going to, I'm going to let, pass it on to Mike now. So all of these are a substitution. So ABM has a contract. All we, we're asking, this court is now making a public decision as to, hey, these are the projects that we believe could be substituted that we would like. ABM, will you now concur that you would substitute? And also, ABM, would you price these so that we can get a guaranteed savings dollar amount back to us?
So they would just price it through their vendors, so to speak?
That's correct.
That's correct, yes, okay, okay.
That's correct.
Along with doing the energy savings calculation with our engineering department to bring that information back to you as well. The Calderon Building, one of the things I might note about that was that was originally part of our scope that we discussed early on in this project, replacement of the roof, looking at, you know, I don't think we've looked at the air handlers there. We did look at the cooling tire. Y'all subsequently replaced that cooling tire because it was damaged. So it, it was originally in our scope. So we do already have some information that we can start working from. So we kind of have a head start, as you will, as it relates to the Calderon Building. These other items, we may have some additional information, especially at the Fairgrounds. I mean, the Bill Bodie Building, I don't believe we looked at as part of our initial, initial assessment. So we'll probably, we'll need to look at that and, and try, and so that we can try to turn that as quickly as possible for those. But, but as far, I mean, we've been looking forward to this day when, you know, we do have the options that y'all want us to pursue so that we can bring that information back in replacement of the amphitheater. So our team will mobilize to, to, to get this back to you as quickly as possible.
Okay, all right, good. So the motion would be then, Commissioners, to recommend option one as a priority, but only inasmuch that we get final determination after these price points are delivered by ABM as well as the energy savings. But this gives them the direction they need to go in order to get to that next step. So just to recap, it's Calderon Building, Bill Bodie Building, Armory HVAC, and the, I'm going to call it Fairgrounds HVAC Upgrade. And we all, and you guys know what, we're not talking about all the HVACs. They're talking about a very specific piece, and you guys will articulate that.
Judge, I'd make that motion if we're ready.
I, I just did.
You did second?
You can second it.
Sorry, I know that was a motion, my bad.
Okay, all those, and any for, any further discussion?
Judge, I have a, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is this going to be a new contract?
No.
No, sir.
We'd be substituting this, this project in for the amphitheater project within the same contract.
What we, what we will do is prepare a change order that will remove the amphitheater and the scope of the amphitheater and for, that's documented in the contract now. And we'll provide a change order for the scope of work that we would be, will be delivering for these options that y'all finalize.
So everything stays the same?
Yeah, all the terms and conditions and everything else as far as the contract that's been reviewed and approved stays the same. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and.
I've got a question.
Another question?
So, so you're only going to, you're all going to exchange option one only, right? Option one, option two, three, and four, option five, they're, they're separate ones. So usually, all you're doing in exchange is be option one, not option two or three, right?
So Juan, once again, will you explain how we're doing it so he can understand it?
And Commissioner, the, the way, the way the process, the way we had talked about, Judge and Commissioners, is that we would, option one would be the Calderon Building, the roof and, of course, the HVAC and their handlers. That would be option number one, but.
So that would be the exchange, right?
That would be, that would be option number one. But the reason we were asking for the prices, the cost on the other ones is just in case. It's kind of get, like, having a menu, right? You already have price for these other items, so let's go ahead and, if, if the numbers come in maybe lower than that, you already have that option of including that as part of your total number.
No, well, I'm, you know, I don't, I don't mind, I mean, what I see here, on the bottom it says recap. One, then two, three, and four, and five. One million, three, one million, two, one million, one, right? Is that what it is?
Correct.
So you're saying all those three will be in exchange for the theater?
No.
No.
Depending on.
That's what I'm asking you, it'd be just, it'd just be option one then?
Yes.
Depending on what way the numbers come in, then it would be that option depending where the pricing lands. If it lands at one point five million dollars for option one, or it came in at a million dollars. If it comes in at a million dollars, then we would have options two and three to be able to look at to add to that option number one at a million.
So if it comes to one, three, nine, someone's one, four, so all you're looking now is for something that's probably not.
Another hundred thousand dollars, hundred and twenty-eight thousand then, yes.
Yeah, so it could be like the Armory Roof or something like that.
Correct.
It, it's going to give options, but we are narrowing the field immensely here.
But you won't go over the one point five.
We will not.
Well, if you do, we will owe them the difference. And I doubt very seriously we're going to hit it right on the money, so.
Could be under then.
Well, you wouldn't want to be under. That would be, you would lose money for the county. So we want to be perfect or a little over, but we will, we will understand that best when you have these options back.
Well, if we're, if we're, if we're under on one, we might be able to sneak in a little small thing, too. So, I mean, I would expect them to price it accordingly. And if we, like that other little, you know, there might be another something.
One hundred and fifty-three thousand.
Yeah, that small, that we could also.
Well, that's why we're bidding those exactly, that's exactly what Shane is doing. We've got a small project we're bidding along with several projects that can be grouped together. Again, if Juan made the recommendation, for one, that's his favorite, but theoretically, the court could say, hey, I like Bodie and Armory, and that's about the same price tag, too. But it's good to hear their recommendations. Basically, we prioritized twenty projects, and then we reprioritized, and then we sub, we connected the dots inside it. This was a lot of good collaboration that took, you know, months, and now you've got them. But that's only the first step. Now ABM has to do their part, and then this court needs to see what those energy savings are. And then there's also going to be some process by getting the third party to come in, and then we certainly need to change the documents with BAML. So again, there are steps, but you have to begin somewhere. It starts with making a decision. That's what this is today. It also provides Public Works a lot of flexibility to choose a little mix. He can say, I take roof, but no air handlers, you know? And then put in a Fairgrounds need, if, if he likes that bid. You will see this back again. Today is the day to get it to the next step. So again, my motion stands, and is there any further discussion?
No, ma'am.
All right, okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We will memorialize it in writing to everybody so that, that you know. Shane, if you could help spearhead that. Okay, it's, it's probably smart to continue the ABM discussion on energy savings. And so I'm going to refer you to item B one, which is just get an update as to what's going on with our energy savings contract. And so we'll proceed there. And then specifically, item two is almost a supplement to item one, which is, would you please concentrate on the chillers at McKenzie and the boilers here at the jail? And get us up to speed because we've had some changes there, and we want to make sure the court's got awareness and.
And this is.
And you may start in any order that you like, but one and two is what we're addressing, Commissioners. Public Works, item B one, B two. It's basically an overall update and a concentrated effort in looking at the boilers and chillers as well. And well.
Thank, thank you, Judge. Good afternoon, Judge Commissioners. Thank you for your time. I'm Larry Harshaw, the General Manager for ABM. I have with me Fred Gatewood, who's our Project Manager, and also Christina Stefanoscu, who's our Project Manager as well. I'm going to give a brief overview and update of where we're at, kind of overall, then we'll look at it by site in a little bit more detail. We have some handouts. Oh, yeah, okay. We'll have some pictures of the projects, and we'll kind of go over some of the issues we're facing, some of the challenges. And then Fred will give a, a presentation on the boilers. We'll have complete Fred to give a presentation on the boilers at the courthouse in McKenzie Annex. But if you look at the project right now, we're sixty percent complete overall. If you look by site, the Fairgrounds were eighty percent, McKenzie Annex were eighty percent complete, Galahar seventy-four percent, courthouse sixty-six percent, thirty-six percent at the county jail. If we look at the Fairgrounds, we've completed the seventy-ton Aeon unit, the interior lighting and the destratification fans. We have several projects out there that are a little over ninety percent complete, the roofing, building envelope, painting, the carpet, the exterior lighting. We still have remaining to complete the sidewalk repair, the paving, as well as the artistic lighting. You can see some of the roof, you know, pictures of the roof and the paving that's been done. There's also some photos of the interior lighting at the Fairgrounds and the carpet replacement. McKenzie Annex, we've completed the roofing. We've got several other projects out there that are over ninety percent complete, including the chiller plant, water conservation, ozone laundry. And we still have some items remaining to complete, the DX split system, parking lot, cooling tower treatment system. If we look at Galahar, we've completed the LED lighting, the HVAC RSO, and the HVAC armor. A bit over ninety percent on the HE laundry machine. Remaining to complete at Galahar, we have the roofing and the cooling tower refurbishment. The courthouse, we're about ninety percent complete on building envelope, HVAC armor, and still remaining to complete is the LED lighting, replacement of the steam boilers, transformers, the air curtains. There's a few pictures of the boilers, the HVAC armor, and some of the interior lighting of the courthouse. If we move over to the jail, we've got several items that are a little bit over ninety percent complete, the Hobart dish machine, the ozone laundry, water conservation, building envelope, LED lighting. Right now, we still have remaining to complete is the air handling unit change outs, the DDC controls, smoke purge fans controls, air handling unit refurbishments, as well as some pipe and insulation. You know, we've been facing, on this project, we've been facing some challenges. Some of it's due to the COVID, you know, we've got a global pandemic, so we're hitting some supply chain issues, especially with like the roofing at Galahar. especially with like the roofing at Galahar, some of the artistic lighting at the fairgrounds. We're also having some issues with COVID with our workforce, with our subcontractors. And we're still working on a few submittal approvals that we need, like on Galahar parking and McKenzie parking. We've had some issues, but we are working with Public Works, and we will get those issues corrected.
Thank, okay, thank you. I'm gonna just, there's more that we wanna hear, but I wanted to stop, pause here and ask if there's any questions here. I know I have some questions, and I'm gonna also ask you to maybe even allow Juan to come back in to the podium, but it really regards, it's regarding the parking lots. Do you believe that this reflects both either you or Shane, either one, but do you believe that this, this, you know, update is accurate? It reflects what you see out in the field and your, in your estimation here on the percentages complete and where we are?
Your Honor, based on this writing that you guys have in your hands currently, yes, this is the percentages that they're at. There are some issues that we're trying to work through that require some correction portions on this, and they are in the process of trying to get that completed now.
Okay, so, one of the things I should've done, and I forgot on the other one, but we can always reopen that agenda item if the county attorney would rather it come in that side rather than this side, or make that recommendation of advice, but we really wanna talk, I really wanna talk about the parking lots, because they're in really bad shape, and what I really wanna make sure of is that when we do these bids that are the substitution, that that allows, paves the way for these parking lots to continue, because we're already mobilized in some of them. Is that correct? Are we mobilized in some of those areas? Christina, if you would mind addressing that. And the reason we need clarity is because when the court gave the appearance that we were gonna focus on energy savings, it didn't dawn on anybody that these parking lots would be highly affected. So, we need to hear from Public Works as to what his recommendation is, so that we can move forward and finish these parking lots that are in the middle. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think one of the major ones is we are at a, on a holding pattern on both Galahar and McKenzie. And at the fairgrounds, we were left with one area that we were able, we would've been able to complete by now, but because we were asked to add or modify the initial scope of work and what was already approved as design, now we are on a holding pattern on that one as well. And we would love nothing more than go back and complete, especially since we know that there are several big events at the fairgrounds, and we would love the opportunity to complete that work as early as possible. So, none of the events are affected by that.
Okay, and Shane wants to add in, add something to the parking lot conversation.
Yeah, I'll address that portion. For the fairgrounds work, what we found was that it was more beneficial to take some of this work that was originally in their contract and move it to a different spot that is more affected by the fairgrounds area, and especially for emergency management, where they bring in the buses into this area. It's a very torn up area, it's got a catch basin that's in there. So, we've asked them to swap that area and put it in.
Okay, so, Juan, if you don't mind, we could change places here. I just wanna make sure that the court hears from you. You want these parking lots to proceed?
They're part, yes, ma'am.
To get finished, I should say.
They're part of the original scope.
Okay.
So, I mean, mine, yes.
Okay, so...
Who's parking lots are those one?
Those are the Galahar, and go ahead. Galahar, McKenzie, Commissioner.
Galahar and McKenzie, and so, I wanna make sure that, Jenny, it can be a directive that we give to you. We could take it in executive session. I don't really, didn't notice it, because it's really more of a clarification, but they, ABM has been on hold. That hold needs to not be a hold. I mean, we need to finish those parking lots. And again, the hold was created because of a misunderstanding about what does it mean to have an energy savings. Not each and every item that we do inside an energy savings is energy savings. When you work inside a big contract, there could be, you know, some aspects of it that are necessary, but not technically energy savings. That's where we find ourselves with the, with the Galahar parking lot for juvenile, as well as the fairgrounds and McKenzie. And these, these projects, the longer we wait, the more workforce issues we're gonna have, the more expensive materials are gonna be. And so, I would like to be able for the court to give direction that we need to proceed. Could you give some advice on how you'd like to handle that? It kinda comes under the older agenda item, not this one.
Which, which?
With the one we handled earlier with the amphitheater.
So, if you're gonna do a work change order...
There's no change order, they just need to be released.
This is part of their original contract work.
They just need a directive from the court, I just need...
But it wasn't noticed to give that?
Well, I, to be honest with you, it should never be stopped. It's just that there is this illusion out there that, that it was not energy savings and therefore should be stopped. So, we need you to clarify that. Or, Juan, you can hear enough from us and just release the stop, either one. But these, these parking lots need to, need to continue. It's really a comfort factor for Public Works more than anything.
I believe if, if the Public Works Director is ready to proceed, and the court didn't make that stop, then perhaps Juan can just do his...
Okay, well, I mean, if there, are there any objections to Juan proceeding with the parking lot from the court?
I've got a, Juan, the parking lots are in the scope of work of the Galahar and McKenzie, right?
That's correct, Commissioner.
Okay, so what other parking lots are in the scope of work that they're doing, or they wanna do, or they're gonna do?
Or they, or, did you wanna say they're completed also, Commissioner, or...
Well, they completed, they're not in the scope of work.
Yes, sir, but the only ones that are, the Galahar and the McKenzie, that's...
Connie wants you to use that mic.
I'm sorry, the, sorry, Commissioner, Galahar and McKenzie.
Those are the only ones in the scope of work?
They're remaining.
The other ones were not in the scope of work.
Yeah, they are in the scope of work.
I'm talking to Juan right now, I'll get with you in a minute.
The McKenzie and the, and the Galahar are part of the original scope of work, Commissioner.
So, now, what other parking lots have been done that are not part of the scope of work?
None that I know of, Commissioner.
What have been started that are not part of the scope of work?
None that I know of, Commissioner. I mean, hopefully, everything's part of the scope of work. The fairgrounds was the only one that I'm understanding that's part of the scope of work, which is, they completed.
So, the fairgrounds, the Galahar, and McKenzie?
Yes, sir.
Are part of the scope of work?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, what other, what other parking lots are we, maybe I need to ask Shane that. What other parking lots do y'all have on your list, Shane?
We have no other parking lots on the list.
So, the only ones you have is the Galahar, McKenzie, and the fairground?
Yes, and Juan will come back up and probably say this too, but we, they wanna go ahead and move forward with them as long as the submittals are approved. That's the only thing that Public Works would be...
We're still waiting on the final submittals.
Well, I mean, we've been waiting for the submittals for a long time, but, you know, so what's the holdup on the submittals?
There were some revisions that needed to come through. Part of it had to do with a change order that happened that actually was approved by Commissioners Court, change order number two, where the Galahar parking lot was originally a skim coat, and it is now a complete ripout and replace.
And I just wanna make sure, because I hear we blaming Public Works, we blaming everybody else for holding up, but really, that holdup is on your side too, on those submittals, right? I mean, let's be honest here, you know, so if you get the submittals done and get them done on time and get them done right?
The submittals are in now. We have them, we just have to process them so they can move forward with the work. But as soon as the court has moved forward to approve them, to go back on the work of the, of the paving, then we can start that.
Okay, so do we have to approve them, Juan, or do you approve them?
No, we, we approve, we approve this submittals, Commissioner.
Are they ready to go?
No, sir, we're still in, we're in final review. As a matter of fact, that's what we need to get, we need to get the final review so we can, so we can finish them.
Okay, so maybe the holdup has been the submittals?
Sir?
That the holdup has been the submittals?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay, nobody else, but anyway, the other, the other thing that I wanna ask on the, because I didn't see in the, in the scope of work either, the painting, the carpet, the, you know, the laundry, was that part of the scope of work?
At the fairgrounds, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Yes, that was, the painting, the painting, the carpet and everything was part of the contract.
Well, I never saw, I didn't see that part of the contract. So, it was part of the original contract?
Yes, sir.
It was part of the original contract. What's the, I'm not hearing an issue.
There is no issue, we're just trying to get clarity so that Juan can make sure that these parking lots are gonna be continued in the scope of work. That's it. There was a hold on it, because he wanted clarity from this court, since technically, a parking lot cannot give you an energy savings. He wants to know from this court for him to go forward, once he gets these final submittals. That's the whole point of this discussion, is that...
That's why I just asked Juan, Judge, if it is the middles, get them done, and just get, move forward.
No, I do remember seeing an email from Juan, because we'd had discussions in court...
Yes, sir.
Saying we were concerned, as a court, of anything that wasn't considered a energy savings. And so, I remember an email that where Juan asked that question, and, but to me, that's not a delay, that's a valid question based on the discussion the court has had. But what I would say is, unless the court makes a motion, Juan, going forward, and you may, and you may wanna ask us to do so, but going forward, if we don't make a motion to stop anything, then we'll beat ahead. That's the way I look at it, and, I mean, the only motion we made is being dealt with today, and I think, I think it's clear, I mean...
Yes, sir.
We're, it's in the scope of work, it was under the contract, I don't think anybody's made a motion to pull those out, let's go.
Yes, sir, we'll finalize the reading.
All right, fair enough. Okay, so, are there any other questions at all for, we are still operating on boiler number three, boiler number one?
I have a question, Judge.
Okay, can you just give me just one second?
Sure.
We're operating on boiler number three, we're waiting on a regulator on boiler number one. The timeframe is still February-ish. Do we have any update on that? Because that's the one that I think a lot of us are...
And these, and these boilers are under...
Under the jail.
Which contract, though?
Our, our energy savings.
Same one.
Same one.
Right.
Same one, hi there.
Good afternoon, Judge.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Fred Gatewood, as Larry mentioned, I work with ABM as a project manager. And specifically today, I'd like to talk to those two items, the boilers here at the courthouse and McKenzie air conditioning system.
Great.
As the court has been discussing all day, the worldwide pandemic, the shortage in supply chain, so on and so forth, that has directly impacted our progress with boilers. Our initial intent, and first and foremost, I'd like to thank Mr. Beaman then and his staff for assisting us, same thing with Shane, going forward with these projects. Our initial intent was to try and fire the two new boilers in October. At this point, there were deficiencies that were actually found in the boilers themselves. Different components had failed, specifically on the gas components. When the contractor found that, when our subcontractor, we ordered new parts, but immediately started to run into supply chain issues. As a matter of fact, once we got into that, some other components were discovered to not be operating properly with the system as required. Make a long story short, those parts, actually, some of them came in yesterday, some were scheduled for end of this week, and the last components will be here the first week of February.
Great.
So, with our anticipation at this point is to have those two boilers fully functional during most probably the third week of February. Things go as planned.
Great, okay, we'll want you to keep us posted on that.
Absolutely.
Before we get to the second part with the chillers, Commissioner Hernandez has a question. It may or may not pertain to you, but let's let him ask it.
Yes, sir.
Well, I keep hearing that you all have issues. Can y'all talk about what kinda issues you're having?
Specifically at the boilers, as mentioned, the first issue that we ran into was when the gas components on the gas train of the boiler itself came in defective. Once we started checking the same components on the second boiler, they were defective also. What we ended up doing was actually removing those same components from the third boiler, the third new boiler, installed them on the first boiler to test fire the unit. Once we did that, there were other errors in the system. The water coming into the boilers wasn't sufficient. Part of it was the way some of the valving was installed, and some of the existing system where we tied in that. Once we worked through that, it was discovered that the new boilers were actually supplying too much pressure for the system. Those boilers either provide high pressure or low pressure steam. Now, the components that they were shipped with actually came in for a high pressure application. So, those are the components we're waiting to arrive the end of this week and first part of February. And those are the major issues that we've been experiencing.
So, as of today, is the jail able to have hot water?
Yes, sir. As a matter of fact, one of them, one of the tasks that we brought forth was to actually try and test fire one of the new boilers. But with the modifications that were done, our engineer determined that it was not in our best interest to leave that boiler running. So, we actually assisted the county and made some repairs to the existing boiler system, to that one biggest existing boiler, brought it back online. So, right now, we have full capacity in the system based on that existing boiler.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And then, let's just transition to finish off with the chillers at McKenzie Annex. Do you wanna address that as well?
Yes, I'll handle that also, Judge. Again, first and foremost, I wanna thank the staff, the Public Works staff, specifically Rocky. One thing we have to keep in mind is neither the boiler system nor the chiller systems are complete. We have not called for final inspections, we have not presented to the county as a completed project, they're still under construction. Now, Rocky did help us, really helped us to go out there in his spare time and look at the system as installed. And he brought forward some issues that were also identified by our, by our engineer that need to be completed before we finally turn the system over. Now, as some of you may be aware, there is a process in construction where the majority of the work is done, then we bring the design team to check their design, make sure the installation, and then the rest of trades, and specifically, ABM in this case, since we're responsible for the project, we do walkthroughs of the project to ensure completeness, and also to ensure that it meets the intent of the design. And finally, as part of this contract also, is to meet, to make sure that project or that installed component meets the energy savings that we were promising to the county. To make a long story short, Rocky did identify some components that we had already made, been made aware of in some instances, and some other instances not. But these, these issues that were brought up, we call them punch list items, and they are being worked on. As a matter of fact, the seventh, which I believe is Friday, our subcontractor is gonna start working on some of the smaller components. They have already started fabricating some of the piping and some of the bigger components, which will be installed the 24th and 25th of this month. And one of the things that we've been working with land also is to really not bother the county in trying to have small teams working in different areas. We'd rather group our workforces, get in, get the work done, and get out of the county's way. And that's why we've been working with land to specifically schedule these bigger tasks across for several days.
So, how far behind are, when, when was this project supposed to be completed?
There is no specific timeline for the chiller project itself. The contract itself, the way it's written, is for the overall project. But there are no specific timelines for the individual ECMs. With that said, at McKenzie, the original push was to get the systems installed as soon as possible, because the existing systems were failing, there was problems with, with that system out there. And what we ended up doing is over the fall, late summer, early fall, we brought in temporary chillers. But those weren't providing sufficient cooling for the facility. That's why we're trying to get the permanent equipment in place to get the permanent system up and running, which it is. Both chillers are up and running right now. And as mentioned, the, the punch list items that are left right now don't affect the overall system performance or operation. It's up and running.
You know, sometimes, are you through, Commissioner?
Thank you, yes, I am.
You said punch items, but punch items can be way down the road to come back and check them. And if, you know, good thing that probably Rocky or somebody's been checking them, and they say, hey, this is a problem here. We have an issue, right? So, and for somebody to say, well, we'll come back and get it later. I mean, to me, you should take care of those problems right away, correct them right away before later on, somebody, people will forget, and that's why we have bad, bad equipment.
Well, we're actually lucky on this project, because we, we not only have our internal resources, ABM, looking at the projects, we also have land working with us, we also have Juan and his staff working with us. So, with all these different sets of eyes on the project, we can really fine tune what we're looking for and make sure we don't leave anything outstanding out there. And again, it's, it's not a matter of pushing it down the road, because overall, it's gonna, we have a deadline with a contract we have to meet. And if we keep letting these little ECMs kicking the can down the road, we'll be at the end of our deadline. We don't wanna do that. As soon as the systems are fully operational and functional, that's when we wanna call for the final acceptance through Public Works for those ECMs.
Are the program managers there, or project managers there, are they there every day?
I'm actually a project manager myself, Christina's my cohort. I'm a traveling project manager, I come in here every four weeks or so. And then we have a full-time superintendent on site. And that's, it's between the superintendent and Christina, they're both on site every day. Our superintendent actually starts his day here at the courthouse at boilers, at eight o'clock in the morning, and he's here no later than 4:30 in the afternoon, again, checking the boilers. And then he's always gone to the fairgrounds, to McKenzie, and once we get these other projects in key, he'll be visiting, visiting those sites also. And once we get these other projects in key, he'll be visiting visiting those sites also.
Okay, let me ask Juan Juan on this one. On the McKinsey, I know there are a lot of issues at McKinsey, we've got a couple of calls over there, but still. Oh, they're running okay? Or they're, I mean, what's the issue there? I mean, I know that.
Commissioner, is it okay if I get Rocky to answer those questions? He's the one that's been out there, Commissioner, and I think it would be best if he would kind of update y'all. And, you know, since he's the one, is it okay?
Sure.
Oh, Rocky?
Yes, sir, the chillers are running fine now, but we've had a lot of issues with them going down. On Sunday, most recently, they went down, and it was a a programming issue where the temperatures weren't set in in ideal manner to so they shut themselves down. So they they weren't actually broken. They were just shutting off. The idea was for energy savings. When it's forty-five degrees outside, there was there was no reason to run the chillers. But, you know, with a hundred people in a dorm, it's eighty degrees inside. And the chillers were shutting off, and so we had our on-call people in. And anyway, long story short, Christina sent a technician out. They adjusted the temperatures and got it going. And this has been a reoccurring issue. It's it's of, oh, every few weeks, we'll have a shutdown and the jail administration gets very antsy because of jail standards, the height limits on their temperatures and.
Are these the new chillers we're talking about?
Yes, yeah, the the old chillers are long gone. We're running on the new ones. And they haven't, like I said, they're still under construction, like like ABM has said. And, you know, we found, you know, numerous issues, and they've been addressing them. But, no, they're they're far from perfect at this moment, but they are under construction. So everybody understands that. I know the jail has been real concerned because of these these shutdowns. But like I said, Christina especially has been very responsive in getting someone out when they do fail. And so I don't know how to put this. There's been a lot of failures, but ABM has been, you know, getting squared away.
So when you say shutdowns, how long do they last?
Well, most recently, it was just a couple, two, three hours. We had our on-call guy there on Sunday for three hours. A month earlier, you know, it was eight hours. And. You know, so it it varies, you know, depending on on, you know, the severity of the situation.
Thank you. Thank you, Rick.
Are you talking about the new chillers that that's happening?
Yes, they're still working the bugs out of them. And so, yes, we've had, you know, since they've been in there. And we were having problems with the temporary chillers prior to that. And and like I said, it's ABM has been reiterating this whole time, they're under construction, they're not complete, and they should be in good working order when they're complete. But up to now, yet this we've, you know, there's been issues.
Juan, is it, uh, do you work closely with ABM? I mean, is it, you know, who whose responsibility is to tell to let somebody know that they're having problems?
In in this case, Commissioner, would be LAN, that there are project managers on the project. So they would coordinate with the LAN and then, of course, we get the calls from from our I get the calls from my staff notifying me if there's any issues in any of the buildings. So I'll get the call that either the chillers went out or the boilers went out or and and I get the calls when when something like this happens.
How long does it take to, you know, get somebody there to fix the issue?
Normally, Commissioner, it's kind of like Rocky said, they're the ones that are on call. So our staff is pretty much the ones there initially. And then from there, Rocky makes the calls to either ABM or now it's LAN to make sure that they start coordinating and making sure that they come in, they get the equipment back and running. One thing that I do want to say in regards to the boilers is that we're we're getting in, I mean, we already started, but we're getting into the cold weather, you know, for, you know, January, February. And I just want to make sure that somebody from ABM is going to be here every day because I just don't want to have an issue where, you know, we're right now, we're running our boiler. And I say our boiler, but the one, the old one. And if that one goes out, we're probably, I don't know, we're going to have hot water to the jail. So I just want to make sure that that's already thought about and how they're going to get that going. So that way, we have continuation hot water to the jail. Because I know that, you know, once we fall cer- under a certain temperature for the for the hot water. I know we don't, you know, under the guidelines of the of the jail standard. So I just want to make sure that they're fully aware that they got to have here somebody on. You know, I hate to say it, twenty-four seven, to make sure that when that call comes in, that they're ready to come in and fix whatever needs to get fixed.
Well, that's what I want to get at. Is it? Is it wrong for Rocky to try and fix something on the new boilers? And if something goes wrong with it, they're gonna, somebody's gonna say, well, it wasn't us. It was your guy that messed with it. Is it is it gonna affect a warranty or anything like that?
Commissioners and Judge, my my direction to to my staff is that we don't touch that piece of equipment because at this time, that piece of equipment does not belong to the county.
That's what I'm getting.
Right now, that that piece of equipment belongs to ABM. And anything that goes wrong with that piece of equipment, if it fails or or needs detention at this time, they're the ones that are need to be on site ASAP.
I agree. Thank you.
Hang on one second. The one thing that I would like to address is that, you know, I'm always available for LAN. And as I'm sure Juan can attest to and Rocky can attest to, that as soon as they call me, LAN is on the phone with whoever we need to get out there in order to try and resolve any problems we can have. So we're always there on time.
And with your permission, I'd like to interject a couple of things. Back to the systems at McKinsey. As Rocky mentioned, we have had different outage of the components. It has not been, none of these outages have been major components. There was a pump seal that went out there. As Rocky mentioned, there was programming. So there's still a lot of bugs that we have to work out of the system. And that's why we haven't, we as ABM haven't felt comfortable as saying that project is ready to be turned over. Because we're aware that there are still some compon- components that need to be adjusted. And then going into the boilers. Christina is can testify to the last few days, specifically over Christmas and New Year's, our response and what how ABM is being proactive to make sure the systems don't fail. Christine?
So, for example, the the last time when the boiler went out, what we instructed our subcontractor was that on top of us coming and checking on the boilers morning and afternoon, we have our subcontractor coming here every day as the specialist to verify operation on the existing boiler. This will be something that will happen between now and the time when we turn over to boiler number one and to fire up those two boilers and have them running. So that's our guarantee to the county. As far as McKinsey, on Sunday, we received a call from the maintenance department at nine thirty. At nine fifty-four, we dispatched JCI to be on site. At ten fifteen, they were on site and the chiller was back on running. So I would say that's a pretty good response rate, and we are trying our best. But as you know, this is construction. Things will happen. These are brand-new chillers, you are correct, Commissioners, but we are there to respond to every emergency and make sure that the county has either jail standards or everything else going right. So that's as good as anyone can can hope for.
Well, I just don't want us to be holding the bag after y'all are done and then there was something goes wrong with the chillers.
As you know, that's what warranty is for. It's not like we are going to hand over the chillers or the boilers and then just walk away. That's what warranty comes in for.
I understand about the warranties, but getting it done is different, you know.
We are getting it done.
Good. Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate everybody being here today to give all of these updates and and the clarity that we've been able to establish in the process. It's one twenty, and the ladies need a bathroom break. So I am going to not ask for permission. We're taking a bathroom break at one twenty. And guys, at least give us. Fifteen. Okay, thank you. All righty, and so we're back on from break, and I'm calling this meeting back from our recess. It's one forty-three PM. And because Lorenzo just passed out an important document, I'm going to go ahead and pivot to item number thirteen in the regular agenda to discuss and consider early voting locations for the primary, which is right around the corner on March first. You have a list of of the locations. I did receive an email from the clerk asking us to approve these locations. And she also indicated that the both parties had consented to this list.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any concern?
Yes, I just wanted to ask, and I don't recall if this was in our most recent election we held. But have we already moved over to Ben McDonald? Because I know he used to be right next door at the Greenwood Center. So do you all know?
Right now, we're just waiting for confirmation. From what I understand, this is the same list that's twenty eighteen.
Lorenzo, have the microphone.
From what I understand, this is the same list that we had back in twenty eighteen for the primaries.
That's what I'm trying to remember on twenty twenty, if we kept, if we had McDonald also on there. I just, uh. I I I just think Greenwood Senior Center is so much better suited because it's more spread out, and they have it in one section of the whole facility. And I don't know, I just think library, I mean, yeah, you quietly vote when you go vote, but I don't know. It's just, it's always been at the Greenwood Center for years and years and years. And it's a bigger facility, and it has more space.
Which one, John?
The Greenwood Senior Center.
In lieu of Ben McDonald.
So I mean, I don't care. I mean, they're right next door to each other. It it still serves the same area of the county. I'm just kind of curious why. I mean, if I had, if I got to pick, I would say Greenwood, just because I think it's better suited for that. I just like it the old way. But I it's just a question, not a complaint, just just questioning.
So you do get to pick and.
But I don't know if that's if it's available or not. And it's going with the the history that we have at least one or two election cycles now, so that's my only thing. I think I may have asked this already the last in twenty twenty.
Would you want to get a, you want to try and text Kara and see if you could get an answer as to, are you, are you okay?
I'm ready to go, Judge. It's just more of a question.
Okay, no problem.
And if we could, I'd love to see it there in the November elections.
All right, fair enough. Okay, then we have a motion in a second, and if there's no other questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. And.
Judge, can I, could I go back?
Yeah, we've got a request to augment.
Number eight?
Number eight on the regu- number eight on the regular agenda, and that's to to allow for some investigation. Commissioner Chesney?
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. Correct. I honestly, that one slipped by me when it came up the first time. I'd wanted to at least look at who also might be at the Health Department considered frontline workers that would fall under the same type of situation at the Sheriff's Office because I do think there were many of those folks who dealt with the public a lot and would be and weren't at home and and would be eligible for a higher rate. So I would ask that not to undo it, but to, as the judge said, do some further investigation as to how many of those employees would qualify as a true frontline, always in front of the public type situation.
I would just say across the board, Commissioner, I mean, just the twenty percent across the board.
I I want to give the judge a chance to do, she asked for to be to be able to do some investigation. I'm okay with that because I missed it the first time around. And I don't I don't know for sure if everybody qualifies or not, and I don't know that they don't. So I think that's a fair request by the judge to to do that. So I think the the motion would stand, but I would just ask that we bring it back with some further indication on whether those folks would would meet that category as well.
Okay, so that's sort of a, it would be an addendum to that motion that we made earlier for the clerk's purposes on item number eight. And that's, is there a second? I'll second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, and you'll see it.
I want to vote for aye, but with the contention, that two things should be across the board.
And it probably should. I just want to look. That's all I'm saying.
I think it's just a matter of being thorough.
Right.
And there's clauses that need to be put forth, like we've done with the others. And it's best to have it done in a nice motion that has all of the different parameters. I think we all agree, it's just a matter of how clean we make it.
Yes, ma'am.
Just a few weeks. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
On item number fourteen, I don't have anything at this time. Any, this is the discuss and consider approval of any accrued overtime hours. I don't have anything in front of us, but I do want to check with Dale. Is there anything in front right now?
No action.
Okay, there's there's no action. The only thing that I would want to bring up, Dale, is that every two weeks, we do we do know that there was overtime incurred over the from Christmas to New Year's holiday. And I know with the testing that we've got moving forward during this surge that we're going to six o'clock, which means most likely there will be overtime to some extent. So at this point, do you also need a motion? Or do you want to wait till those overtime hours are are brought for the court for approval?
We need court action to take it to for for me to be able to track and then submit those for the next court.
What is, what do you need a motion?
If the judge wants to to submit overtime for the current surge that we're having for their for exempt employees that are working overtime, if they want to track and and pay them for the next two weeks, then I would need direction from the court.
Right, so that's what I'm saying. So it's two, it's two action items in this one. One is, is there anything before us that we need to approve? The answer is no. The second is, in order to go forward with any employee that's exempt for overtime, we do need court authorization. We don't know that there will be, but if there is, it will come before the court for approval, but this gets us the opportunity.
I would make a motion that we want to do the hourly exemption.
Well.
I was in trouble last time. We need to figure out how we're going to do this.
So.
I would maybe look at.
My second.
I would. So some of the ones that are classified or as exempt are not as concerning as others to me because they're at a different, you know, pay level. So I don't know how to, I I really would like to see how many that affects because I'm not real, and I don't want to, yeah, I I'm okay with paying the the hourly ones for sure because that's given, and I'm okay with some of the exempt ones, but I don't know if we can segregate that without being, getting in trouble. So I.
All non-exempt are required by law to pay, so we pay them overtime regardless of the wage hour.
You don't need a motion for that. It's the law.
There's about, I believe there's four and maybe six at total employees that are exempt that would qualify possibly.
How many?
Six.
Can you, could, but could we just, could you provide me that and could we just hold on that for just a minute, Judge? And I'm not.
Yeah, you can, we can get that information to you.
Can we just table it for next meeting?
Or we can, I'm 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 fine doing it later.
Well, no, because he needs, he needs to know now for the next two weeks. And again, these are people that are out there, you know, working.
I just, but I would like to be able to review their hours too because if we do it, because I'm just, I don't want to get back into another situation where we're, where it gets out of, where we don't get to see it, and that was just what I'm trying to avoid and get on the front of it, please. So if someone could just provide me those six employees, that would be.
For those six employees, we could submit the activity logs for the week for you so that you have awareness. But they need to know that if their work, if they're working, they're going to get paid for that work.
Well, if they're exempt, in theory, they don't.
No, I'm just, these are talking about the exempt.
Yeah, we're just talking about exempt. So the exempt, you know, in theory, they don't get it unless we authorize it because they're exempt. And so I just need to think about that and and look and see and see what kind of exposure we're talking about money-wise. And I I just don't know how mu- you know, I don't know how much these people work. I don't know what they're doing exactly for overtime. I get they're doing a lot of work. I'm not questioning that. But I just want to, I just would like to look at it. That's all I'm asking for is a few minutes, please.
And I just want to say that the funding source for exempts are approved under American Rescue Plan Act. That COVID nineteen, remember, those dollars came as a result of a COVID nineteen response. So I just want you to know that whatever expense expenses that FEMA does not cover for exempt is covered by COVID nineteen sourcing through ARPA. So I think that's really important to know. We'll give you a little time. Let Dale do a little work on that.
Actually, the the only departments in question would be the the eleven fifteen waiver, the City County Health, and Inland Parks with helping setting up the the facility. So theoretically, for Inland Parks, there's two employees that'd be the director and the assistant director for the City County Health. the assistant director for the City County Health, the, again, the contractor administrator, and then Dr. Wilmot is currently under 391, and I believe in 1115 waiver, there may not be any, because the salaries are lent, so I believe that right now, there's only four that we're talking about. And those would be the two, that would be the four.
If they come in at eight, and they're working nine to six, why not just come in at nine?
You're allowed to talk to them.
Well, because we set up testing starting at 5:00 AM in the morning.
No, they're not starting at nine.
No, it starts at nine o'clock.
There's two for Inlet Parks, there's two for City County Health, I believe there's one for the 1115 waiver, so there's five total. That I know that would definitely help with this. Now, emergency management may be assigned there as well, but I believe all the ones other than the director are non-exempt, and they qualify for regular overtime, but if the new emergency management director are there, then that would be one additional employee.
So I would, I would, I would consider it if we had some sort of limit on it, because I have a, I just have a basic problem with exempt employees continuing to get overtime, but I know it's unusual circumstances, so I'm legitimately very torn on this, so I'm trying to come up with something that I can live with, that, you know, maybe.
How about a not to exceed?
Pardon me?
How about a not to exceed?
Yeah, so can just, yeah, let me just, if y'all can, let me just think about this one, please.
Well, just move on it for a second, move aside for a second.
I would appreciate it, let me just think about it.
And, and bring that back on a, on some sort of a not to exceed, and then let's just go to the, since Dale, you kind of have the floor here, let's move on to your, oh, wait, Juan, you've got two items on roads or both deductive, deductive change orders. Why don't you take us through items three and four under yours? B item, B three and four.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, Judge, I had one more thing, and it may require you weighing in when I get that list, is I would like to know, like, I would like to know what those five employees, I get the two in Inlet Park, the other three, what they would actually be doing that would require the overtime, just if you could.
I'll sort of tap it out here, just a second.
Great, okay, go ahead, thank you. Go ahead, sorry.
Go ahead, Juan, on the deductive order number three, it's County Road 73, 67, 48, and 69.
Yes, Judge, Commissioners, we're recommending the deductive change order number two, it's for 73, 67, and 44. The deductive change order is 6,363.
Second, just, just real quick, what is it?
Sir?
Just what is it?
It's just deducting some items from the, from repairing and widening of the payment, Commissioner, and it's just for a minor stuff that we're deducting.
Okay, second.
Are these, are CDBG DR roads?
This is the 73, this is CDBG, Judge.
Yeah, these are our CDBG DR roads.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions for Juan on these roads? All right, I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All right, we also have.
There's already a motion.
Yeah, it doesn't matter. You can, you can have, you can.
All right, that's fine.
Let Gonzalez be my second, I don't care.
The next one, Judge and Commissioners, is also a change order deduction for County Road 22 and 49. The total amount is negative $27,815, and these are for some COVID extensions, and some inlets, and some deletion, some delineators, so it's a negative $27,000, and this is CIP money, Judge and Commissioners, $27,315.68.
Motion, I have a motion to pass, but I've got discussion.
Got a motion and a second, Commissioner Chesney?
Can you tell me exactly where we stand on all this one, because this one hasn't gone as fast as I would have liked, and I'd like to get a.
And I agree, Commissioner, I think due to the timeframe, there were some calendar days that were given to the contractor. The contractor has gone in there and mobilized, done some work, and then demobilized, and I know it's, it's, they had 500 and something days to do the project.
Which is way too many days, so that's part of bringing this up, because we've got to, we've got to tighten these days up, that's way too much for this road project.
Yes, sir, and I agree, Commissioner, the day should have been probably a shorter length of timeframe in the future projects, Commissioner. I will get with my staff and also with our project managers, and to make sure that when we do assign some of these days, to make sure that we're a little bit more aggressive on the days.
So what do you anticipate the completion on this very long, drawn-out project is?
Yes, sir, I'm hoping that the project can be done hopefully here in the next couple of months, Commissioner.
So what I've gotten is, and I'm saying this because I'm a little frustrated with this process, and I get that the contractor is within his legal rights, so I'm not slamming that, I'm slamming us for too many days on the contract, but I'm really asking the contractor, because what I'm hearing is, because there's, and tell me if this is wrong, because, because there are so many days, if he needs to demobilize and go work on another project, that he's going and working on other projects, and then coming back to our project, or sending some of his crew and going somewhere else, and coming back. Is that correct?
That's correct, Commissioner.
Okay, so, I mean, I get that he's in the legal realm of doing that.
Yes, sir.
But I would ask that you.
I'm agreeing, sir.
Yeah, and I would ask that you please go back to that contractor and say, look, come on, you know, I get it, you know, but, you know, don't, our honest mistake in giving too many days, because it was a mistake, and it shouldn't have been done this way, and we're not going to do this anymore, I hope. It's going to be one of the questions I now ask on contracts, because I've learned my lesson, I learn lessons on these things all the dad gum time, and this was my lesson learned on this one. So I would really go back and say, to ask the contractor to please not take advantage of an honest mistake in giving too many days by continuing to mobilize and demobilize, because that's really slowing us down, and that project should be done.
Yes, sir, I'll set up a meeting with the contractor, Commissioner, I'm sorry.
I'm just curious, how many days has it been?
1.2 million, no, I mean, it's, it's ridic, it's 500 and something days that's in the contract, which is.
565, I think, Commissioner.
Yeah, which is a year and two-thirds, which is crazy. I don't know how this got missed, but it got missed, and so we're only about six months, no, how far since he's exited?
Who is the contractor?
And I don't want to say that, because I don't want to.
Well, it's public record.
No, I know, but I don't want to, I don't want to make it look like I'm slamming that contractor, I'm just, it's not his fault, her fault, whoever.
Well, who negotiated the 565?
Honestly, Judge, that was L.A.N.
And so what was the, what was the rationale for it?
I'm not sure, Judge, I just know that they're the ones that prepared the contract documents and the days on it.
Why don't you ask them? So we can find out.
We did, and.
What was the answer?
That's how much days they figured they were going to need, the contractor was going to need.
I just, that's why I was trying not to bring names into it.
Well, no, you have to, you have to be able to address it, I mean, let's, there's got to be a rationale, I mean, Shane was just here, bring Shane back in. Well, actually, Shane's not the manager on that one.
But it's, we've addressed it, it's not going to happen again, there's nothing we can do about it now. The point is just, I was just saying, I wasn't trying to shame anybody, I was just trying to say, can you please just go work with this contractor and try to keep him on the job, please?
I'll set up a meeting.
And then we won't do this again.
Yes, sir, I'll set up a meeting with the contractor, L.A.N., and also.
Yeah, I mean, there's got to be a.
Scott Mears, and we'll sit down and talk to him.
Okay, so Scott's the project manager on it.
There's two project managers, it's L.A.N. and also Scott Mears.
Okay, well, they're, they're program manager.
Program manager, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, it's very different, and the project manager, Scott Mears, so yeah, let's just set up a meeting with Scott and the folks, and let's see how we can remedy it.
We have, Judge, we've been working on it.
Okay, well, bring it back and let us, let us know.
Okay, thank you. That's, a motion to pass.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners, appreciate it.
Okay.
Did I already have it? Yeah, I did make, that's right, I already made a motion, sorry.
They do, right? There's a motion and a second, I think, already.
Call the questions.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we're going to move to Otter C1, it's discuss and consider building rent, GEO payments, pre-approved contracts, as an addition to the vendor payments exception list. Dale, we'll let you present this.
Yes, Your Honor, we've already provided you the list that y'all approved, that we can have advanced payments, as long as we have a member of the court, whether it's the judge or the most senior commissioner of court approved the list as we disperse this, without coming to major court approval. We found there's a few more items we need to add because of the necessity to pay now, that quickly need to be paid. We're asking that we include building rent, which we have multiple buildings we pay rent for. GEO is our contract with our present contract with the GEO company, that they submit claims through us, and any contracts that have already been pre-approved by the court, we're asking that the exception list would be modified just to add these three additional items.
So moved.
All right, motion and a second, those quick, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post him sign. All right, and then Dale, take us through budget change order number five, please.
Budget change order number five is for two different departments, both these departments required additional costs because of some security camera issues that, for the mechanical maintenance, as well as a medical examiner building. We're moving the money from our repairs and maintenance from our building superintendent funds, that's the only request for this item, so I submit budget change order number five for your acceptance and approval.
All right, I'll make that motion.
Second.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and how about the capital budget change order? It's number 104.
Project number 104 just shows a list of a few more items that we're adding that before, as well as reallocating some funds for additional items. I know Commissioner Chesney, you worked with Teresa on reallocating some of your costs, and those are, those are here as well. The new items are in COs 2015 for the West Haven Park, as well as the Conroy and Bridger Shoreline survey in the 2016, again, also the West Haven Park and the Conroy, because we had the funds situated. And as Teresa was saying, on the 2021 COs, we're reallocating some funds of $695,000 for capital improvements that the Public Works was asking for, this was requested in their budget, and then this was, we asked them to spend the funds out of our CO funds, so these are done. These are the requests that have been submitted for us for a budget change order, capital projects number 104. I'll submit for your approval.
Okay, I'm just going to do a quick double check here. That is.
So moved when you're ready, Judge.
You've got a motion and a second. These folders are getting so thick.
Yeah.
It's hard to like maneuver them. Could you? Okay, I was supposed to, I thought you were handing it to me, I was like, oh, wow.
That's really, this thing is so hard to.
Well, and I've gone over it with you already, but.
There's three front liners that are so big, I'm having a hard time.
Do you happen to have it handy, or no? Dale, do you happen to have your list?
Yes.
Can I grab that just real quick? There was one thing I wanted. Thank you so much.
I'll do that again, Judge.
Yeah, I think it's just a great, I think it's best described as, it's a very good reconciliation, right, of everything that's been moved from the COs.
Yes.
And I was just looking to make sure everything was there that we, that we've done, but I trust that we could bring anything back if we've missed something, so I'm good.
I wanted to just say too, I appreciate, Teresa has to explain this to me, I've done these 100 times, but she still has to go over with me, and I appreciate her patience in this, and she's always helpful in working with me on these things, and so it took us a couple of courts to figure mine out, but we, we've got it all right, and she made me sign it the day she explained it to me, so I wouldn't forget again, so I appreciate Teresa's help, and I just wanted to say that.
That's nice, and also, what's helpful is, we're getting really close to doing the right thing, which is suspend those old COs, so Teresa, we might just want to get a, you know, an update as to what's left, hopefully not much, but this is what really gives you that, that background, and I appreciate that. Okay, so I'm good with this, we've got a motion and a second, all those, I have no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Dale, I'll return it to you here in just a moment.
No problem, Your Honor.
We did number four already, correct?
Yes, we did.
All righty, and so we'll go to number five, and we'll do our payroll intergovernmental invoice.
These are reimbursement requests from the city, Corpus Christi, we were asked to hold for these for a while, we're in the fiscal year end, so we need to get these paid, these are reimbursements to the city. There are some overtime in some of these items, and this for the nurse practitioner. Kim, I don't want to pronounce the last name, because I don't want to mess it up.
I believe it's Onifraq?
I believe that's correct. That's the only one that has any minor overtime, we can exclude that if you also choose, but we still need to get these items July, August, and September paid, where the fiscal year end, and these are all money that we give back from the hospital district, excluding any overtime as well, so we're requesting these to, for your approval and for submission to be paid.
Okay, I'll motion for that approval.
Discussion.
And need a second, and then go ahead on the discussion.
Do we vote number four? We voted on number four?
We did that earlier.
We did.
Y'all approved the advancement of all employees, including City County Health, and 1115 waiver currently at the 10%, and we're adding the environmental enforcement officers at 20%, and that was approved earlier.
Oh, I thought that was number.
You did the 20% though.
Oh, I thought that was number eight.
Well, eight, we had it on there twice.
Oh, so we did it as, oh, so we did it as eight, but it was covered for.
Well, eight, you actually identified the City County Health, the number four, I was just saying all eligible employees, I just want to make sure I identified, City County Health is now eligible. So it was included on both.
So it's got to be 20% then?
Well, when you first voted, you voted of 10%.
Move not to 20%.
Y'all said y'all were going to, y'all were going to research it.
We're going to bring it back, this is just to get us an advance, it doesn't, it doesn't preclude any catching up of.
The two feet advances just for, just to get an advance period?
Yes.
You can't just pay the whole quarter?
No, remember, we've gone over, tell them about how, you have to have hours worked.
The hours worked has to be provided, we have to have the hours worked, and if you, the time we give them the quarter, and let's say, we say we estimate that we owe you $1,000, and we give you $1,000, but you only work for two weeks of leave, and you only authorized to be $100, how are we going to get your $900 back from you?
Is CPA company working on this too, that we hired? Because I got a letter from them saying that we could do it, I mean, I don't know why, but.
Well.
That we could do the one time, and you know, of course, there is a form that was supposed to be initiated for him to sign, and for some reason, they didn't know that the form had been taken off. That's what, I mean, that's my letter that I got.
When y'all approved this a while back, when we had the first time, y'all authorized us to have them submit a form that they are required to work from the courthouse or their location, cannot be remote work, and then they'll be based on actual hours worked from the time, and it'll be paid on a quarterly basis. And y'all approved authorization of that form.
You know, I got some calls, I got calls on those two, and the 250 people taking the wrong perception on the 250, you know, like, well, you're going to get 250 every quarter, you're going to get, you know, two, you know, I think it's, we're throwing them off now with this 250.
We're not getting, this is an advance, when we get the first quarter, if, like I said, if the first quarter, we owe you $1,000, we're going to deduct 250, because we're already advanced paying you, so we're going to pay you the rest, 850, or 750, so.
Teresa, go ahead, you're going to have to take a mic in order to speak, but the idea here is, is to get dollars in people's hands sooner rather than later, and still here is to get dollars in people's hands sooner rather than later, and still fulfill the ability to follow the eligibility.
I just wanted to confirm, it's also only the non-exempt employees?
What's that? This is all employees that exempt, that includes anybody that has salaries less than $78,600.
Correct. That's the threshold.
If you receive any more than that, you will not qualify if you're not law enforcement.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, so we have the motion and the second, we call for discussion, and now all those in favor signify.
Oh, no, I wouldn't, I had discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. My discussion on this one is, tell me, like, I'm looking at these invoices, right, and it does, and it seems to be, you know, different amounts, right, so I'm really kind of looking for, not only for this item, but for the upcoming item, what does it usually average, and I know you check these and make sure they're right, but what does it usually average a month? Because this, there's one in here for 35, there's one in here for 13, there's one in here for 14, there's, so what does it average a month that we get from the city for that 40% that we pay? And that 40% is for what, I'm sorry, I'm on my mic, the health authority, right, it's not for, because we have our own employees over here that we pay for, the county employees, the 32 to 40 employees, depending on who's, how slotted and where we are, then we pay 40% of what the city bills us for the health authority?
No.
Or for the what?
The health director.
The health director is on a different invoice, different bill, we paid that last court, these are just your director, assistant director, and your nurse practitioner, and based on, all based on hours, so number hours worked, the nurse practitioner is a part-time employee, so that values go up and down significantly, the ones for...
In this, you said there wasn't any overtime to the health director and those folks, that was just a little bit of health, there was just a little bit of overtime to that nurse practitioner?
Who's a doctor?
There's no overtime for anyone other than the nurse practitioner, any of them.
Okay, so what is the normal monthly amount total that we get billed for, average from the city for what we reimburse them for? Please.
I would say anywhere from 13,000 to 14,000, if your regular is around 13,000 to 14,000, maximum maybe 15, I would say.
And then this big one, that we got, was that just an accumulation of one? We got one in here for 35.
That's July, that's probably included the main part of the overtime.
Okay, so that does have overtime in these invoices then?
The, one of them does, yes.
But again, these are all reimbursable by the hospital district, except for the overtime piece of it.
And overtime is then under our FPA.
Right. Again, the reason July is so high is because July is when we had our second wave, our second surge, when we had 440 people in the hospital, and that was the...
Why I was asking earlier on these invoices...
What is the average?
Well, no, what, because what he represented first was, sorry, what he represented first was, the only overtime in these invoices we were being paid was to this Kim...
It's doctor, it's Dr. Kim Onifrac, she occupies the nurse practitioner position, but she is a doctor.
Thank you, but what we're finding is, you're telling me now that there's a bunch of overtime in here for the health director?
The only one, the only overtime is for, for the nurse practitioner, according to my staff.
But I know, but you just said, you thought maybe this 35,000 was some of the overtime from the health director, is what I thought I just heard you say.
For the nurse practitioner, the overtime for only this includes her overtime, does not include any overtime for the director or assistant director.
Okay, so in this $35,000 one, which is unusually large compared to the others, as you say, it's normally about 14,000 a month, there's no overtime for the health director in this, in this invoice?
Correct.
100% sure that, other than the doctor that has been referenced, that's the only overtime that it's in this, these invoices?
Correct.
Okay, that's all I needed to know.
All right. All right, so we have that clear, so any other questions here?
And I'm sorry, I'm sorry, and you said roughly, it's about 15,000 a month, 14,000, 15,000 a month is the norm that we get from the city, on all in, or just on this, just on this?
Just on this, because these are the reimbursements for the director, assistant director, and nurse practitioner, these are the only ones we reimburse 40 to 60%.
This is the one subject to our reformation agreement.
Right, but I'm just saying, that's what I'm asking, this is all in?
Well, there's also the, we pay a different percentage on the purchasing.
We do pay a little bit on the purchasing agent, I believe that's on different invoice, because of how it works with, but it's billed to us directly through the City County Health cost, and then, of course, we pay for the doctor that covers the entire region, I think we are 50/50 on that.
We are, so I wanted to make sure, so when you say the local, the local health authority, you'll recall that last court, we paid those invoices, that's not 60/40, that's 50/50 for the local health authority, and then the 60/40, or the three positions that you've just talked about, that's the 1115 waiver position, the assistant health director and the health director, and then I'm noting for the record that there's also, not on this invoice, but another invoice that comes in for that purchasing, and it comes in at 46.3% or something like that.
What I need today, for this discussion and for the upcoming discussion, is what is the all-in average monthly amount we pay for the health district to the city of Corpus Christi? That's what I need, please.
And he can probably get that for you, and I'm gonna put an asterisk, that you might want to look at it, what it is when there's not a global pandemic, and when there is, because he could get you historical information that would give you an idea of what happens.
I'd like both, how about both?
That's fine.
Let's do both.
Because I really think that, it's really unfair to say, what is an average when one month out of the year, it's extraordinary, right?
No, no, but I'm afraid we're not gonna be, we're gonna be doing this, you know, this isn't gonna be the last time.
Well, that's true too.
Right, but let's do both, to be fair, so if you could give me pre-pandemic average monthly amount to the city, total and pandemic monthly amount, that would be extremely helpful. Thank you, I'm good, Judge, thank you. I motion to...
Well, I've got the motion, if it's all right, we'll call, we're done with discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and let me go back and do some cleanup now, I'm just trying to see, we've done everything on that page. I need to go to item number six, and...
Hold on, which one?
Six or seven?
Right, but we're gonna bring that into executive session.
Which one, Judge, I'm sorry, I'm trying to...
Item number six is not on executive session, right?
Oh, yeah.
Jenny, would you like it to be? Item number six.
You have an executive session item to talk about policies in executive session?
So I can get that item? You want to just take it all in? It just seems easy.
I do have questions on this one that aren't legal related, so I would like to ask them if that's okay.
Go ahead, let me just introduce it, this is a, an item posted as 3A6, it's to consider hiring Attorney Tanya Weber of Porter Rogers Dahlman &amp; Gordon to assist the county with two things, with drafting employment policies related to the public health district transition and/or county personnel policies, and that's the related matters there too, and go ahead.
So, again, I'm a little, I'm wondering if this is a little cart before the horse, I think Tanya's great, I'm all for, great lawyer, great firm, but my question is, we haven't given any direction whatsoever on the policy changes that we want to look at and do, so we haven't, we haven't done that as a court yet, certainly you can hire a very, very good expensive lawyer to do that for you, but I don't know if we need a complete overhaul of the policy manual, or if we just need to tweak some of it, and I don't know why we're, I guess, doing it right now before we have, because we've articulated as a court a need to want to do that, but my thought was we would kind of come up with some, here's some general ideas, then maybe we give it to someone to look at and draft, not the other way around, because that's going to be a very expensive way to do it, but I'm open to listen to that, but that's my non-legal question on that.
Just as the court desires, I think that she would be able to give guidance about items she might see that need to be overhauled, that maybe the court may not yet be aware of, where she might have some expertise.
The specific items are things like sick leave, vacation, vestment, pension, reaplication, any of those items need to be carefully drawn up, and to protect the interest of the employee, and that's really what we were headed, but there's a second piece to it, so I want to make sure you hear that too, because it's just couched in the two verb, the two words of personnel policies, one of the things that was mentioned is how, how much in need our employment handbook is in need of updating, and policies need to be updated, that would include everything from cybersecurity to sexual harassment, which is, you saw that we did that in consent agenda today, that's required now by the legislature.
And didn't we, didn't we appoint a committee to do this? Didn't...
For what now?
To do this policy update, didn't we, I thought I, I thought we had a, like, we were gonna do a policy...
Y'all had a fraud policy, which is separate than your personnel policy.
That's correct.
Okay, so fraud is only...
But you could put that in there too, in other words, an employee policy handbook should be comprehensive, the concept is, is that she could engage in that process to look at our employee policies, get them up to 2021, well, shoot, 2022, you know, standards, that's something that we should have and is important as issues come up, because it protects the county to have a strong handbook and to strong policies, so that's the second piece of it in there, that's really not related to anything else except for modernizing.
Okay, so where would the funding source, just out of curiosity, come on this one? I didn't see that, sorry. We, anybody? Nobody? Hello?
Can send the bill to Managers Anoni.
Well, we're not redoing that, because you're saying we need to redo our own, so that's a good little...
So, look, I mean, we have a attorney...
Normally, law, when we hire lawyers, it comes out of departmental 85, we have a very large budget that we apply every year to, in case we need legal assistance, so...
Sure.
So I would have kind of a subject to also, Judge, like, I kind of like that subject to an amount thing, because...
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed, sorry, my bad, good catch, because I think there's, and I'm just trying to think through this, I think there's some value to doing it that way, because the reality of any of us having the time to sit down and do that, so it's probably been a while, I don't know when the last time we revised our, although to me this...
I think she told me it was 20, what was it?
Wouldn't this be, I gotta say, wouldn't this be an HR job?
Well, it would be, she'd be working with HR on this, but getting input and direction, you know, obviously from us, but yes, you wouldn't, an HR, I think that a specialist, I mean, I asked, who does these handbooks, and she says, professionals do these handbooks, right? Lawyers do these handbooks, that you can comply with both the civil service requirements, you can make certain that your EEOC compliance is also met, I mean, this is just something good to protect us from discrimination, from, you know...
Well, here's what I would like, Judge, I would like our HR director to take a shot at this first, because I think we talked a little bit about that on the fraud stuff too, because to me, that's what the HR director should be charged with, at least taking the peripheral view of, okay, you know, me and my expert opinion, which she's an expert in being an HR director, should have some, she should be able to go through the policy manual and say, okay, here where we have some clips, and then come back to us, and we would either say, yeah, that's true or not true, and then we would probably engage the attorney, because I think this is an HR director's job, is to at least start it.
Well, it certainly, it certainly would fall under HR, I would want a lawyer who's certified in employment law to, you know, certify it, I don't have any problem with her starting the process, creating a retainer, and don't engage her, right? Hire her, get her retained, and when you're ready, you've got that engagement letter.
I'm certainly fine with the hiring of her at the appropriate time, I would just like the HR director to really spend some significant time developing this, working with this, getting some direction from the court, and then letting the, this very fine lawyer take it over from there.
I think that's probably just fine.
Okay, so my motion would be to engage...
I think you just said it, it's perfect, let's make that the motion.
Okay, was that good? Is that clear on the motion?
I think it's a good motion, because it allows us to have both, it allows us to start the process internally...
Good, Lorenzo?
And then, and then, you know, at the appropriate time, HR would come in with a recommendation saying, look, I'm ready for her to review and to make recommendations upon my policies.
Yeah, so let's let, let's let the HR director have some time, so maybe we could, you know, ask her to bring something back to us at a meeting in February with some suggestions, and then we could give direction from there, and then we'd have Tanya on board and be ready to go.
I think that's, that sounds like a good working framework.
Thank you.
And so I just want to clarify, because what was on the agenda was to draft the employment policies related to the health district?
Right, we're gonna do that.
Transition, and then the personnel policies.
Right, that part, we're gonna take into executive session, and then this will be the second piece of it, so Lorenzo will come back on the, on the other piece.
And that's a good point, Belinda, thank you, that's a kind of a different element, so at this point, we're just, we're just engaging her on the employment manual, and we're gonna go talk about the rest of it to see where that all lands, right?
Correct.
Okay, perfect.
And we'll have two separate agreements.
Right, or could be one, but depending on what happens today, but it might, right, you're right, could be two.
She's provided a separate one for the manual.
Good for her, that's smart. Okay, do we need to...
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and again, it's a bifurcation.
Yep, that's all.
The item, the only item that I see that's left before we engage in executive session is item number seven, which is an executive session item, but I would like that confirmation from Belinda, I don't see any other item except for number seven that we remain, that's taking, we're gonna take in up an executive session.
That's correct, John.
All right, so at this time, I will read our magic language.
Number E on the...
Did we miss one?
On the...
Okay, I missed one.
Commissioner had asked for some additional time on 14 to think about the overtime.
Right, I just figured, he hasn't gotten the information yet.
I haven't even gotten any info yet, so, yeah.
How about number E on executive session, we're gonna table that, because the open session was table, right?
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Yeah, well, we'll do it in there.
Yeah, we won't, we won't.
We won't, we don't have to come out and make any discussion on it, okay? All right, so in that case, we will, we will move to the language that, as the presiding officer, I will read, "Public notice is given that Commissioners Court may elect to go into executive session at any time during the meeting to discuss matters listed anywhere on the agenda, when authorized by the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code." And we do so in accordance with the authority of the government code, which is Vernon's Texas Code, Sections 551, 071, 072, 073, 074, 75, 76, 86, and 87. Commissioners Court will hold an executive session to consult with our attorney regarding matters not limited to, but including litigation, real property, prospective gifts, personnel matters, including termination, county advisory bodies, security devices, economic development negotiations, and other matters that may be discussed in executive session. Upon completion of executive session, Commissioners Court may, in open session, take such actions appropriate on items discussed in executive session. The time for the clerk is 2:00 to 9:00 PM, and we're gonna ask you to take the mics off now, Connie. We're out of executive session, the time is 4:40 PM, and there are action items here, the first is item C regarding the personal injury claim of Crystal Penya.
Judge, I would make a motion to reject the settlement offer and direct the county attorney to continue negotiations.
Thank you. Item D, there's also action here.
I need a second and a vote.
I'm so sorry, motion and a second, please, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and now moving towards item D regarding the payment claim of strategic government resources. I can take it if you want.
Wait, which one, Judge, I'm sorry?
You were gonna make a motion on strategic government resources, item D, on SGR...
Oh, my bad, yes, 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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, thank you, I've been back there a while. Judge, I would make a motion that we pay the amount of $40,000 at this point and direct the county attorney to continue negotiations.
Okay, motion and a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, and also, we have some direction on item H, which I'll just say is just to direct the county attorney to help provide some advisory and some documentation to the Commissioners Court regarding the Texas Purchasing Act when she can, knowing that she has pressing matters, but when she can.
Set them...
I don't know if it really needs to be voted on, more just a directive.
Okay.
On item J, there is a motion regarding the Texas Prompt Pay Act, Hazel Basemart Dog Park project involving outstanding ABM invoices, the motion is to, subject to the invoices being provided and verified, that the auditor pay ABM's invoices for the dog park equipment.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, I'm making sure here that... Okay, is that, just leaving the last one, guys?
Yes, I think so, Judge.
All right, just double checking, okay, there's one final one, and it has to do with the Corpus Christi and Nueces County Public Health District regarding the negotiations pertaining to the agreement points between City of Corpus Christi and Nueces County for city assumption of control and duties of a health district.
Judge, I apologize, did we need to make a motion on the one related to...
ARPA?
No, the employee policies.
Yes.
I think we were gonna make a motion for the...
That's correct.
Is it right, or am I...
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so the motion, I think there is that the...
That's item B, just for the record, and go ahead.
Is it the HR director, no, sorry, my bad, we already did that one.
It's the other one.
That we would ratify the hiring of...
Tanya Weber?
Tanya Weber, when needed, for any transition-related matters, if they're needed.
Regarding employee...
Regarding employee...
Policy or provisions.
Provisions, in regards to the City County Health Department, but again...
Right, as directed by the county attorney.
Right.
Okay, motion?
And just to clarify, though, that's actually item six in your regular agenda.
Okay, so let's bring that up as item six then.
So brought up.
And I'll second.
Thank you.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then now we go back to where I had just remarked about the Corpus Christi, Nueces County Public Health District, and these general agreement points between the City of Corpus Christi and Nueces County for the city assumption and control of duties of health district. And, um, we do have a, an action, and also, um, I guess, more of a, also an action on how we're going to further address, um, the need of this, uh, court to provide, um, more thorough input and feedback. Commissioner?
Judge, I would make a motion to accept the March one extension offered by the City of Corpus Christi preserving all legal contractual rights, and coming back for a special meeting to deal with the new and recent provisions that were sent, uh, to the court, uh, very early this morning, um, because the court did not have really any time to digest all of those things, uh, and that meeting would be set, I believe, at eight-thirty AM on, um, January thirteenth.
Second.
Okay, so a motion and a second, and, um, county attorney will.
Thirteenth or the tenth?
Thirteenth.
I'm sorry?
Thirteenth.
I'll double check it.
Twelve.
No, but someone said they couldn't.
Well, I'm gonna cancel it. This is more important.
Oh, okay, because she said she couldn't be here on the twelfth.
I could not, but, uh, but for this, I'm gonna cancel. Belinda, you are now gonna go, I hope, to the CUC to represent me.
Okay, you sure? I mean, the thirteenth is.
I, someone said they couldn't do the thirteenth.
Oh, did they? I didn't hear anybody, Judge. I thought they're.
Modest, Mod- Commissioner Modest cannot.
I can't hear you.
I'm in a training all day.
Oh, my bad. I'm sorry. I didn't hear you say that. I'm sorry.
So, my only caveat, uh, for court administration is that that afternoon, even though, um, you can cover for me for CUC, I'm doing the National Park Service, which I hope you can appreciate is, was a directive for the, by the court. So, if we could do the morning rather than the afternoon, I'd appreciate it.
Eight, eight-thirty on the twelfth, Judge, um, and would ask that that also be the only agenda item on the court's calendar that day. So, uh, what time is yours? So, like, eight-thirty to?
It's a three-thirty, a National Park Service call.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay.
Okay, um, and so, uh, with that motion, um, I'll second that and ask that the county attorney relay the, the intent, as it's clearly been articulated, um, both in executive session and right now. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, I, Belinda, you were gonna help me by making certain that there wasn't anything else that we needed to revisit.
Your honor, I've got two, two points of, of clarification that the Commissioner asked about, though.
Please, go ahead, and just let us know what items they pertain to, so the clerk can refer.
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
And I believe this relates to item number fourteen that we had kind of, uh, taken a pause on until we got some additional information.
Okay, great. Okay, super. So, the, there's four employees, Dale, and you've listed them, and you've listed their titles, and you wanna walk us through whatever else you, you'd like to say here.
These are the four employees that are, are exempt, that, that would, uh, qualify for possible overtime on the vaccinations. Uh, the two departments for, Mr. Stovall and, and Mr. Rera are both for the public, uh, Inland Parks, even though it's, uh, Edwards in, in forty-one ninety is the main director. Thirty-nine-one is our City County Health, thirteen-seventy-seven is our eleven-fifteen waiver. The only one that's not included on here is the newly hired emergency management coordinator. I don't know if he'll be involved within actual vaccination. We believe these are the only four that are exempt for that, that would qualify for this, that would, that would be actually at the vaccination site, so do we want to extend letting them track and, and pay them overtime for these four individuals?
So, tell me what, uh, you told me what, uh, Edward does as far as setup, uh, and I guess Sylvester the same thing. Tell me what the other two would do that would, that would need overtime for vaccine administration.
Uh, Ms. Chavez is, is the director of, of the, uh, City County Health, works out with the, the, the nurses in the area. Uh, Dr. Wilmots is the one that came up, that provided us our, our presentation. Those are the only two that are there, are there.
What are they gonna do to?
I, I, I don't know what their involvement is with, with that. I just know those are the two exempt that are there, that are qualifying for the City County Health or eleven-fifteen waiver.
He's just provided you, like, who, uh, and, and by the way, I think that we're working, uh, testing with Edward, and even though he's probably doing some vaccination, it, it, it is really more testing that the last week involved in the future weeks involved as well. The need right now is that we're, we're doing about a thousand people a day on testing, um, including Saturday, including multiple locations. So I just want to correct that even though in the past we have done vaccinations with this team, right now, as to those two individuals, um, Edward and, and Sylvester.
The, the testing portion, yes.
It's gonna be, gonna be focused at least in the next two weeks on testing. Maybe some vaccination, but more testing. That's what the need is right now. That's where the surge is.
So, what would the?
Setting set up? You mean setting up?
So it's not just set up. He, Edward is our, um, operations section chief. So in addition to all the duties he's doing for Inland Parks, he's basically carrying the load of running a major operation that's test, that's called testing, and that is a huge amount of, of work. It's not just, I'm setting up cones. It's a, just a huge oper- imagine just being in charge of an operation where a thousand people come to get tested for COVID, and you're in charge. That means you're in charge of the operation, the logistics, the traffic control, the kits, the delivery of the, of the swab and the V- inside the VTM, back to the Health District, where we're, or whatever other diagnostic we're using, maintaining the software so we can get everything up to Mtrack. I mean, there's a tremendous amount of effort that goes into it. I can certainly, I know you said you only wanted one item, but I can put that on there, so come and explain it, but the truth is, is that I think it's, I think it's very valid.
So what about, what about the, tell me what the Health District workers would be doing specifically that are exempt, related to?
So I can't, I remember, um, I think what, um, Dale is saying is that, that these are who are eligible, not that he knows that, what they'd be doing, but I can speak most likely that Louis, even though he's the eleven-fifteen waiver administrator, he's also literally gonna be on-site as our public health administrator, even though Edwards is our operations chief. Um, our public health administrator is gonna be probably your incident commander for that operation.
But if he goes there at nine, Judge, and he's at six, he would have to work overtime.
Okay, so it, it doesn't work that way. It, it, it just doesn't work that way. I, I, I've, I'm trying not to, you know.
Bad management.
I, I hear you under your breath.
Bad management.
I hear what you just said. That's offensive.
I just said it again, Judge.
I heard you twice.
Because it is bad management.
It's not bad management.
I can handle this, woman, too. I can see how they work and give me the hours.
You are, you are really, um, illustrating, honestly, that which we hope that we never have to share with our employees, and that is the lack of gratitude and the lack of understanding. All I can tell you, Commissioner Chesney, is these are the people you asked for, um, and I do believe that they are going to be working on a Saturday, and that's gonna be overtime, uh, as I can only tell you the people that I'm directly, you know, working with in emergency management. Those are the two people. I, I cannot tell you about Dina, because I don't know. I don't supervise her, don't have any situational awareness there. But in my chain of command is Edward and Sylvester, and I just know because of public health that Louis would be your professional, right? He's your healthcare professional for the operation. I, I would have to get back to you on Dina, and again, in order to perform a nine AM operation, uh, the cars start lining up, you know, way earlier. It starts the night before with registration. It's not like we just show up at nine AM. There is nothing except for excellence that is happening out there.
So Judge, eh, or Dale, sorry, the way I understand this is if we, if we approve it, we still have the right to not approve what's submitted to us if we feel like that's excessive, not appropriate, or whatever the case may be.
That's correct.
I believe that's correct.
That's correct.
Okay, so Judge, I, I gotta tell you, I mean, and truly, this is, I mean, despite, despite the, the slings and arrows, I'm, I'm truly going out on a limb, because I really don't, really wanna do this, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do this for two weeks. I'm gonna agree to do this for two weeks, but I gotta tell you, I'm not gonna be looking super, um, favorably towards the higher, some, you know, the higher paid ones on these exempt things. I just think it's, it's just, you know, they knew what they got into when they got into it. They've been in this now two or three years. So I'm gonna do this for two weeks, but I'm gonna really scrutinize the overtime submitted, so I, I'm just gonna allow, I'm gonna, I'm gonna support that allowance, but I'm not going to guarantee, and I want them to know, I'm not gonna guarantee any four of these, that I'm going to approve what they submit. So I wanna make sure that that's clear, because I really wanna look at that and, and see if, if at the, the time I think it's appropriate for what's going on. So I, I will.
Thank you for that.
Support that for now.
Thank you for that, and we'll also keep you posted.
Okay.
There's gonna be updates, I think, um, every week as to what we expect for the following week. I think that's fair, and we will try to give that to you. At this time, going back to that item number, it's registered, uh, under item fourteen, under the regular agenda, which is probably under Roman numeral. I'm sorry, not Roman numeral, but is it, is it A?
A fourteen.
So it's three, it's gonna be three A fourteen.
Yes.
And the motion was to approve for two weeks. I'll make that motion again and, um, ask for a second. And, um, and then all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Okay, um, now, Belinda, would there be anything else?
Under item, uh, C-five, uh, the Commissioner, uh, Che- Chesney has asked for the average cost, monthly cost of what we contribute to, for the City County Health. Uh, we ran it a subtotal, and you give the balances of what our monthly costs are. It, uh, it covers the intergovernmental personnel, which is your director, assistant director, your, your nurse practitioner, as well as the person we have there is, as part of their pressing department, it's twenty-one thousand dollars a month. We pay billing rent, and we pay fifty percent of the rent, uh, which is three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars a month. They charge us IT card charges for that. We pay fourteen thousand dollars of IT charges for, for the city. As we mentioned, the health authority, the doctor there, we, we pay fifty percent of his at forty-one sixty-six. The pharmacist at the moment, we pay anywhere from two hundred dollars, two hundred and fifty to five hundred dollars per month. And for general operating expenses, regular supply of the stuff that the city buys for the facility, that we also have to contribute fifty percent for, we pay nine thousand six hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents. So we pay around thirty-six, thirty-seven thousand dollars per month for a total of six hundred and forty to six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars a year.
Thank you. That's a good spreadsheet.
And that is not including our county employees. That's just what we pay the city?
That's correct.
So we're paying them between six hundred and forty thousand and six, about six, about six forty, six hundred and forty-five thousand. Is that pre-pandemic or post-pandemic?
The pre.
Okay, and so did you do the post-pandemic?
Uh, not at the moment, because we're still, we're, we're in the process of what we're doing now. A lot of it was a lot of overtime, so we didn't wanna include that in the, in your averaging cost. So we ran three different, uh, uh, calendar years, what my staff did, and, and tried to come up an average cost of what it would, what it actually would be before the, the pandemic, but we assume if we, if we stayed like it is, it would probably go back to the si- situation after, after the pandemic.
So what I need to know for our meeting on the thirteenth is what is, what's our, what do we, what is our total? This helps, thank you. I still need the post-pand- or the during pandemic numbers, and then I'm gonna need what, uh, what our county employees cost us.
I will. We'll have that for you.
And I do believe.
I wanna know the total amount that it's costing the county right now, per year, pre and post pandemic to run the Health District, or to run our, to be in, our portion of the Health District. Is that?
And I actually think we have that, so I, we can, we'll double check it, verify it, but it's about nine hundred thousand dollars for payroll, is what I've been told. But I don't, but that includes the two fifty-four, okay?
Amount, because you have, uh, uh, I think it was eleven employees in City County Health, so that's probably pretty close to being right, so.
Yeah. So it was nine hundred total, so if you back out two fifty-four, I was told, I mean, I have the spreadsheet.
No, he just said eleven employees.
Eleven employees total, and, 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 and thirty, thirty-nine-one, which is the City County Health. And we'll make sure you, we'll, we'll get, we'll get you another bunch for you. I'll, I'll leave the mail to you tomorrow.
But we have thirty-plus employees.
Well, thirty is including thirteen-seventy-seven. Thirteen-seventy-seven is our own side, which would be separate from the City, from the City County Health. They're not part of it.
Okay, so then, the third, but if, okay, so the thirteen-seventy-seven is, I don't know, I'm sorry, I'm not good with what numbers that represents.
That's the eleven-fifteen waiver fund we, we receive from the state.
But that, but if that was, if that was to get transferred to the city, then that would have to count in the number.
Well, I don't know if we can actually transfer to the city. We were, it, when the, when the waiver first originally started, there were, there was a joint between the city and the county. Both had their own waiver funds. The city did a waiver theirs, we kept ours. So I don't know if the federal government will allow us to switch, uh, give them that, so I think eleven-fifteen wa- waiver funds, ours regardless.
I, I don't think, I thought I heard differently from Jenny. Is that not?
I don't know.
Well, we're gonna get, how about we get the good numbers tomorrow?
That's fine, just, just, whatever it is, please get that clear, because I was counting the eleven-fifteen waiver folks.
I'll, I'll give you, I'll give you the information on both, because there's, uh, about eighteen employees in eleven-fifteen waiver, so there, there's about twenty, twenty-nine total employees.
Thirty-two, but I may be off some, so. And then, and then how many, how many, do we have any that are unfilled? Because I'd like to know that, too, because that's in their budget, right?
We do.
I think we have several that are unfilled positions, so that has to count in what it's costing the county. I'm looking for, please, before the thirteenth, like, so that we can, so I can actually digest it before I walk in here, please, by the eleventh or twelfth, if you could get me a really good number on what it's costing to do public health.
We should have you some before the end of the day tomorrow.
Okay, that, that's fine. Thank you. Thank you, Judge. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, I think that's.
And, and I know you mean it. We'll just give it to everybody, because it'll help everybody.
Yeah.
All right, at this time, Belinda.
Judge, just a little bit of cleanup. I know that y'all took an action under item A in the executive session, which y'all are accepting the March first extension. However, um, I don't want to confirm that y'all wanted to do an action item under that instead of the regular agenda item number seven, which y'all have taken no action on, which is actually the, uh, noticed as a, a motion to do an extension agreement.
Right, and so it's a little
That's what I made the motion for.
complex, because really what we said was we bifurcated it. We're saying we're gonna meet next week to really talk about the agreement, and the only real action that we're taking, which I think you're saying maybe, do you wanna deal with it under seven?
Right.
Is that the court's will is to have the March first, um, be, you know, in other words, move January eighteenth to March first. However, we're still preserving all of our legal rights, so it's really just a, a recognition that January eighteenth is in two weeks, and we, we think that March first is a new starting point for us to begin, uh, our, our, or really continue our conversations.
Sure.
That was the motion on that action item.
So, so I guess, I'm sorry?
That was the motion on that action item.
On number seven.
On number, I guess we could say it's seven.
Right, so for purposes of the clerk, because if not, they're not gonna.
No, I think that's okay to do that. I just wanna make sure that the clerk understands that, that the purpose of the March one is not to agree that withdrawal is occurring on March one, but rather that the court has said March one is a better date to move forward, okay? Because January eighteenth is obviously upon us, and we're not even, we're gonna deal with the, the rest. We just got this agreement this morning.
So basically, the motion that y'all previously articulated
Was for number seven.
in the minutes is gonna show up under seven.
Yes. It just happens to be labeled differently on the closed session items, so you're right. Number seven. You got it? Is that okay? Lorenzo, that good?
Yeah, and it's, you guys are gonna revisit this on January thirteenth.
That, actually, we decided on the twelfth.
The twelfth at eight-thirty.
Twelfth at eight-thirty. Sorry.
And it's, yeah, and it's very, it's very important to make sure that that, because these folks are not in the executive session with us, so it's very important that, that there be some note that this is in an effort to get us to, you know, the next step, right?
And that's all good.
Okay.
Yeah. And Lorenzo, um, if you'll just roll back the tape with Commissioner Chesney's motion, I think it will help you, because that's really.
I can say it again, too, if you want me to.
There's some, if you don't, yeah, okay, because there's some language he put at the end that's really the crux of the matter for me, okay? Um. Okay, I think that's, Belinda, now we look, we look much better, all right? Uh, I've asked in advance if there were adjournments in memory, and there are a couple on the right-hand side here, so we'll start with Commissioner Chesney, move to Commissioner Gonzalez, and, um, and then I have one, uh, that I'm gonna look up.
Judge, thank you. Um, the, the one I have today is for Susan Chilcoe. Susan passed away Monday afternoon, November twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one. She was at home, comfortable, and not in pain. She died of complications due to cancer. Is, um, this is being read. This is, um, her husband Jeff's words. As you all may know, Susan was a loving mother to Malcolm, enjoyed spending hours knitting on the sofa, and was a yarn enthusiast, enthusiast. Susan and Jeff celebrated her, they're just, just celebrated their thirty-first anniversary. He was, she was very loved. She was an entrepreneur, a voracious searcher of the truth, loved helping people find themselves and the things that created joy for them. She was one of a kind. She will be missed, and condolences to the Chilcoe family.
Okay, in close memory of Jacob Lee Ibanez, passed away on November twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one, at the age of twenty-three. Our condolences to his family, uh, his mother Melissa Ibanez, and grandparents Armando and Gloria Casas. And friends, uh, will be missed in prayers. and Gloria Casades, and friends, will be missed, and prayers go out to the family. William A. Trey Patio III, aged 67, passed away on November 25, 2021. Trey known to many for a hard, long battle with multiple cancers. He worked for the Council of Governments for 20 years before retiring. He loved working on computers and attending his Linux group meetings. He was a lifelong Rockstown resident. He will be missed by family and friends, and our prayers and condolences go out to the family. Jose Vicente Gomez, known to his family and friends as JV, passed away on November 13, 2021, at the age of 28. He lives to cherish his memory, his mother Jessica Gomez, his father Vicente Gomez Senior, one brother Joshua Christopher Gomez, and one sister Janesia Nicole Gomez, his girlfriend Brittany Silva, and numerous family and friends. Our prayers go out to the family and condolences, and may our prayers continue to bless them forever, amen.
All right, I have one. Colin Breckenridge, he was 26 years old when he passed away on December 16, 2021, he was born on May 29, 1995, to Chuck and Crystal in South Lake Tahoe. He was raised in Corpus Christi and graduated from Ray High School in 2013. He attended Columbia University in New York and was residing in Denver, Colorado, where he worked for Merritt Medical. He enjoyed all outdoor activities, including snowboarding, hiking, skateboarding, and kickboxing. He will always be remembered for his love of laughter, sense of adventure, and devotion to his family. Colin loved spending time with friends and family, he always had a huge smile on his face and was happy spending time with his siblings Megan, Bryant, and Brad. He's preceded in death by his grandparents, the Collins, Charles and Joan, and left to cherish his beautiful memories, or their beautiful memories, our mom and dad, Sister Megan, and brothers Bryant and Brad. He was a loving son, brother and cousin, he will be missed beyond words, and the family said, stated in the obituary, that we know he is in heaven, and we will never know why his life on earth was cut short, but God has his own plans. I just wanted to relay our sadness and our sympathies, and on behalf of the Canales Bell family and Nueces County Commissioners Court, our heartaches for the Breckenridge family. He was a beautiful person and an outstanding friend to all who knew him, a great football player, and a great Ray Texan, and we will miss you so much, Colin. With that, I do note that while we've been in court, we received notice that there was an additional COVID death today, as there was one yesterday, so our condolences also go out to those families, and with that, we have no further adjournments at this time in memory, and we do stand formally adjourned. The time for the clerk is 5:08 PM, and if you'll take us off our mics, thank you, Connie.